America and true alike for which is fans, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It is nine o'clock and we will open our commission meeting. Thank you so much for that guidance. And we will begin by listening this morning to a presentation providing a broadband update, and that'll be both from our IT Director Oscar Torres as well as Kevin Coyne from Summit Broadband. And so, we look forward to that, Oscar, and I think you're kicking that off here from the middle, are you not?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the commission and the public are aware, this has been, you know, a long awaited update with our partners from Summit Broadband. We're happy to bring this information before the public today. Oscar Torres, our Director of Information Technology, is going to lead the presentation and talk about some of the details that the city staff has been working on in support of Summit Broadband. And then following Mr. Torres, Mr. Coyne and his team are going to come up from Summit and really get into, I think, more of the information that the public is interested in. So, should be a good presentation this morning. I want to thank staff in advance, Oscar's team, and those who have worked with Summit for all of the hard work that got us to this point today. And with that, I'll yield to Mr. Torres.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
City Manager's Office, City Staff, and Citizens of Lakeland. Oscar Torres, CIO and Director of Information Technology. And so, as Sean mentioned, really the purpose and intent of this presentation is for, you know, on the IT side to show our contributions and everything that we've done from the standpoint of really focusing on the operational infrastructure support that we've provided in order to get kind of where we're at today, really where we're at today.
Great.
With that, we'll go ahead and go to the next slide. Okay. Oh, there we go. Okay. And so, really the intent is to focus in two real areas. We've got two columns here. And on the left, we've got what we've completed as far as in support of Summit. And so, if everybody remembers that July 15th, the Summit contract was signed of 2021, as part of that contract, there was an access request where we were going to provide Summit, initially, were two fibers for three distinct rings. And so, those three rings that you see up there is really a lot of the work that was completed from that timeframe to where we are today. The two fibers for each ring obviously is a backbone, is what supports Summit's infrastructure as we kind of move forward. And you can see that, you know, when you look at Ring One, Ring Two, and Ring Three, these were the initial requests that Summit had provided as far as part of Exhibit B of the contract. And so, what we did is we worked with Summit to look at the routes, identify the routes, see where we could meet most of those requirements, and where we couldn't meet those requirements, we worked hand in hand together in a synchronized fashion to make sure that it met their needs. And there's a lot to be said about these rings. A lot of work was put forth in order to get the rings completed. You had the design work, which I discussed a little bit briefly there. You had a lot of engineering work that was done as well for the technicians to go out to perform their work. And then, obviously, the boots-on-the-ground technicians that had to go out and actually splice the fiber and then test the fiber. And every mile was tested as far as the rings are concerned. Once we completed those rings, the final testing and acceptance documentation was provided to Summit for their review to make sure it met their requirements. As far as the three rings, we had a timeframe of 90 days to complete those rings. And, you know, I'm proud to say, you know, with all the hard work of our telecom team and also the hard work from Summit, we were able to complete that with some time disparity. We did meet those requirements from a 90-day perspective. Any questions on the rings? Because a lot of the work, you know, I'm going to, I'll look over to the labor hours. A lot of those labor hours were attributed to providing those three rings so that Summit... Yes, sir?
Just for clarity purposes for the public, talk about the numbers of fibers typically and then the two rings, and the two fibers, and how that allows for enough bandwidth.
Yes, sir. So, as far as, the initial discussions were, hey, this is the design that we're going to put forward in order to meet the requirements to serve the, not only the commercial customers, but also the residents of Lakeland. And so, you essentially have two fibers, right? And the only, when you look at fiber capacity, really the limiting factor from that perspective is really the equipment that you've got on both sides. For the most part, you could say, I mean, you're talking about gig service is definitely achievable. And so, you've got two fibers that are at their point of presence, which is at Co-Logics, and they really essentially go around Lakeland. And then, you've, and so, you've got three of those rings. Each one of the rings is composed of two fibers, obviously. And so, that will serve as the backbone and the infrastructure. So, going forward, the intent obviously would be to come off of those rings to provide services to not only residents, but also commercial customers. Yes, sir?
Mr. Torres, thank you. Well, of the 131 physical cable miles, which adds up those particular three rings, can we say that we then have capability of touching pretty much our citizenry or our residents in this, what we call Lakeland community?
So, when, and I've got a map after this, so you can kind of see the rings, just to kind of illustrate, at least gives you a visualization of the Lakeland service territory, Lakeland service territory, and then the rings. And I can't speak for Summit, but I'm assuming they designed those rings so that they could meet that specific requirement. Yes, sir?
Yeah.
Because they, you know, you've got an outer ring, an inner ring, and then an inner ring to that. And so, the intent there would be to, you know, whoever, wherever you have the, not only the resources and the capacity, but distance, I'm sure is going to play a role in that criteria on determining which ring they would connect back to.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions on just the rings? Just because that is a lot of the work that has been completed to date. I'll go ahead and go on to the next, the next bullet there, which is the two fibers that were, we thought we could, we would go ahead and highlight this to give the commission an update on Mr. Holmes. It's from an infrastructure perspective, what was provided in order to meet those requirements. I know Mr. Holmes is a customer of Summit, and so, really, this is just to illustrate, we basically did the same thing that we did for the rings for those nine miles and those two fibers that were provided. That is a straight haul from the location that he's at, all the way back to the point of presence at Co-Logic. The next bullet is really, this is, this happens, this is a day-to-day type of operational item that occurs. We have a meeting with Summit. It's a planning and operational meeting every three weeks where we have conversations with them. And obviously, if anything comes up in between that, we have an open line of communications. But a lot of times, what'll come forward is for us to do some pre-design work and synchronization with Summit Broadband for potential customers or whatever it may be, so that we can provide them whatever data they need in order to meet whatever quotes or requirements that they have specific to potential customers going forward. I'll go ahead and move over to the other column, the fiber utilization and time and materials. This is really just to kind of put some, put some, so you can see as far as what, from a resource and a fiber utilization perspective, what's being utilized in order to meet these requirements and in order to support Summit. As was mentioned earlier, 131 physical cable miles, you just multiply that by two because you've got two fibers, and that just shows you the dark strand miles that are utilized. So, at least it gives you some perspective of the use of the resources. As far as time and materials, we've attributed 619 labor hours to supporting Summit Broadband to this point. And between the labor hours and the materials, it's equated to a little bit, a little north of $42,000. And we have, to this day, we have not utilized the $100,000 or any part of the $100,000 that was allocated in order to augment or expand. So, we've been able to meet those requirements as far as having six fiber strands available. And then, wherever maybe that wasn't available, we just haven't, you want to get your biggest bang for your buck there when you're talking about the $100,000 when you utilize an augmentation. So, we haven't reached that point to date, and so, that's still available. Any questions, ladies and gentlemen, on anything thus far?
Sir?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Walker.
Well, McLeod, you first, I think.
Thank you. Oscar, what would you say has been the most challenging part of this, or maybe something you didn't expect in this process?
You know, it's actually been a really smooth process. I mean, we knew there was going to be a lot of work just because, you know, our telecom staff has been familiar with supporting fiber. And we had a good idea of what kind of the rings were going to look like, in a sense, you know, we have, before it was even in the contract, we knew, we had an idea, we knew it was going to be a lot of work. I don't know that anything has really been a surprise for me. I mean, we've been really synchronized. We meet, you know, like I said, we meet, we have a planning and operational meeting every three weeks. We even had a meeting with them where we brought them in because I know that there were some concerns from the public as far as construction concerns. With other providers, there were issues and concerns there, so we figured we'd bring them into the equation a little bit and get them familiar with the process. So, when they do, when Summit does begin their major construction, they've kind of at least got a heads up of what to look for or some lessons learned. And so, you know, I don't know that anything's really been that much of a challenge, other than we kind of knew that it was going to be a lot of work in supporting them and continuously to support them. So, hopefully that answers.
That's good to hear.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And even picking back on what you just mentioned for Commissioner McLeod's question, now that we have, and doing what we're to support, you know, what we want to do for our residency and our service territory, and we have, I guess, the other couple of vendors that now doing what they're doing.
Yes, sir.
What do you see that, if there's any challenge, or would it be just more competitive now for cost to provide the kind of service and the kind of speed we want to have for us in our Lakeland community? And secondly, as far as the digital divide, making sure that we have supported Summit to get what needed to be done for that particular community or those areas as well?
Yes, sir. So, as far as the first question, you know, obviously, I think, I think more, more, more is good, right? Just because from a competitive perspective, because then these ISPs have to compete for the service, which is good for the citizens of Lakeland, I think, because it's, you know, hopefully it'll, it'll drive the cost down, but also provide more options as we move forward. And I'm sure that Kevin's probably going to cover that and a lot in his piece from, you know, marketing and analysis perspective, what it looks like out there as far as city, as far as Lakeland is concerned. As far as the Surf Lakeland piece, we've had conversations with Summit. We've had some very productive meetings with them. And I think we're in a, we're in a good spot as far as Summit understanding kind of what the process is. It looks like we've agreed upon what that direction looks like. I know Kevin's going to cover probably a lot of that on the details, but holistically, I haven't seen any issues from a Surf Lakeland perspective in providing, you know, the $20,000 toward the digital divide. It's been pretty, it's been a pretty smooth process through that as well. I think we're just trying to finalize, you know, crossing the Ts and dotting the Is on how exactly that's going to move forward. But I don't, I don't foresee any issues or concerns when it comes to that because I think we're right there.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Sorry, I missed you. All right, continue, please.
Yes, sir. And so, the next slide is just really, the intent of this slide is just to give your representation of, and I don't know if anybody has seen this yet, but at least it allows you to visually see it. So, the red is the Lakeland Electric Service Territory.
Yes.
And then, the purple ring is Ring One. The orange ring is Ring Two. And then, the yellow ring is Ring Three. So, this at least gives you an idea of how the rings are represented and illustrated. So, I thought maybe that'd give you a little bit of context, would at least allow you to see how that, what that looks like. Hopefully, it's helpful.
And so, when you look at those yellow, orange, and purple are all now connected?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Great.
And obviously, the intent going forward would be, you know, if you get a customer, they'd come off the ring because the ring's going to go back to their point of presence at Co-Logic.
Okay, great. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. So, pity any questions, I'll be followed by Kevin Coyne.
All right, Kevin, you're up. Thank you, sir. And team.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having us. We're looking forward to giving you guys an update today. A lot of great information to share. I've also was able to wrangle a couple of my colleagues to come off of vacation today. They're, we are off, but we're glad to be here. Yeah, so, thank you. Before we begin, I just wanted to just share with you that this has been a great partnership. It's actually kicked off, it's been, it's been really great to work with the team, Oscar and team, City Manager Charouse, everybody's been very helpful, very efficient and timely, willing to move quickly, especially when you saw us looking for 90 opportunities of quotes. It takes time on your end, your team's end, to provide the details that we need on the fiber capacity, et cetera. In terms of the rings, Oscar was right on point. The equipment is really the only thing that limits the capacity today. Those rings are your existing networks. That's the network you all bought that we partnered together to leverage. So, that's your existing network that we are utilizing those fibers and attaching our equipment to, to stand up and deliver services. So, everything that we do will come back into one of those rings. So, the inner ring to capture more of the inner city, and then you keep expanding out. And that's, that was the purpose of those rings. We're going to share with you today where we're deploying a lot of capital next as we continue to expand the footprint. So, looking forward to that. So, if we could, Richard, we'll go to the first slide. Thank you. So, today's agenda, I'm going to share just a quick snippet of a part of the team, not the entire team. There's a lot more people behind the residential local team that I'm going to share with you today. We're also going to share with you the network readiness, and we're going to take turns and tag-team this presentation here today and let the experts speak to some of the other slides. The marketing communications initiatives, we've been working with Kevin Cook on your team. Great partner, really excited, a lot of good stuff that's going on to joint market our partnership. And then, finally, I'm going to touch on bridging the digital divide, which is obviously an important aspect of this partnership. So, we're looking forward to that. So, just as I said, just to share a quick synopsis of the team. Lynn Pope, she heads up all of our marketing initiatives for the entire company. So, she's got complete internal, external communications, website, digital, creative technology, et cetera, et cetera. Sarah, who actually joined us today, she's actually sitting in the backseat, she came unexpectedly, so we're glad to have her support. She handles all marketing related specifically to fiber to the home, and she's got a number of years, over 25 years of experience in her fields. I'm going to skip over to Corral for just a moment. She handles, in your communities where you have HOAs that buy on behalf of your communities, she handles all marketing efforts for the, what we call the bulk purchases side of the house. And then, with me today is Brian Jones and Chris Cousin. Brian and Chris come from, again, a number of years with some of our competitors. They've joined Summit Broadband, helping us learn what not to do as a service provider, coming from previously Spectrum, and then Chris spent a number of years at Comcast. So, glad to have both of them here today. Now, there are another 10 to 12 people behind these individuals that are working on this market launch and bringing services to your community that are part of Summit Broadband. One more. And I'm going to turn this over to Chris to talk a little bit about our network readiness.
Morning.
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 So, our team has been working with Neil and Paul with the City of Lakeland, working on the cabinet placement throughout the city. If you can take notice to, I don't know if you can see them that well, but the little pins that we have in there, those are the network hubs that we're going to be putting in. Those will be both residential and commercial, be configured for both. And as we receive them, we'll be installing them. We have kind of a direction of where we want to start and then work towards the rest of the city. So, we're just going to kind of loop around. The transport back to Orlando, estimated completion on that is March 15th. And until the cabinets start to deploy, we will have services via point-to-point. To cover, this is Phase One. This is going to cover ZIP codes 33801, 802, 3, and 6. Any questions before I go further?
They will be pleased.
That's my area.
Just some examples of the construction that's going to be happening.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry.
If I could, go back to the ZIP codes here. Why did you skip five? What reason would there not be, 33805 not being a service area at this point?
What drives the, what drives this?
What drives this jump over five?
Yeah, there's nothing to drive the jump over five. It was just a contiguous section that made sense from a construction standpoint. We're going to continue to expand beyond this. This is roughly about 6,000 homes. We're doing it in chunks of about 6,000 homes, so we will continue to build beyond these areas, and we will obviously hit 805.
It's the bullseye in the center.
That is the bullseye. I'm saying five is the bullseye.
Okay, so...
We'll get there.
This is Phase One, correct?
Yes.
And just to put some context behind this, this construction that we're going to do to about 6,000 homes, this is roughly about 13, 14 million dollars. We're going to continue to invest that type of money each 5, 6,000 home blocks. So, we're going to continue to do that and deploy fiber to your communities.
Okay, continue, please. Thanks, Chris.
So, some examples of the construction that you'll see out there. Starting on the far left, you have the buried house drop. You've seen this, you know, with most of the services that you already have at the house. Then, if you go to the next one, is the directional boring, this is going to be the main line that's going to be put in. Next one is the underground flowerpots. If you take notice to the far right, you can see our hub with the typical pedestals beneath, or I'm sorry, behind it. So, instead of putting an external pedestal, we are putting them in the ground, flush with the ground, so you don't, cars hit them.
Right.
Lockovers, whatever. So, aesthetically, a lot nicer. And then, of course, you have the house box on the side of the house.
The fiber distribution hub, how often do you have those?
There'll be three within the first phase. We did originally have four. We brought it down to three to have less footprint.
And those were off the streets, correct?
I'm sorry?
Those will be located pretty far off the street.
Yeah, they will be no different than the hubs that are out there now.
Okay.
With the other services that are out there.
Okay. Continue, please.
Yep. So, timeline-wise, pre-construction and construction is beginning in February, March. First phase release of 1,000 homes in April. Second phase, 2,000 homes in May, and then another 3,000 in June, and then continuing after that. That is just the first 5,000 homes.
Where would 33805 be in your future phases, do you think?
We don't have insight into that today. We're actually working on the next 5,000 to 6,000 homes, which we will release in about four weeks, but we can share that with you when we have it.
Okay. Okay. Oh, yeah, good.
So, this next slide, this gives you some insight into our commercial services. We're spending a little more time today talking about fiber to the home, but we've already launched our sales teams and been marketing commercial services within your communities. And again, when you start to think about what we're doing here today in this partnership and why we believe the City of Lakeland chose Summit Broadband, it's because we're bringing a full suite of services, not just to offer to your fiber, to your home and residences, but to your enterprises, your hospitality, educational institutions, and their leading-edge products and services. When we do talk about specifically some of the products related to residential, there's not another service provider here in the city that can deliver the speeds that we are delivering to your residences, and we'll talk to that. There's also, and I'm going to preface a little bit of a headliner when you get to the slide, we're going to talk a little bit about prices. I want you to know that they are still very fluid. We're analyzing where the competitors are today, so they could change, and that's the benefit to the city. The city has now, you've kind of woken the sleeping giant by bringing us in, which is great. They don't want to invest money until they have some competition. They got competition, and now they're coming in, and we're okay with that because we're, you're going to see that we're offering not only faster speeds, but a full suite of products. So, on the commercial side, voice video, we have SD WAN, LTE fallover services, cloud services, and then clearly, data services going from, you know, call it 10 meg's to 100 meg's to a gig, 10 gigs to dark fiber solutions. And again, you all are partnering with us to deliver that solution. So, next slide. On the commercial launch timeframe, very similar to what you saw on the residential. We will be ready for commercial customers in June. We did turn up Pastor Holmes Church on Skyview, so he is operational, and he's using that fixed wireless solution to serve that community within about a mile radius of where he sits. We do expect to continue partnering with him on other locations to deploy his fixed wireless solution and bring him services to be able to do similar areas. But we wanted to get this kind of pilot phase up with him quickly, and we've done that, and he stood up to go. Next slide? Yep, okay.
Okay, so, our marketing communications initiatives. So, this is crucial in terms of our pre-construction and timeline, making sure that residents are aware of what's coming. And also, I'm going to provide an update on our marketing and offer strategy. And then, lastly, service availability. People in the construction area are going to want to know when they can get service, right? Next slide, please. So, here's our offers, and I want to go ahead and start with the two gigabytes. And I want to go ahead and start with the 2 gigabytes per second. That's right, 2 gigs, right? For fiber to the home, this is state-of-the-art technology. It delivers lightning speeds for all online activities to everyone in the home at the same time, okay? So what does that mean? Unlimited devices, you got live streaming, a superb gaming experience with multiple users. And then, the last thing I want to mention is our price. 2 gigs for $99.99. All right? So now the 1 gig. This is likely going to be our most popular product and speed. It has capacity for HD and 4K streaming, stable live streaming. It will upload and download huge files, and it's a great product for the smart homes out there. This is for residents wanting to level up. 1 gig fiber to the home for $79.99 per month. So let's look at the 500, or excuse me, the 250 to 500 megabits per second. We have some competitors out there not doing fiber, but they're offering those speeds. So I wanted to talk briefly about that. We often get, what's the difference, right, between the fiber, say, 500 or a regular cable company providing 400 speeds? So regardless of the speed, the fiber difference is the ability to deploy symmetrical speeds delivering digital information fluently, right? And efficiently. Fiber optics are not affected by the things like electromagnetic interference or weather, which is a source of downtime for copper networks. So all of this results in better coverage and more capacity in the home. We have a contact center for support, and of course, as Kevin indicated, a great leadership team here to support this effort. Any questions on this slide before I, okay, I do have another part of this. So the grand finale on this slide is, we have a free professional install that includes a router and extenders. So I'm going to explain that here. So field techs are trained on customer service and knowledge. They're going to go into the home and complete the fiber-to-the-home installation, installation, right? Providing the router and Wi-Fi extenders to ensure coverage, again, at no extra charge. A lot of our competitors charge for that kind of product when they rent that from the telecom company. All services are set up with no contract, no credit check, and no service bundles required. So with cell phones, smart TVs, gaming console technology, the fiber-to-the-home that we offer is a turnkey solution. However, if you're like me and you still have a home phone, landline phone, we offer that service starting at $99.99 per month. So also, for, you know, for the video customers out there, we can accommodate our customers wanting video options. We partner with mybundleTV.com to tailor that solution for the customer. Okay? Any questions on this before we go?
Wi-Fi 6, just comment on that technology.
Yeah, I mean, it's basically the latest and greatest technology out there, and it's going to provide a full mesh, that router provides a full mesh system, which essentially creates that coverage area in the home, and enables the technology to be compatible with most of the updated devices out there, whether it's a smart TV or gaming console. So it provides that technology needed.
Well, how many MIPS to the wireless device typically, if you were bringing in a 1 gig fiber?
How many, what was the question?
What would this speed be on the Wi-Fi device typically?
We will, so the 1 gig, for example, when you connect, not wireless, you're connecting hardwire, you'll get 1 gig speeds up and down, right? It's a symmetrical speed. So you'll get the upload and download at 1 gig. Now, when you go to Wi-Fi, really, you're not going to get necessarily 1 gig. And really, here's why. So a lot of devices, including your cellphone, are not, they don't have the capability of getting 1 gig. I don't believe there's any device, cellphone, right now that's. So a lot of it's device-driven when it comes to Wi-Fi, but also you lose a little bit of that speed when you don't connect hardwired. So it depends on the device, but I would say roughly 700, 800 to 900. I mean, I've seen, we tested in a home, somebody had a laptop, a brand-new laptop, and they got 960 using Wi-Fi. So it's going to vary based on the device. That's a good question, though. Any other questions on this slide before we go to the next?
Brian, I'm going to add a couple more comments. So this is exactly what I was sharing with you earlier. It's really important for your residences, the community, to really understand the offering. There's a lot of gotchas, a lot of nickel and diming. We tried to make this very user-friendly, and we're not locking them into contracts. And that's another big differentiator. One of the things that Brian mentioned, free install. If you want a free install from some of the competition we've seen, they'll charge you for that. If you want to add on, you know, some other aspect to this Wi-Fi mesh network, they'll charge you for that. They may charge you for additional set-top boxes. They don't provide IPTV. We do. We, they're not providing your community video products at all. And so we're providing that as well as part of the solution. So I just want to make sure that the residents here of the City of Lakeland understand there are some differences that they should take note of.
Thanks, Kevin. You just reminded me before we moved to the next slide, I forgot to mention the 250 to 500 speeds. Those are designed for the casual user that also wants to take advantage of that pure fiber optic network. And so, and that's why we have that 250 speed available at the fiber-to-the-home, and it's at a starting price of $39.99. It's a very competitive offer. And as Kevin spoke to already, the aspect of the contract, the fact that we have no contract, the main fiber competitor in the community is requiring a one-year agreement. So that's a big differentiator when it comes to our product. And I think we're ready to get, oh, yes, please.
Commissioner Madden?
Thank you. So if you have a customer who starts at the $39.99, they have fiber to their home, and it's the device attached that makes it 250 or 1 gig. Is that correct? And then if it is correct, then they could upgrade?
Yeah, the, I think I understand your question. I mean, if the device is hardwired, they should be getting 250 up and down. I think that was the first part of your question. And then the second part is, we have an installation strategy that we hope that the customer might upgrade one day. So we'll often install a router that's capable of up to 1 gig, and that, or 2 gig, and that'll enable that customer to upgrade when they find that they want to get the faster speed.
So you can do that remotely?
That's the sign of a moment.
Yes. Thank you. All good questions. Move to the next slide?
Yes, please.
Okay. Kevin's going to take this one?
You can stay there. So just, again, give you some insight that there's a lot of work, and you're going to see the work that this team's been working on. A lot of work that went into really deploying and rolling out services to your community. The most important facet to this is the communication piece, making sure that we are communicating at every turn of the way. And this gives you a glimpse of what we do. 30 days prior to construction, we're doing press releases. We're releasing construction letters. We're launching our fiber-to-the-home website. And then you can work your way across. I'm not going to read every one of these, but we are going to be intimately in touch with your residences on every step of the way. Yard signs, pre-construction, construction signs, when we do have construction. When fiber's available, we'll switch those signs out, and we'll have different signs for your community. And I do want to make sure your residents know that we have not started construction in your community, and therefore, that's our competitor that's doing all the damages that you may have seen. We do have a construction partner that our investors purchased, a company named Wycom. They're local to Florida. They've been building in Florida for many, many years, and we're confident in their capabilities, and we're excited to work with them on this project. So they will be the construction, the primary construction vendor when we start to build out these networks. Next slide.
Okay, so this is the construction letter, right? And this is what Kevin just showed you on the first, the slide before this, the very first step, is to do the direct mail construction letter. And it's notifying the resident that construction is coming. So it'll explain, you're going to see trucks rolling, you're going to see trucks doing work, and workers, and they'll have the Summit Broadband logos on them. So that'll be helpful, obviously. It provides the resident with features and benefits of fiber. One of them included is that it will increase home value, right? And it's right there on the construction letter, saying by up to 3.1%. So if somebody is not going to be a customer, but they see that, that'll be a positive for them. It provides more information as it directs them to our website, and provides a phone number for additional questions. Go to the next slide. So speaking of the fiber-to-the-home website, the next few slides I'm going to speak to are about the website. So what this does is introduce Summit as a Florida-based, Florida-focused organization, provides an intro to fiber-to-the-home. As you can see as well, it will provide a validation tool. This is key, because as construction is ongoing, they'll be able to validate their address to see if it's serviceable at that point in time. As we move forward, we'll add more addresses, and people can check to see if they can get We can go to the next slide. This one includes what to expect during construction, a learn on the fiber 1 gig, and then it provides a fiber difference, which I think is a great component. It gives you a side-by-side of fiber cable versus copper cable. So that slide is really good. It's on our website, and it also provides a great list of FAQs, which speaks to questions around construction, specifically as it relates to the home installation, once an order is placed. So once, they'll see construction going on, and then at that point, they can validate their address. And then once they order the installation, then they will be able to see this and see what's involved with that, which is important. Residents want to know what kind of construction is going to take place on their property when we do this. And as Chris pointed out, we use directional boring, which typically leaves a lot less mess after the construction. Go to the next slide. So I know I already spoke to the fiber-to-the-home product availability, but this is going to be on our website. Today, when you see our website, it's designed as a general overview, but in March, this is going to go live, and you're going to see all this available to the public. And it illustrates the features and benefits, speeds and pricing, as I already spoke to. And then I'm going to have my partner, Chris, he's going to help me out and speak to the inquiry form that's on the right-hand side here.
So in the meetings that we've had with the City of Lakeland, one thing we kept hearing, they were getting a lot of calls from customers, or from residents, complaining about some of the construction that was going on. One of the things that we did is we took it upon ourselves to have a report form for your residents, so that they can notify us directly. And those notifications will be sent directly to the construction crews out in the field to handle the situation within 24 hours.
Excellent. Great job.
Okay.
Next slide, please. Okay, outside plant brand awareness. So up to one month prior to construction, we will start the site brand outside plant awareness program. This is key, is that it will create a lot of buzz and excitement from the people right inside the site area, which is very important, because as Chris indicated, people start to wonder what's happening, and they start calling the city, right? Well, this is going to help with that, because it's designed to reduce calls to the city. And it's great. It's effective onsite communication. So we have stuff like our yard signs, or door hangers, which state construction underway or coming soon, those types of things. So we have different initiatives that we put out there in order to make sure that they know what's happening in their neighborhood. And of course, all branded with Summit Broadband logos. Any questions on that?
Just don't understand we use the word "plant," because people think you're affecting their plants, but this is your brand awareness program, unrelated to planting.
Yeah, I mean, that's in the title, but you won't see any of that in the, yeah. Good point. We can go to the next slide.
People get sensitive about their yards.
They do. Yeah, that won't be in any of the communication on the site, brand awareness. So our welcome kit, this is a great tool that we'll use with the installers. So the installers, once the service is ordered, will hand-deliver this to the customer during the installation. It includes a warm welcome, our internet speeds, a brochure with easy account setup, and Wi-Fi enablement, which is very important. And then a user-friendly Spectrum Broad, Summit Broadband. I was afraid I was going to do that. Summit Broadband Tech Fix is brainwashing.
I can show your pan attention. That's right. That was sharp. That was very beautiful.
Summit Broadband Tech Fix app to assist with Wi-Fi, which can be rectified using this application. So you can download it very easily, whether it's iOS software or Android, and put it right on your device, and it can be helpful understanding the Wi-Fi. If they have to have any questions or any connectivity issues, they can oftentimes fix it without calling a service number. Any questions on that? Is that my branding mistake?
And I'll just add, the Tech Fix app that we have and deployed, and that is live, and our customers utilize it today, a great solution to help prevent that truck roll. As we know, with COVID, people don't want to be in the homes. We, our call centers, use that device when a user downloads it and launches that device. We can get real readings from your router. And they have a, it's almost like a FaceTime feature, so that they can take a snapshot of the router. Our call center gets it live, they can draw on that picture, send it right back to the user. You plugged into the wrong port, or what have you, to help them troubleshoot that issue in their home. So it's a much quicker resolution process with our customers. So we're pretty excited about that. Next slide?
Yep. This one's Kevin.
That's okay. So co-branding. I just wanted to spend a few minutes to talk again about the great partnership that we're continuing to have together. The city's working really closely with our marketing team. I mentioned Kevin Cook earlier, doing, working towards joint press releases, various newsletters. You can see the yard sign with the City of Lakeland. I believe some of this is pending, still approval, but it could look something to what you see on the slide. Utility bill inserts. And most importantly, I did want to just touch on Surf Lakeland again, funded by Summit Broadband, powered by Summit Broadband, in the sense that we will deliver that solution to your nonprofit organizations. So again, we're excited to partner in that piece of the digital divide. Next slide.
So online reputation management program. This is the current program we have in place internally, and what it does is rate our service when there's an installation that occurs. So the tool is currently being used in the company, and it will be included in the Lakeland launch as well. So it helps drive performance, customer service during the installation. The installers love it, and they are shooting to get the five-star rating. You can see here, it helps drive online positive rankings, review from our customers. So our current company rating is 4.6. So I just wanted to say, on behalf of our entire team, from our CEO to every department, every level, we're all very focused on providing superior customer service to the City of Lakeland as we implement our fiber-to-the-home initiative here. So thank you. I'm going to give it to Kevin to take us home.
All right, next slide. So in conclusion, just wanted to touch on bridging the digital divide. There's a number of initiatives ongoing, and we all know the money that's been approved by the federal government, over $42.5 billion for broadband initiatives and bridging the digital divide. We've been participating both at the federal level through our investors to help guide and create some legislation on the rules that will come out from the agency that's administering that program, the NTIA, but also, more importantly, here at the state. So I've been very involved personally with Katie Smith at the office of broadband, and the DAO's office, and one of her partners, Kwanis Curry, engaged as they continue to look at ways to create how they're going to distribute this money when it comes down from the feds. Timing right now, in terms of the federal government, it's probably another nine, 10 months they're thinking before that actually starts to get distributed. months they're thinking before that actually starts to get distributed to the states. And then what also has happened is locally, the state has directed the counties to create these local technology planning teams. And Summit Broadband is very engaged in those teams. And right here in Polk County, with Polk Vision, they're doing a phenomenal job of really trying to understand the underserved areas of your community. And I know Commissioner Madden participates, Oscar Torres participates as well, and there's a number of others that are on this committee. And so, interestingly enough, Polk County is leading the state in terms of really understanding what the underserved areas are within. And so the state's taken a direct interest. So we now have Kuanis Curry at the broadband office now participating in the Polk Vision meetings that we have every month. So that's ongoing. So there's actually two websites. Polk County created their own website to do a survey. It's polk.vision. If you just type in polk.vision, you can get to that survey. And we would encourage your residents to all take that, and there's a speed test on there. The more we can show the areas that are underserved, the more funding that will come to Polk County itself. So participating in that would be great. The other website is on the Office of Broadband website under the DEO's office. They're also doing a speed test. And going to that website, and I'll be glad to share it with you if you don't have that or can't find it. But the more we can get the state of Florida to participate in these speed tests, the more money and the more funding that can come to the state of Florida. Right now, based on the calculations that they're seeing coming out of the Fed, they're anticipating somewhere between $1 billion to $4 billion coming to the state of Florida, which is pretty significant. Good and bad. Good, that it's a lot of money; bad, that it's showing that Florida's more underserved than maybe other states. So a much-needed effort there. So Summit Broadband's heavily involved in these meetings and discussions. So we're going to help assist getting as much of that money and funded here to Polk County.
Excellent.
And that's it. If there's any questions, be glad to address any other questions.
I think the commission would appreciate having the slides packed available to us, if you could do that, and as well as Oscar, yours too. And so, any other questions by the commission?
All right, to the audience, was there one?
I see one on your face.
So I live in your first zone that you guys are on, which is excellent because I feel that I've got a cable provider right now that seems to step up from net-zero dial-up, right? I mean, it's just, it's not very good. So my question is, and we have another provider right now that's trenching, right? That's running pipes into that. So I guess you guys will be coming through and running your own stuff, right? So the boxes and everything we have, those will be duplicated with your company, correct?
Correct, yes. Good.
Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner McCloud.
Well, just a comment, and I do want to commend everyone on the timing, the timeline of getting this rolled out. Because when I think of having the agreement finalized in July of last year and to June of this year, you're being able to provide services to residents and to businesses, I think that speaks to the teamwork, the collaboration between city staff, Sean, you and your team, and Oscar, and your team as well as Summit. And so thank you for doing that. It seems relatively quick, the overall timeline to roll this out.
Well, Commissioner, I really appreciate you acknowledging that. There's been a lot of work, and it felt like there was a quiet period, but hopefully this shows the amount of work, enormous effort that's gone in to both City Manager, Commissioner, City Manager Sean Charas's team, tongue-tied there, and our team as well. There's a lot of complexity. It is. It really is.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to also comment on that. You know, hopefully from this presentation today, both the commission and the public can see that our partnership with Summit Broadband is alive and well. There's been an awful lot that's been going on to get us to this point, and it's to the credit of your staff and our partners at Summit that we've been able to move in the way that we've had. You know, I've been keeping the commissioners at some of our one-on-one meetings updated about we're moving forward, and a lot of it was behind the scenes. And so today was a good opportunity to really unveil what all has occurred, to get us to the point that Summit is at and to provide services to the community.
Commissioner Reed.
Thank you. I live in O5 as well, and I wish you were there, Derek, and we have...
I was thinking I would be an old ranger.
And I'm happy with what I have, so I hope you meet your goal and get into Phase Two very quickly.
We may have to pull the trailer on O5.
With, to the audience, you know, this is a fruit of a lot of years of work in terms of just alignment. Commissioner Selvage and Commissioner Troller were early participants in helping to bring that information along, as well as, of course, the other commission. And so we're grateful to get to this point. This may seem a little long and more like a workshop that you've just been exposed to, but that's because that's how significant this is, we believe, to the future of our community. And we can grow in a lot of other ways, but if we don't grow in our ability to transmit data quickly and to have it reach people in their homes, we aren't doing our job as the city commission. Commissioner Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I was not going to share this, but I thought it best. And I do appreciate the forthright movement that we've had, and I concur with what Commissioner McCloud has said, because it's been, you know, just last year, and here we are about to have service to be offered to our customers, I don't mean citizens. But I would ask that you might want to look at your marketing piece. Your marketing piece is not shown on inclusivity, and I think we need to make sure you look at that. I looked at it online, looked at what you saw there, and I thought, well, you might want to step up a little bit, maybe. I would suggest that anyway, you know, to make sure it's a little more inclusive.
Fair comment, and we'll take that back for sure. Appreciate that. Commissioner Madden.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for coming today. I know that I, for one, have been asking our city manager when we would get this update, and so exciting. I did also, just because you have been able to see how Polk Vision's steps, you know, have positioned us well for these federal dollars. And so I'd be remiss if I didn't also mention, you know, Terry Brigman, who was our CIO for years, who was going to those Polk Vision meetings when people didn't even, you know, know the difference between coax, cable, fiber, you know, Wi-Fi. And I think it was kind of, the technology made it scary for people to participate in the conversation. And so when you see people who see ahead, you know, like Terry, and then now with Oscar, and with people who, from Winter Haven, Hypnogen, who's been so advanced with wanting to try to commit to dig ones policies throughout the county, to just really connect the whole county, and knowing the importance of it, and seeing, you know, a lot of people just want to turn the light on and know that, you know, the electricity somehow works. But the folks who really know the difference in the speed of light, how transformative that can be on fiber versus, you know, the more antiquated technology, it's difficult to communicate to neighbors and friends. But I think COVID perfectly tested those theories that we do need more bandwidth and we need the faster speeds, and that nothing beats the speed of light. So I've been a huge fiber fan. I know Neil and Paul, you know, the fiber dudes, love, I loved talking to them when I first became a commissioner, just about, you know, getting a fiber-to-premise option. And, you know, certainly, you know, kind of, our colleague, Commissioner Troller, would have loved that to have been just something that we provide as a city, like Lakeland Electric, thinking of potential dividends, and then vetting it and having workshops and, you know, public hearings, and then sending out the RFP. But I think that all of, it's a good sign to our community that we actually have a full room today to see that sometimes you have an idea or you start to bring something forward. And, you know, if you're that squeaky wheel, and if it's, you know, an idea that's important and true, and you keep saying it, then you will see it happen. And so I can attest to that, that at first I thought, oh, we're just never going to get competition in the market. There's only one monopoly here. Now, you know, we actually have competition. We have a fiber-to-premise option here, and so it's just really exciting. And I did want to just point to Terry and Oscar and Troller and our fiber team and our IT department, just the visionaries who have been talking throughout the county for, you know, probably at least a decade, you know, to get something like this to happen. So Godspeed on all of your marketing and construction.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the time. Take care. Anything else? Thank you very much. I appreciate the presentation. All right, well, we actually have no proclamations today to read, so that's an area we'll pick up some speed, and that goes to committee reports and related items. And we'll start with our report of the municipal committee, unless it could be skipped. I'm looking at our city attorney based on the fact that we had it here.
Sure, the arrangement on the agenda is up to your discretion. As far as municipal committees, are you suggesting delaying it to the end?
Do we have to read it again?
You could just specify what was, what's in the minutes.
Okay, so why don't you do a summary statement?
So at the municipal boards committee this morning at 8:45, there were three recommendations from Annie Gibson to reappoint some members, Megan Hawkes to an additional three-year term, Talitha Bean to an additional three-year term, and to also appoint Dennis William to a three-year term.
Moved approved? Should we do that one time?
Well, I think they've already been approved. We just approved the minutes.
Well, when we get done, all years could be approved in one motion. Do you recap? That's okay.
Yes, and the Megan Hawkes was from January 19th, 2022, to January 18th, 2025. Talitha Bean would be from January 22nd, 2022, to January 21st, 2025. And the Dennis William Irving would be from February 21st, from 2022 to February 20th, 2025. So these would all be recommendations that were approved at the committee for the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. For the Affordable Housing Review Committee, the recommendation from Annie Gibson was to reappoint Richard Osteen to an additional three-year term, February 18th, 2022, ending February 17th, 2025. And then on the Civil Service Board, there was a recommendation from Mark Farrington to appoint Beatrice McKee to a three-year term, beginning February 21st, 2022, ending February 20th, 2025. And then on the Utility Committee, there was a recommendation from Lakeland Economic Development Council through our city manager, Sean Charas, to appoint Terry Hamilton to a three-year term, beginning March 7th, 2022, ending March 6th, 2025. And Mr. Hamilton will fill the industrial rate class representative seat. So all of these were motioned by the mayor and seconded by the chair, Stephanie Madden, and passed unanimously. So I will, I guess you'll entertain the motion to accept my...
Is there a motion to approve those?
Moved to approve.
In total? All those in favor signify, any discussion by commissioners? Any discussion or questions by the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same, unanimously passes. That allows us to go to our Real Estate and Transportation Committee, and we will have Commissioner Music, who's chairman, make that report.
Thank you very much. The Real Estate and Transportation Committee met in the city commission chamber. Commissioner Mike Music, Chair, and Commissioner Chad McCloud, member, were present. Commissioner Bill Reed was absent. Mayor Bill Mutt and Commissioner Steffi Madden were present. Commissioner Mike Music called the meeting to order at 8:20 a.m. The purpose of this meeting was to discuss the proposed lease agreement with Legends Airway LLC, also known as Legends Moving Forward. Legends has been operating at the airport since 2015. Legends currently occupy 7,500 square feet of hangar and office space on a month-to-month basis, but is now seeking to enter into a longer-term lease for that space. Legends operates an air cargo charter service, which includes airline offices and training, and operates its own flight school, Legends Aviation Academy at this location. The initial term of the lease will be good for one-year period, with a retroactive effective date of February 1st, 2022, subject to approval by the city commission. The lease provides for five additional one-year terms of renewal options upon mutual written agreement of the parties. Rent for the initial one-year term will be $4,176.88 per month. The monthly rent includes utilities, but does not include any applicable taxes, which Legends will pay in addition to its base rent. Base rent for the renewal options, if exercised, will increase by 2.5%. Staff recommended that the city commission approve the lease agreement with Legends and authorize the appropriate city officials to finalize and execute this agreement consistent with the above stated terms. The action was Commissioner Chad McCloud moved to approve the lease. Commissioner Mike Music seconded, and the motion carried unanimously two to zero. The committee adjourned at 8:23 a.m.
Thank you for that report.
Moved to approve.
Motion to approve. And a second? Discussion by commissioners? Any discussion or questions by the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same, unanimously passes. That brings us then to requests to appear from the general public, and I'll turn that over to our city manager for that introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did have a request to appear from the public, from some residents and representatives of Sandpiper, so I believe those individuals are here. And if you would, please, you may come to the podium.
Good morning. About a month ago...
State your name, please, just for the record.
My name is David Crowell, C-R-O-W-E-L-L. About a month ago, we appeared before the board of the commission, and we had a petition that we had over 250 signatures that were not in favor of having the sidewalk project that was projected to be. We were told at that time that we had to go back to the POA, and mistakenly, we went to the board. The board went to the attorneys, and the attorney said that it wasn't part of the POA board's concern, it was concerning the residents. There were proponents for the sidewalk, and those proponents had scheduled two meetings. They arranged for the hall, they arranged for the speakers and all of that. They decided how it was going to be voted, and it was voted. We had two meetings, one on a Wednesday afternoon and the other one on a Thursday night. On Thursday night, one of the fellows in the audience asked for a show of hands, all in favor of supporting it, you know, and all those against. There was three people in the hall that were in favor of having the sidewalks. The majority of our residents don't want the sidewalks. We feel that it's not a safety issue. The streets are light enough, the traffic is light enough. The money could be spent better for somebody else that would really want the sidewalks, and we don't want it. We would really like to have the commission take a vote on this and put this to rest for once and for all, so that the people who have the threat of having their yards torn up and the driveways torn up can rest and relax. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Jim Brown. I'm also a resident, and there's many residents of the Sandpiper. We've had a good record there for the last 36 years. We've got quite a wide road coming through on Sandpiper Drive, which is where they're wanting to put a sidewalk on one side. We got a 24-foot-wide road. In 36 years, we've never had an incident where a vehicle ever struck a pedestrian. Now, all of a sudden, we were told that this had been planned back when we were originally built out, from the original plans. Come to find out, this was not true. This was cooked up in order to bring us into a standard for the new locations that are being built. And we don't think that we should have to deal with that because we have a very nice neighborhood, and we don't want yards, sprinkler systems, driveways torn up. If they put in what they're proposing to do, some of the people's cars and trucks will be too long. They'll be sticking out onto the sidewalk, and that will create a problem. So we had, I'm the one that said, we'd like a hand, a vote by hand, to see who it was that wanted to have this here tonight, because everybody was talking about, this is crazy. All right, well, the two former board members that are no longer board members, partially because of this and other things like this, had to resign. So now we got to get a new board that's going to represent the people of Sandpiper. The deal of it is, like I said, there's so many things that are negative about this and nothing that's positive. So we don't want it. There's no reason for the city to waste money on something to force the residents that don't want something done. It could be better spent places where it's needed. It's not needed at Sandpiper. And we asked at that meeting we had with 77 votes against and 3/4, if it would have been 78 if I'd have raised my own hand, but I just asked for that vote, and it was evident at that time, there was no reason for anybody to think that the people in the Sandpiper want a sidewalk. We definitely are diametrically opposed to a sidewalk. So please stand with the citizens of Sandpiper and put this thing to rest once and for all. We don't need this. We don't want it. It doesn't make sense. It's a... It's a waste of money, and it's going to really hurt our neighborhood. And that's it for today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just to add some context, you know, to where we are presently on this issue, as we've discussed before, you know, the decision to start the process of placing sidewalks in the community came from some residents' request through the commission. And so the commission had asked about that, and that's what started the process. I did have also a conversation with the president of the Homeowners Association via phone, following the first appearance of Mr. Crowell. There was some confusion about what the commission asked the community to do. The attorney apparently had concerns that if the board took a vote, that that would be improper, because the board does not make that determination. It's the city commission and city staff that makes that determination. And so what the commission, if you will recall, had asked the residents to do was to just maybe have some meetings or to come up with a process by which they could gauge whether the majority of their community wanted these sidewalks, as was the initial request, or not. And so I think that led to the meetings that you heard about just a moment ago.
Got it. There is no action on this, other than that we've logged that in, and we will make sure that we work with Mr. Lazenby and team to be able to determine the best routes going forward. But we hear you loud and clear, I think, as a commission, and it is not our interest to waste money. I can promise you that. We're looking for ways to use money wisely all the time. Any other comments by the commission? Yes, Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Mayor. And just for clarification, Sean, that, the request that came through the commission, that was several years back, right? So that's before a number of us were here. This has been in the pipeline for a number of years.
I would have to get a better track of the timeline, but I don't know that it was several years ago, but it hasn't certainly been recent. I wouldn't characterize it as a recent discussion that we heard from the commission.
And then I do wonder, is there an opportunity, from staff's perspective, to go back and do, I don't know if it's mail ballots or how we typically do this process, because from where I sit, I feel like I get about, it's two to one. You get two emails that say, we don't want this, we never wanted it, and then one comes in that says, actually, we would like sidewalks. And so trying to get our hands around that, the community sentiment, a little bit stronger than what we have today, does that make sense? What I'm asking is, is there an opportunity to collect that feedback?
Well, we have petition feedback that's extensive from them. And Mr. Lazenby, would you mind coming up and maybe weighing in on this, because this will give you a little sense of the perspective and the plans on the city's part?
My name's Ryan Lazenby with Public Works Engineering. The request came through in 2018. So about 18 months ago, we started working through the Homeowners Association president, because there's about 1,100 different residents there. So it's very difficult to meet with each resident on an individual basis. We started to meet with the Homeowners Association president before we even picked up our pencils or committed any dollars towards engineering to talk about some of the issues, which we primarily saw as there's a lot of paved and patterned pavement driveways out there, and that we were going to be putting a concrete sidewalk through, and the folks might not be happy for it. And that's how we, you know, kind of ended up on the east side of the roadway instead of the west, because there's three less driveways over there and three less people to tick off. So after that, we kind of developed a plan, and that's when we typically start reaching out to communities around what we call a 60% plan. And the reason is, is that's the first opportunity we have where we can actually show them something. You know, and we reach out and start talking to the homeowners association, what do you think? How can we make this better? And I will tell you, I've been doing this kind of work for a long time, and there is never, never even close to unanimous, you know, support for a project. It's usually somewhere in the middle, you know, based on what I experienced last week. In this community, it does seem like it's overwhelmingly against it. And staff's role in the last two meetings was just to say, okay, what are your concerns? And can we address some of those concerns through engineering, like impacts to trees, sprinkler system, what's going on with these driveways? And the answer is, I think we could, you know, addressed a lot of those, but they're still kind of, my judgment overwhelmingly against having the sidewalk there.
And there's not necessarily community belief that there's a need for it at all.
Well, you know, from an engineering standpoint, and just statistically, it's always better to separate pedestrians from the roadway. There are pedestrians using the roadway. However, we do look into that kind of thing. So we look into a five-year crash history, because if you just pick out a year, you might see some randomized thing that's really not a trend. There's about a crash a year in Sandpiper documented. There might be some where, hey, hit your car, here's a hundred bucks, you know, so I don't have to call insurance. But there's about a crash a year, none of them involve pedestrians or bicycles. We also looked at speeds on the corridor and the 85th percentile, which means most of people, 85% of the people, are driving under 25 miles per hour. That doesn't mean that there's not an occasional person that goes through there, like, what the heck was that? It's just there's not a consistent speed problem through there.
Commissioner Music.
Thank you, Ryan. So on, as I was reading through one of the documents that were handed to us on this topic, it talks about, you know, city using, you know, the space where the sidewalks will go. That is currently city right-of-way anyway, correct? So we're not actually encroaching into any of their own space, or am I incorrect there?
That's correct. We proposed to construct the sidewalk entirely within city right-of-way. We did offer a alternative at the beginning of the project, where they really have some majestic-looking ponds. I think we can avoid them, staying within the right-of-way, but just to try to make it more aesthetically pleasing. They have their retention pond and a track where there is no homes. We said that, hey, we'll put it behind the palm trees if you would like, but that would require an easement from the HOA.
So, and it seems like it's overwhelming, and that's the direction that I would personally go, is to scuttle this and be done. But just from a logistical construction standpoint, I know a lot of the concern is, we've got irrigation, we've got sidewalks, but anytime that the city is going to go and do a sidewalk, any of those issues are corrected by the city, correct? We're not digging up irrigation, leaving it for the homeowners to deal with, we're not, is that?
So as far as the driveway is concerned, the cost to restore driveway, restore sod is borne by the city. In fact, we typically, because we have to make this sidewalk ADA compliant, which means your driveway could be slightly steeper than it was. In addition to that, I've said, if you want us to come on your property and give us the right to come on your property, we'll go further into your driveway and reconstruct it so we can give you a flatter driveway. Irrigation has historically been, the cost has been shifted over to the citizens, but hey, you guys, if you wanted to see this sidewalk, I'm sure you could say, hey, we don't want them paying for irrigation. It wouldn't be a substantial increase to construction cost.
Thank you. Commissioner Reed.
Thank you. They're going to have a long history with this property. It was ironically, I had sold it at Sam Rogers at Bond of Coca-Cola years ago, it's about a 307-acre parcel. And of course, I feel this is a natural thing of government overreach, per se, and our home rule. So, you know, I'm totally in favor of not having, we can use this money to do sidewalks somewhere else. Of course, if it comes back and become an issue down the road, we can always come back and maybe get in the process of re-appropriating these sidewalks. It may take seven, eight years from that process, but invariably, it could happen. But I totally endorse the citizens' rights to not have the sidewalks. I'll vote in that favor if we get to that point.
Well, especially given the fact that we have no crash incidence warranting otherwise, and we have the preponderance of citizens wanting no sidewalk. It would seem a good place not to do this. I don't know legally if there's any weigh-in on this at all, in terms of next steps?
Well, it's a managerial decision. I mean, I'm sure the city manager's going to listen heavily to what you have to say, but, so I'm sure they would appreciate some direction from the commission.
Okay. Is there anyone in favor of making this sidewalk go forward on the commission? Based on what we know? Okay, there is none.
Do we want to see how many people are here from the audience that may be for it?
How many people are for the sidewalk, raise your hand? And those opposed? Okay. So if that's somewhat indicative, and it's certainly consistent with some of the things we've heard, the need to do the sidewalk would have to be something that the Sandpiper residents would want to have to tell us, we really want that currency that is not required of them, correct? Otherwise?
That's correct.
So I think we pass. Okay?
That's fine, Mr. Mayor. And again, you know, it is a managerial decision, but the conversation started from the commission who had heard from residents initially, and that has continued on. And so it sounds like, as Mr. Lazenby characterized it from those meetings, there's a majority that would rather not have it. And so with that direction from the commission, we will stop, we've already stopped, and we won't proceed any further.
And we appreciate the work and time that you've set up to listen to these things and the leadership that you provide in that regard, because it is so important to us, to our citizens. Thank you very much for that. Oh, yes, sir.
One more question. What was the, what did we have budgeted?
We have remaining, we had about 300-plus thousand, maybe 310. We have $294,000 remaining available within that budget. There is a home for it.
Yeah, no doubt. I'm confident in that. We'd raise other hands for that. Commissioner Walker.
And not to prolong the subject, not to prolong, excuse me, the conversation on the subject. So we would now, if I'm right, Mr. Scherous, utilize the dollars that would have been appropriated to go to whatever we see being the next thing on the need basis. Am I saying that right?
Yes, sir.
In our city.
Yes, we have a, you know, we have a budgeted line item that provides for, you know, sidewalk design and construction, and so that will just remain in that account to be used on other projects.
Right. Well, I want to make sure, because the public who's listening would know that, you know, we're not going to cherry pick something else. It would go based on what, you know, the actual need-based situation calls for our sidewalks, and there was kind of concerns in our Lake, well, Lake area, right?
Correct. Which is a good thing, because you know there's a lot of inflationary pressure right now out there on our budgets.
Thank you so much for your work.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And thank you all for helping us understand the direction as well. Appreciate it. All right, we do not have an equalization hearing, and so that takes us to public hearings, and so our city attorney will take 3A1.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a number of ordinances for a public hearing in consideration of adoption today. The first of those is Prop. 22-002, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Lakeland, Florida, relating to the Land Development Code, amending Article 5 of the Land Development Code to remove development standards pertaining to sidewalk cafes, making findings, finding conformity with the comprehensive plan, providing for severability, provided in an effective date.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve. And a second. Discussion by commissioners? Any discussion or questions by the audience? Oh, I'm sorry.
This is the sidewalk cafe?
Yes, but this is just avoiding it.
Just to go to the park.
This is not the park.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
There will be a presentation later in the agenda.
You know, they may, if these folks want to leave, they may want to. I don't know if they want to stick around or not, but.
We're very excited.
Everyone is always, it won't hurt our feelings. Please enjoy. So any discussion by the audience? Or question? Okay, seeing none, all those, oh, this is a roll call vote, excuse me. Commissioner Walker. Aye. Aye.
Yes.
All right, unanimously passes.
Just backing up real quickly, did we approve the consent agenda?
No, we did not.
Okay, there you go.
Moved approved consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I missed it.
If I may, during the discussion on the consent items at the agenda study on Friday, Commissioner Madden had asked about the potential for some photos related to one of the items for the sludge holding tank blowers and aeration system. And so we do have those photos available. I believe Mr. Canis is going to display those real quickly.
It refers to City Attorney 6C3.
And this is just informational, based on the request.
All right, so we are, in my ear, we're back to the consent agenda and the approval of, but before we do the approval, we're going to look at one photo. Thank you.
So this is the in-use, where the blowers will go. That sludge in there, in this particular basin, it's just caked up on top. That's fairly normal. You can see a little note there about a sludge mixer on all four corners. There's like a little propeller system that's underneath to keep it mixed up, and then there's also pipe going in for blowers. And so it's just enough to keep the solids stirred up. What we're going to install is new blowers, but then an entire aeration piping system that will just keep the solids completely entrained in the process. It makes it easier to pull out and put in the trucks to haul it to Glendale.
That's something you want to paint, but.
This is the other basin that has not been dewatered yet, so you can see there's a lot more water in there. You can see the pipes, the aeration pipes and the mixers. And then these are the blowers that are extremely old. So we're expecting to find something more efficient and a little smaller in horsepower if necessary, which will save energy costs.
Thank you for providing those photos. All right.
That is fantastic.
Can I ask one question?
That's helpful.
Yes.
Where do we dope our sludge?
We have, it gets, it goes to Glendale, gets treated, and then we land-apply it. And I don't know the in-users, but there are several ranches out on the northeast side of town that we haul it to, and they spread it, land-apply it.
Okay.
All right, Commissioner Music.
Yeah, I just thank you for that. You know, it's one of those things that we so quickly pass over, right? And thank you for the question. But we just have such good expertise, you know, when we ask questions, you know, Mr. Lazenby was up there. We just, we ask a question and we get a good answer, and I just want everybody to realize that what they're paying for in their taxes and fees is a product that we're taking very good care of, and if something needs to be repaired or fixed, we do. I don't know, because it's so far out of my privy to, you know, to see a sludge pile and know that somebody is, you know, desperately wanting to make sure that's the best it can be. I just appreciate that.
Thank you.
Well, it goes back to Commissioner Madden's comment earlier, that we just take these things so for granted.
We do.
Lots of expertise and infrastructure involved. So thank you.
Thank you.
You didn't expect to come up and get all that, did you?
We love sludge aeration.
So the items on the consent agenda include our minutes, as well as the asterisk items that you can see present here as well. So is there any discussion on that? There's a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion by the audience or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same. So the consent is approved, and I apologize to our city attorney. That takes you to item 3A2.
3A2 is Prop. 22-003, an ordinance relating to public right-of-way, making findings, vacating public right-of-way located north of East Main Street, south of the CSX right-of-way, east of Lake Mirren, west of US Highway 98, north within the City of Lakeland, Florida, authorizing the recording of a certified copy of this ordinance, provided for severability, provided in an effective date.
Moved approved.
Motion to approve and a second. All right, from Commissioner McLeod, discussion. Seeing none, is there any, are there any questions or discussion by the audience? This is a roll call vote. Commissioner McLeod.
Aye.
Mayor Duggan, I would like to make a brief comment.
Let's go back and have some discussion.
Duggan, I'm sure, I've looked at the plans, and I think Wesley will do a great job. They're going to, from the onset, I'd been opposed to utilization of our open space around the lake, and for that purpose, I'm going to stay true to my calls and vote no. But I'm sure it will pass, and he'll do a great job.
All right. Commissioner Madden.
To that, I'll just add that I agree with leasing green space for more surface parking and would rather have a parking garage. But since we don't have a parking garage yet, and you need more parking, I'll be voting yes.
Yes, yes, yes. And yes. Okay, so we have one negative vote. All right, item three.
Next is Prop. 22-004, an ordinance relating to zoning, making findings, amending an ordinance 5183 as amended to modify an existing conditional use to allow for the construction of a 2,000-square-foot accessory building on property located at 4505 Old Road 37, finding conformity with the comprehensive plan, provided for severability, provided in an effective date.
Moved approved.
Second. Motion to approve and a second discussion by commissioners. Commissioner Music.
I know that when we had talked briefly before, there was some limits on what they were going to be able to do with this space, storage and racks and things like that. And they've done such a wonderful job, you know, taking this dilapidated structure and really doing well with it. What do we do when 10 years passes, they've sold it, and how do we make sure that in the future, an accessory building stays an accessory building?
Well, a conditional use is specific. Well, a conditional use is specific to the property owner. So the approval for this particular use would end when they sell to a new property owner.
Okay.
They have to come to Florida.
That's good.
Okay.
Learned in that moment.
Good, yeah, that's good. Thank you.
Any other questions by commissioners? Any by the audience? Okay, this is also a roll call vote. Commissioner Walker.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
That unanimously passes.
Next is Prop. 22-05, an ordinance relating to zoning, making findings. Amending Ordinance 3987 as amended to provide for a modification to PUD zoning to allow for the repair or replacement of existing legal, non-conforming, manufactured homes on certain lots within the Highland Fairways residential golf community, finding conformity with the comprehensive plan, provided for severability, provided in effective date.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve and a second. Discussion by commissioners. And this is one of these examples of a concurrency requirement that has some leniency in it for good reasons. And I think that's basically why it's being addressed. Any questions by the audience? Seeing none, Commissioner McLeod.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Unanimously passes. So you're done. Number five.
Five is Prop. 22-06, an ordinance relating to local government comprehensive planning, making findings, providing for small-scale amendment, number LUS 21-06, to a certain portion of the future land use map of the Lakeland comprehensive plan, our community 2030, changing the future land use designation from Community Activity Center, CAC, to Residential High, RH, on approximately .97 acres located at the northeast corner of Ralston Road and County Line Road, Community Activity Center to Residential High on approximately .21 acres, and Residential Low to Residential High on approximately .14 acres of property located at the southeast corner of Ralston Road and Gresham Farms Road, provided for severability, provided in effective date.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, motion to approve and a second. Discussion by commissioners. Any discussion or questions by the audience? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Commissioner Walker.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Unanimously passes. Number six.
Next is Prop. 22-07, an ordinance relating to zoning, making findings. Amending Ordinance 4918 to provide for a change in zoning classification from planned unit development, PUDs, to MF22 multifamily residential on approximately .97 acres located at the northeast corner of Ralston Road and County Line Road. PUD or planned unit development zoning to C1 pedestrian commercial zoning on approximately .21 acres, O1 or low-impact office to C1 pedestrian commercial on approximately 1.3 acres, and the application of C1 pedestrian commercial zoning on approximately .14 acres of property located at the southeast corner of Ralston Road and Gresham Farms Road, provided for severability, provided in effective date.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve and a second. Commissioner McLeod, discussion by commissioners. Any discussion or questions by the audience, comments? Seeing none, Commissioner McLeod.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Unanimously passes. Number seven.
Seven is Prop. 22-08, an amending ordinance, number 5535, as amended. The City of Lakeland Impact Fee Ordinance for Transportation Facilities, adopting findings, amending economic development impact fee mitigation incentives for certain capital facilities impact construction, extending sunset provisions, provided for severability, provided in effective date.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion by commissioners. Any discussion or questions by the audience? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Commissioner McLeod.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Unanimously passes.
Last is Prop. 22-09, an ordinance, amending ordinance, number 5536, as amended. The City of Lakeland Consolidated Impact Fee Ordinance, adopting findings, amending economic development impact fee mitigation incentives for certain capital facilities impact construction, extending sunset provision, provided for severability, provided in effective date.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve and a second by Commissioner Reed, was that, or McLeod? McLeod.
Same guy.
All right, discussion by the commission. Our questions? Any by the audience? Commissioner Walker.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Great. That's quick government in action right there. There are no resolutions. That brings us to item C1.
Item C1 is the second and final public hearing on a development agreement with Four Star USA Real Estate Group for property located south of West Pipkin Road, west of Yates Road, north of Yule Road, and west of Busy Bee Lane. Four Star is proposing to develop a residential community of up to 1,051 single-family detached and 180 single-family attached dwelling units. This is going to take place on approximately 486 acres in that area. And what this agreement is doing is trying to mitigate the transportation impacts of that development. And it will require that the developer construct a collector road that will connect this development, as well as West Pipkin Road and Riverstone, all the way down to Yule Road. So in order to try to capture some of that and create the connectivity between West Pipkin Road and Yule Road and all the developments within there, it also requires that the developer contribute $500,000 to the purchase of a bus for the Lakeland Area Mass Transit District to serve this area. That purchase will be eligible for city impact fee, transportation impact fee credits. In exchange for the developer's agreements under this, the developer would be provided 10 years of concurrency testing by the city. Chuck Barnby is here, and I believe representatives of the developer are here as well. There was a pretty high-level overview of this, but they can provide more detail if you would like.
And I'd appreciate that if we could do that. And if you could do that from the center, Chuck, or do you need to run the? Thank you, sir.
Good morning. For the record, Chuck Barnby with the Community Economic Development Department. This is, Mr. Davis said, is the second of two public hearings on a development agreement for Hawthorne Community, the Hawthorne property, which is located immediately west of Riverstone, south of Morgan Creek, between Pipkin and Yule Roads. So the total acreage of the overall development site is 482 acres. The zoning, which is really key to note here, was approved back in February of 2007. So this development agreement is not approving zoning for the development. That was done and has been done previously. This is to address the transportation concurrency issues out in the surrounding network. The current development plan that is covered under the development agreement is 1,051 single-family detached dwelling units and 180 single-family attached dwelling units. There's no Crystal Lagoon, no Char School, so this is a strictly residential development. Staff is currently reviewing Phase 1, which is 183 single-family detached units, generally in the northwest corner of the development site, abutting West Pipkin Road. Next slide, please. Thanks. So the developments traffic consultant conducted a traffic study back in March of last year to look at the impacts of the development on the surrounding area. For concurrency purposes, we look at a 5% impact area on when the development consumes 5% of a roadway's capacity on the surrounding road system. So County Line, Pipkin, Yule, those roads were evaluated as part of this analysis. The analysis also included an access evaluation to determine when a second access point would be needed for the development. The study concluded that it would be at the 659th single-family dwelling unit, which is why later on, we will talk about a requirement related to the 660th single-family development unit. What it shows is that West Pipkin Road would fail in the future between Harden Boulevard and Florida Avenue with or without this development, and that Yule Road would fail due to this development when adding project traffic. And so there are some nuances there in terms of a development cannot be held accountable for existing or projected background failures, but would be addressing impacts on the surrounding road system. Next slide, please. As Mr. Davis noted, a key component of this project is the development and completion of a collector road system, a lot of which has been developed in the adjacent Riverstone development. The Riverstone developer has extended Modela Road down to its western property boundary, abutting Hawthorne Ranch. This development agreement would address not only a northern connection to West Pipkin Road to create a direct north-south two-lane collector road between Yule and Pipkin, but also includes the completion of the Modela extension. So really, the intent here is to take traffic off of Yule, take traffic off of Yates, also provide an alternate route to County Line Road for local traffic trying to circulate in the area. The roadway cross-section includes two lanes of traffic, four-foot wide paved shoulders, a 10-foot wide trail on one side of the road, and a five-foot wide sidewalk on the opposite side of the road. So the next slide really shows where this roadway system has evolved through the planning process. The plan on the left is from the Southwest Sector Plan, developed in conjunction with Polk County and adopted in 2008. The exhibit on the right is from the city's comprehensive plan and shows the current alignment based on engineering analyses developed by Riverstone and by Hawthorne's development team.
Do you want to highlight those? Can you highlight those?
Oh, sure.
Just for people who don't know where to look.
On the, if Mr. Cook can run the cursor down in the south, the bottom-left corner of the screen.
Which?
Right there. That's from the original sector plan in 2008. And then jumping over to the next map on the right, it looks like a set of bullhorns in the bottom-left-hand corner. Those two red lines, exactly. That's the combination of the Modela extension and the north-south spine road between Pipkin and Yule.
Very good.
Jumping over to the next slide is we see the current adopted Momentum 2045 Long Range Transportation Plan, adopted by the Polk Transportation Planning Organization, which is the county-wide transportation body responsible for establishing federal funding priorities in the county, as well as adopting a long-range plan, looking at 25 years. And so again, you see that same road system as a public-private partnership. It shows Yule Road as a long-range improvement need between Lund and County Line and cost feasible from Lund back to Old 37 and Florida Avenue. So those are, you know, those are the status of the Yule Road capacity improvements based on current projections. However, as development evolves in certain parts of the county, we tend to see increases in impact fee generation, which allows us to maybe do portions of these larger corridors. And that's something that, you know, the county has looked at over the years, off and on, to try to address kind of the long-term planning needs for Yule Road and West Pipkin Road. So the next slide shows generally what we're talking about in terms of the cross-section of the spine road, as well as some internal pedestrian connectivity that is required of both Riverstone and of Hawthorne Mill. I know that got a lot of discussion during the last hearing. And so what we want to show is, is that we're connecting the neighborhoods. We're connecting the neighborhoods with the city park property there just west of Modela, and essentially trying to create a fully connected street and trail network within these communities. So in terms of the specific development agreement, the development agreement would vest 1,072 P&amp;P car trips for Hawthorne Ranch. It would be for a 10-year vesting period, which is beyond what is typically allowed in our city's concurrency ordinance. We also have certain thresholds beyond which financial assurances need be provided to support the funding of enhanced transit service in this area. In this case, it'd be the purchase of a bus. We also have a requirement that within 12 months of the first plat approval by the Planning and Zoning Board, the developer shall define the necessary alignment and right-of-ways for roads A2 and the Modela extension, which is the completion of that road system through Riverstone, and that the city would have the option to gain access to that property should the roadway be determined to be needed before the agreement. Next slide. And then again, as we start getting into prior to the 400th dwelling, single-family dwelling unit, the first of three payments would be required for the purchase of the bus. There is a lead time in purchasing a large transit vehicle. And so what we want to do is make sure that that cash is flowing ahead of demand and ahead of the sunset of the funding agreement for Riverstone next door. And also that the developer shall construct two city standards and that the city shall accept the A2 and Modela Road extension at the south end of the site prior to the 660th dwelling unit. And that goes back to the analysis was conducted by the applicant. It's important to note that through this agreement, the, and this is just based on today's impact fee, today's impact fee schedule, that the development would generate almost $4.4 million in city transportation impact fees. You know, we would bring out, and you know, that's with the $500,000 credit being issued for the bus purchase. There are also some other credit potentials in there, including for the rights-of-way around a roundabout where Road A1, A2, and the Modela extension come together, kind of in the south-central portion of the site shown on the screen. Other key agreement terms is the advanced acquisition of that southern end of the collector road corridor, as I discussed earlier, the internal trail connectivity, as well as concurrency tracking, so that we have an established account of trips that are allowed through the DA, and that there's a drawdown of those trips as development occurs. Next slide. It's also important to note that, again, we have a number of transportation improvements that are underway in the surrounding area. As everybody out there knows, West Pipkin Road is being four-lane now between Modela and Harden Boulevard.
If you don't, you will.
And that's about a $50 million investment being made by the county. So that is very substantial. Completion of that project is scheduled for 2024. And that will also include a second kind of add-on to the project to add a middle turn lane on Pipkin between Harden and Florida Avenue. DOT has also funded the construction phase of a roundabout at Drainfield Waring Road. That's scheduled for construction in 2024 as well. And that will very much help move traffic through that intersection, which certainly is a bottleneck in the network today. And then again, Riverstone has extended Modela to its western property boundary.
Chuck, what's the budget on that roundabout project?
It's about $4 million. It's the last that we've seen on that. It's a multi-lane roundabout. It does require some additional right-of-way acquisition. And it's definitely more substantial than the ones that we've seen in the area recently.
My office is literally 100 yards from there, so it's a great, and I'm looking forward to that, so.
And then one of the other comments last time was just kind of getting some type of visual for the amount of construction that's ongoing in Southwest Lakeland. We weren't able to get a drone up, but Google Maps is a great tool to be able to show what's happening in the area. That area appears to be about six months old, maybe a little older, but you certainly see all the construction going on, not only in the Riverstone community immediately east of this site, but also the Publix County Line Road Shopping Center just to the northwest. So there's definitely a lot of construction going on in this area. I think it's also helpful, too, to note that based on the testimony at the first public hearing, the development team and city staff went out, met with two property owners last week. They are actively engaged in trying to evaluate options to preserve as much of the existing natural buffer along their eastern boundaries as possible. And so that will be subject to future engineering analyses with future phases. But that dialogue is underway, and I believe those meetings went well. There have been some concerns as well about how the spine road connection to Yule Road would affect other nearby streets on the south side of Yule Road. We've had conversations with the county, and those would be determined at the time of county permitting. When they take a look at the intersection design, when they look at the traffic for that specific intersection, and look at the design of the intersection approaches, turn lanes, then they will be able to better, the county will be able to determine how access would either be preserved, accommodated, or modified with that intersection design. So that's something that we don't have answers for today, but it's something that's on the radar to be discussed in the future.
Commissioner Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I heard you correct, Mr. Barnby. So the conversation that, you know, we were here with a couple of the residents who, of course, is in the county, and the county, of course, is working with the developer to support the, I guess we call it saving of the, whatever we can, the natural vegetation, natural, you know, I call arbor and trees, whatever, that's conversations moving forward to support as much as possible. If I'm hearing correct now.
That is correct. And in fact, we went even a step further. There were some additional comments about how the future phases... There were some additional comments about how the, the, the future phases, those individual residential pods within Hawthorne would affect those properties, and it looks like the, between a combination of wetlands, retention areas, ponds, that, that the impacts are certainly not as, it, it's not going to be as drastic as with a previous development team's proposal going back five to 10 years. So, you know, the, the lift stations, the actual backyards of those, those new homes are going to be considerably further away from that, from that property line than, than originally planned with the previous developer.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Mann.
Thank you. Chuck, could you just, for the viewers' benefit, you know, kind of point to where like the city park property is and the Hawthorne that we're talking about, since it's not all labeled?
Sure. I will ask Mr. Cook again, if you move your cursor up to the Medalla-Pipkin Road intersection.
No, the, left.
Further left, further left.
Right there.
There you go. Just to the left of, southwest of that is the 100-acre parcel that was recently purchased by the city for the city park.
It's part of that lake, isn't it?
Exactly.
Right.
And to that end also, we've been working very closely with the developer of Hawthorne to integrate trails on both sides of the lake. The, the, the city park property would take up the east side, their property would take up the west side, and, and looking to provide trail connections and perhaps a loop around that lake. So those conversations are actively underway as well.
Good, great.
Good, good.
Commissioner Reed.
Chuck, are we east of the lake or west of that long, yeah, that lake? Are we east of west?
East of that, east of that lake.
We're east of it?
It's a, it's a, it's a pie shape.
Yes. Can you switch back to your first slide? Keep going. That one. Go back one more. Read those last two paragraphs, please, sir.
So West, West Pipkin Road is going to operate, or is projected to operate, at an unacceptable level of service, either in the future with background traffic or with background traffic and, and project traffic. So in terms of background traffic, there's a, kind of a, a natural growth rate that's assumed based on development in the surrounding area, is not tied to this specific project. So regardless of what happens in terms of growth in this area, West Pipkin Road is, is projected to fail by the build-out year of 2030. Yule, on the other hand, with the background growth is, you know, even though it has got a lot, you know, is getting a lot more traffic, it's not expected to actually operate at a failing level of service in 2030 without this project. This project pushes it over in, in one direction. So that's where we need to look, we needed to look at mitigation and step back and took a look at the spine road system and said, that combined with the, with the transit that we're looking at at the north end, helped provide some travel options, better connectivity, and it's something that's more impactful in, in a shorter amount of time.
And I know that we're authorizing, what, $500,000 for the transit to the buses? And, and of course, I know we've done this recently on islands, on, on Highland Drives, but we haven't had it come to fruition yet. Again, my concern is ridership. We haven't got a proven track record on how many people are going to ride these mass transit areas in here. And again, you're asking us to approve a development that's going to overload our traffic, which is already overloaded to almost to capacity. It's not where, it's, we're not, where are we? Are we D or F on this road right here?
In, in terms of Pipkin, Pipkin Road between Harden and Florida, I think right now you're somewhere around E, and then, and then you'd be looking at level of service F in 2030. And that's just based on kind of an average capacity for that, for that portion of road. So it is, it is, it's very congested today, is going to continue to get more congested. And so that's where, kind of looking bigger picture, and again, talking with some of the conversations we had at the last meeting, trying to get additional retail, the park facility, other employment in, in this part of West Lakeland, west of Waring Road is, is more important to start to draw more trips west. So it's, the, the road, the roadside of it is one issue, but then the landy side of it is the other, and trying to get that commercial node at County Line Road, which is now finally up and being developed, or, you know, the first phase is open.
That will surely help. Did you have any dialogue with the developer about internal commercial use by any chance?
We, we have going, you know, going back to the previous developer and, and this one, as well as of more, hasn't been about retail, but it's been about other recreational type uses, and, and I think we've landed in a good place because of the investment that the city's making with the park property next door. The issue we've always run into in terms of internal retail is that the, the, the scale of what we would expect to be useful from a, you know, neighborhood, neighborhood service, pedestrian connectivity standpoint for that level of retail, when, when the developers actually go to market those properties, you don't see that much interest. I mean, we've got probably 10 locations within Lakeland now where we've, where we have tried to integrate retail into a residential development, and to date, nothing's happened. You know, I'm thinking off the top of my head, Hampton Hills, Bridgewater, over at Lakeside Preserve, and then up and down the Airport Road Corridor. It's something we try to do, but it's just the market forces.
Can you switch back to the aerial again, please? Thank you. And this is, fortunately, this is the last big parcel we're going to have to deal with in this vicinity. There's one more, look back on Yates Road to the east, but which one was Madonna property? Was that the one in Dead Center almost? Straight down, I think, is Madonna, wasn't it?
As far as the...
But Riverstone is part of Madonna?
That, that's it.
Okay.
And, and because of the land uses we have along Pipkin Road, you know, there's considerable amount of business park, which does allow some accessory retail, that may be something we end up seeing at the Medalla-Pipkin intersection, is a small, small retail center at some point. Likewise, at Yates Road, a small retail component, you know, so we've got spots for some small retail up and down the Pipkin Road Corridor. It's just something that would, it would be something that would serve the, the residents on either side of the road, not embedded within, you know, within a specific neighborhood.
And so we're asking for a 10, they're asking for a 10-year vesting, right?
Correct.
Is that normal?
That, that's why we're going through the development agreement process, is because our, our standard concurrency ordinance gives a three-year concurrency vesting period. And so for the size of, of the amount of infrastructure that's being invested in this area, we thought it was reasonable to kind of address the developer's request for a longer-term concurrency vesting. 10 years is, is generally what we've gone with, you know, and, and so that, I think, is a good balancing act. You know, frankly, it's possible that this development builds out ahead of that 10-year timeframe, just looking at Riverstone as an, as an example. But we, we, you know, with the amount of roadways that are being developed, the bus contribution, we felt that 10 years was appropriate.
If, if we approved this today, will we get any more, buy the apple per se, on traffic it creates in the future?
In, in terms of this development?
Yes.
We would not. With other development in the Southwest Lakeland area, what we would do is build upon the investments being made by Riverstone, by this development, to get additional either connector roads, transit contributions, other mitigation, as those analyses would show in the future. So here, it's more of an, more of an iterative process where, you know, each development is responsible for addressing its own impacts. You know, the legislature says that we can't go back and make them, you know, make them address what's already a problem, and I completely get that. So what we end up having to do is, is take a look at a development impact, development impact, development impact, and try to make sure that each mitigation plan complements the other one. So like Riverstone and Hawthorne complement each other. We'll also look at that with Morgan Creek to the north, and anything else that would happen either closer to County Line or over towards Waring, is making sure that those plans connect with each other and make sense. The roads connect, the transit services connect, and, and those things make sense for the public long-term.
Commissioner Mann.
Thank you, Mayor. So Chuck, could we also see, you mentioned, which I thought was something I hadn't thought of before with all these discussions, you know, trying to get that commercial west. So what's the current route from Riverstone to a Publix, so to speak? Like where, where do they go currently?
Right there.
Because, because Medalla Road doesn't connect anything?
Is that open? Is it?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, that's open. It's lovely.
Okay, okay. So they can already go there?
Right.
Instead of having to go any other Publix? Like that would be their go-to Publix?
It, it, it probably depends on where, where they, where they work, but I, I can see Riverstone residents using Oakbridge, Lake Miriam Square, County Line. You know, on the weekends, they may be going out, they may be going out to County Line.
It's, and if you were driving by it on the way home, you'd use Oakbridge.
Right. Okay, but so that, this whole development, as this develops, that just was a powerful comment you made, because I'm thinking about neighborhoods and traffic, and we've, you know, tried to talk about this from every angle, but, you know, we, we have some concerns coming up about the corner, you know, the intersection at Lake Miriam and Pipkin, which, you know, also is determined, they think it's going to be a huge funnel of all of these folks coming that way now that it's four-lane, and maybe that's not as much the case if, you know, this commercial is developing to the west.
That's, that's exactly our, our, has been our focus, and, and that's why we were excited in 2007 when the Publix proposal came forward, because we needed to have a commercial center in that part of town. There's already one generally spelled out from a landies category at Yates, but there's been, you know, nobody's expressed an interest in, you know, almost 20 years on that property. So this one had a, had a developer, it had a, had a grocer, you know, and other interested parties that, you know, have made it come to fruition, and it will be a sizable shopping center. It's not just the Publix, but it's got, you know, several parcels and does have room for some neighborhood-scale retail as well, you know, and, and so that, that is exactly it, you know, drawing that traffic, you know, more to the west. And because of the increased employment in Southwest Lakeland and what's happening in Hillsborough County, you know, we're going to start to see, or is expected to see, a more of a draw over time towards Plant City, Brandon, you know, and Tampa. So that's, that's part of what's been looked at, at a very large macro level, county-wide traffic models, is how does, how do those trips interact? And, and we're trying to pull as much of that traffic west as possible.
It's difficult to assign within a project, a commercial area, that says you need to build it here, like a Leesburg has, has done, you know, in the villages, where it's specified. When you see, and, and we're spoiled by Publix...
But there's been nothing, like the whole, we're on New Tampa Highway out there.
Right.
And there's been nothing to eat or drink except for Subway and Wendy's, you know? So they, everyone's going to Lakeside Village, Harden Boulevard, from that whole entire commercial area. So I guess in my mind, I'm thinking, okay, that needs to be our goal, is to get more and more commercial out there so that they don't have to come over to Harden or South Florida.
Publix is the early reserver in Florida of growing areas. You know, so when they put a footprint down, they know that it's coming.
They know what's going on.
And that's then brings everybody on the fill-in side as that area continues to grow, and so makes that work much better for the developer, because they can develop it for homes, you know, themselves, and then on the commercial side, that area starts to grow up, which draws in the traffic west. And we'll also be working on Wabash going north-south and Waring and all those things, so that people who don't like traffic and don't have to use it will find the alternate ways to go that are better for them.
And, and we'll, we'll have smaller commercial nodes at, you know, Pipkin-Medalla, Pipkin-Yates, you know, we're starting to see that at, you know, along the Airport Road Corridor as well. And so that may end up being more of a model, you know, for, for, for this area, is, you know, County Line-Pipkin serving the regional or more community-wide retail needs, with smaller commercial nodes at those intersections, serving the neighborhood, at the, at the neighborhood level.
Correct. Commissioner Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and Mr. Barnby, I know in our last discussion, when we shared and talked about this particular item, there was no, I guess, set date, I, I think, that was given, but I think you did approximate how many years out you probably saw, we would see probably any homes or anything at home sites being built. But as I hear about, you know, commercial activity center or, and things that we need to help support moving a lot of this traffic to the west of the area, certainly I would think the developer would want to make sure you got folk and houses being built before you start seeing a lot of commercial stuff coming, because you got to support that from people who's there. So saying all of that, that, I thought, didn't you say about five years, I thought you said?
In, in terms, oh, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
In, in terms of what we've seen with Riverstone, Riverstone, they submitted their first plat for approval back in 2018, and they're right now actually actively constructing in their final, in their final phase. So in, in a span of less than five years, you know, they're going through and are working and are selling up to 1,299 lots. So nothing really would seem different here, you know, but, you know, we're, we're right now reviewing the first 183 lots. The construction plans are very close to staff approval. I would expect it perhaps this week. The site alteration's, you know, underway right now. And so for them to go through and construct, it may be a year or so before you would start seeing vertical construction on that Phase 1. And then I know that the developer, and they can probably speak to the timing better than me, but they're also working on the next two phases to get those in for review as well. So, you know, there, there's active movement to keep the project moving, moving forward. It may be beat that 10-year timeline.
Great. Commissioner, music?
You made a comment, and I tried to jot it down and listen to you, and I believe the, the Momentum 2045 slide was up there, and you were saying something, the way I took it was that a project, when going through the approval, when it's approved, can't cause a failure. Can you, can you repeat what you said? Because I'm...
In, in terms of, when we look at concurrency mitigation, we can't hold the development for, we can't withhold approval for a failure of, of the transmission system as it exists today. So if there's a, if there's an existing congested intersection or congested roadway link, we can't use that as a reason not to, not to approve the development. What we do then at that point is go back and look at how we handle traffic mitigation for its specific impacts going forward. And, and, and so that's where, and I'm going back 15 years or so, we had much different legislation in Tallahassee that would say, you could, you could, you can charge impact fees, you can, you can negotiate with the developer to fix some of those background failures. And, and a lot of times, that's, that's what we would end up doing. And, you know, we, we had a, you know, like Lakeland Central Park, I mean, we spent probably a year negotiating a, a set of mitigation between their, what they would pay in impact fees and what their real impact was, and, and settled in somewhere in the middle. We don't have that ability now, and that really goes back to, you know, 2009, 2011 sets of legislation that was approved. And, and, you know, and it really depends, you know, there are pluses and minuses to both of it, it, it just really depends on, on, on your feeling on, on growth in general. For us, what it has, has allowed us to do, because we have so much growth in Southwest Lakeland, is basically say, okay, we're going to ask Development A, Development B, and Development C to mitigate their impacts, and, and, and have the opportunity to stitch those together into something that is a bigger improvement for the, for the community. I think the Medalla Road Extension, the spine road through the development, as well as transit investments, start to really draw Southwest Lakeland into the rest of the transportation system that the city has. You know, we could, we could have 100 lot subdivisions all up and down, you know, on the same property, not connected, may not even have a cohesive spine road system, and all it's doing is it's throwing more traffic on Pipkin or Yule and creates more connectivity problems, and, you know. We've got other areas of the county where that has happened and, and is a huge problem today. Here, we're able to get ahead of it and get that road system in ahead of time to the benefit of the public.
So, so then what is, what is our, what is our abilities then as, you know, as staff and as commissioners, if we're, if we're receiving information saying, hey, listen, don't approve this because the traffic is crazy now and it's only going to get worse? If I understand you correctly, we're not allowed to use that information to say that the development can't be approved, because it's, 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 it's a failure now, it's, it's not a failure because of this project, so we have to let it get worse?
What, what the, what the discussion ends up becoming, it's not a yes or no on the development, it's a, it's a, it's a question of, is the mitigation appropriate? So that's, you know, do we, you know, is what we have in the development agreement sufficient to address this project's impacts?
And that's, and that's, that would be development-specific?
Correct.
Okay. Because I mean, I know, I know that, that we're all probably, you know, whenever a development comes up, I mean, what we get is email after email after email of, listen, this road is, is junk now, you're only going to make it worse. And I'm trying to balance and figure out, where are we, from a policy standpoint, allowed to say, listen, you know, people are moving here, we've got to build it, it's gone through the zoning, everything is approved, where, where do I have room to say no? Or do I have room to say, if you're going to build this, then X, you have to do whatever? And that's really the direction that you're saying that we're going to go is?
Exactly. And that, and that's why in the first slide, I just wanted to make sure it was clear, because I, I know some of the comments is about, seem to be more about the zoning approval itself.
Correct.
And the zoning approval has already happened on this property.
Right, which, right, it's not, yeah.
It has evolved. And so we have to look at that as, as a... It has evolved. And so we have to look at that as, as a, as a, is our, is our basis. And then, you know, of course, transportation needs change over time, and so definitely a lot has changed between 2007 and where we are today. Um, but essentially, that spine network, more or less, has, has been a part of that plan for that entire time. The transit is a new, is, is a new mitigation tool that we have, because there is now a transit route in this area, because of the warehouse development, because of the retail at County Line Road, which, uh, you know, is, is something that we didn't have on the books, you know, when, when Hawthorne was originally approved.
Yeah, and it's something that, that, you know, when, when we're looking at a particular piece of property that, that we're looking to approve, I mean, all interested parties have, you know, have their rights. The property owner has their rights, they go through their steps, the people that, that are living there, that using those roads, they have their rights. And it's just, it's been a constant struggle for me as I'm reading, trying to, to, to answer these emails or do my research, because, um, you know, as we say up here all the time, is that the people are coming, the people are moving. The growth isn't, it, it's not up to us, really. I mean, the people are coming, so it's how do we mitigate? How do we control? How do we guide-direct the best we can within the purview of what we're given? Um, and it's, and it's, it's tough, because as the recipient of some of these emails, they're, you know, they're, they're, they're difficult to answer, um, with, with a, an answer that waves a magic wand.
Well, it is the very pressure that we, you feel in this, that creates these kinds of spine road decisions to be made, uh, as we go through the larger developments where there can be those changes made.
Win, that's it, win.
Commissioner Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. I, so I thought Commissioner Reed made a good point, and then you touched on it, Chuck, and, and answered my question a little bit. Um, so, you know, you're saying that adding a bus is, is certainly a new mitigation tool, and we don't maybe have a lot of, um, data to support that it will or will not, um, you know, reduce traffic, or it's a successful mitigation tool in Lakeland, Florida. But I'm assuming that we are not implementing this, you know, just as a pilot, that there must be other places where, um, adding buses, even in a relatively suburban, you know, homeownership-type location. Uh, that was my first question. I think a lot of people, you know, who are used to suburban sprawl and very car-centric, um, think, why do we have sidewalks and, and, you know, bike lanes? No one rides a bike, and no one walks. And my, my, my retort to them is, well, you hope the younger generation will be riding and biking, and that gives them a room for you on the road, you know, since you're more car-centric. And somebody's got to adapt, you know, to these new microtransits, to, um, new multimodal ways of getting around, because there's just not enough money to continue to build roads the way we've built them. But I, I do feel like, you know, for us to be, you know, the experts, because you are the experts and you teach us, to have talking points when we get these emails, it's important to say that, you know, when you first hear that, well, these people, if they can afford to live in this neighborhood, aren't going to be the ones taking the bus. Why would we have this developer by the bus? And then you said, because this area is being transformed to industrial warehousing, and, and, and some of those folks having to get to the jobs because there are houses right next door, you know, then that's getting those folks on a bus to make room for the car-centric suburbanites to be able to ride in their cars. So I, I think that, you know, it's important for us to know kind of those nuances, so that we have clear talking points, because this is going to be like every, like I can't go anywhere to like a social birthday party, you know, without people telling me about the traffic. And, you know, their concerns in their neighborhood, so it's not like this is going away. So every bit of information you can arm us with is very helpful and helps us put all the pieces of the puzzle together.
And, and something that's really key too, and this is where there's a transportation-affordable housing overlap, and something that really doesn't get talked about as much as it should, is one of, one of the biggest cost in terms of affordable housing in really the country, the southeast and Florida, is transportation. And so, you know, from last year to this year, you know, gas has gone up 50% in cost, not because of gas tax, you know, it's because of, of oil prices. You know, that's a, that's a big hit on folks that have moved into an area expecting, you know, mortgage, insurance, whatever else. That increase in transportation cost is something that they were not expecting, and is a direct, has a direct impact on affordable housing. So when you get into southwest Lakeland, you know, as the, as the employment increases, and that is the intent based on Orlando's plan and the comp plan, you know, for right now, there may be a lot of folks that are commuting to downtown Lakeland, commuting to Tampa, commuting to Orlando. And so we've got to work together on providing transit options, not only for this area, but also the connectivity to the east and west of us, so we can provide travel options. Because that provides greater stability in the affordable housing equation going, going forward. And so, you know, the ridership and, and how these routes look and function are going to adjust over time. You know, Lakeland Park Center, we did, we know, we approved a very similar agreement back in 2011, that the route that we had in mind basically was a flop. But we had structured that development agreement between the Citrus Connection and the developer to come back and pitch another option that served the, the development's travel demand, and it worked extremely well. And now it's part of a long-term permanent route in the Banana Road area north of, north of town. That may be something we end up looking at here. There, the development agreement requires a separate funding agreement with the Lakeland Area Mass Transit District. And so over time, there may be adjustments that are made to still continue to serve Hawthorne Mill, but that, that look and feel, that transit service, may change depending on, on growth in this area. And so we're not locking in something that's going to be destined for failure. I think we're building in, we, you know, we're providing a, a financial incentive for transit service to continue, and how that changes, um, you know, is going to be between the developer and the, and the transit authority.
And transforming values of the riders and car ownership and all those things that we have to anticipate to some degree as well. Commissioner Reed?
Thank you. And unfortunately, you know, we've put Chuck in a bad position here. He's uh, he's doing the best he can with, with, with ammunition we disdain, and we give him locally from that standpoint. And of course, I'm believing you, just a brief history left, and we used to have a DRI. And, and a DRI gave the, the state and the citizens a right to, if it was 31 acres or 1,500 units of residential development, we could impose uh, all these different restrictions. They had to spend, they would have to put another whole lane on Yule Road. They had to put a light up on County Line Road or something like that. We could do that. But then, I'm not sure what year the legislature did away with DRIs.
It started in '09 and really 2011.
They, they, they kind of tied our hands behind our back, and we couldn't put the restriction, couldn't, couldn't put the restrictions on the, uh, developer because of impact fees. And so now our impact fees are, are, uh, I'm not going to say they are insufficient, because they are sufficient, they're, they're necessary, but to some degree. But I think our gas taxes, I was still beating the, the OT up, trying to get the gas tax up, which, but anyway, uh, that's just a brief instance. It, it looks like we have no way to not approve this, uh, development, in my stance, what, meet what Mike said, and, uh, even though I, I think it's, it's going to create a, a, a big burden on our citizens who are going to move there and, and existing people who already live in that area. Uh, fortunately, Publix has gone out there, and so we're going to eliminate a lot of traffic to the east. And if you could give me one more, one more little, what if, what's going to happen from Waring Road West on Pipkin, and then from Yates Road West on Yule? Is there any improvements for those areas?
In, in terms of Yates Road itself, the county's West Pipkin Road Project includes some substantial turn lane improvements from Pipkin down past Town Park. So you will have two separate northbound lanes and two southbound lanes on Yates Road itself going to Town Park, which will, which will greatly help that intersection. Waring Road, you know, we've got a proportionate share agreement with Riverstone, uh, about one point, I think it's like 1.4 million, somewhere in that range, in terms for, to help with the Waring Road Corridor. So the intent on that was, is to use that for design and as seed money for future grant requests, because of the proximity to the airport. Um, you know, we still need to do Waring, you know, get Waring Road improved. We also still need to get Hamilton improved, because that's woefully substandard as well. Um, and, and so we do have other projects on the horizon, um, that we, we're, we're going to be working on, certainly in conjunction with the county, but also using other funding, uh, agreements, other mechanisms that we have, we do have at our disposal. Uh, and again, all, all these projects are, are being aligned, consistent with the comprehensive plan, the land development code, and the 2045 long-range transportation plan.
Well, now I'm going to be a little more optimistic about this. They are putting a road in that's going to work as a spine, that it would connect with on a long-term basis.
Yeah.
Commissioner McLeod?
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. I think the takeaway for me is that this is about how to make the transportation network better, how to improve it. And you've got very specific items in here that you're trying to do that, trying to improve, uh, an already, you know, road that's predicted to fail, uh, but how to make it better. And, and we can't tie the hands completely. The zoning and the development has already been approved. This is all about transportation and the specifics around that. And so I think you've done good work here, Chuck, and it's, there's a lot. There are a lot of moving parts. And I know when you talk to people, and the, the feeling is, well, there's just too much traffic. And we get that, but these are the steps we're trying to take to improve it, to make it better. I do think on the transit side, Chuck, if we can, as we, in the future, when we have projects, trying to get a sense for what is the tangible, specific impact by adding transit. And maybe that's hard to know or predict, but that, in my mind, it's helpful to, to really get a sense of, okay, this is what it does, or how much it impacts this development.
And, and now, now that we have a funding contribution coming in for Riverstone, um, I think that's something we can, we can talk to the Citrus Connection. Uh, the route is certainly less than a year old. It may only be about six months old through Riverstone. And so, uh, we can certainly talk to the Citrus Connection about the impact on that, on the red line ridership, which does serve that area. And then, and this all represents the work of, you know, we've got the, the city and county planners, the, the, you know, the transit district, uh, Public Works. I mean, so there are a lot of folks that are, you know, taking a look at these projects and these mitigation plans to make sure they're consistent with our plans.
Well, and if Tom does have something to that regard to say, typically, when you add a bus route in the area where there's new residential and commercial, this much magnitude, this is, you know, how many people are reduced from the road. I mean, you would think that if that's what he does every day, that there's studies or some kind of data like on, just to give folks like why you'd choose that as the mitigation strategy, maybe instead of signalization, or instead of a roundabout, or instead of some of the others. That might be helpful, not necessarily for today, but just going forward, you know, this is our second one. And so if it comes up again, it would be nice to see, oh, this is, we're doing this, just like we do roundabouts, because this is the success of roundabouts in other cities. This, we're, you know, buying a bus typically results in this, many fewer folks on the roads.
And, and we'll, we'll certainly get Mr., with Mr. Phillips on this. This is actually one of, um, there aren't many communities in Florida that, that have this type of transit mitigation. Um, but we'll, we'll definitely take a look and see if there is anything, at least in Florida or, you know, their communities. But this is, this is, this is new for the state, and actually, a lot of communities are looking to see what we're doing here and how successful it is. So, um, we're trying to be on the front lines.
So the question is, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And, and I don't know if there's other, uh, with this being a public hearing, do we?
Yes, we do need to ask for a public comment. If it hasn't already happened, I've, I've lost track of that, but this is.
No, we, we'll have cancer public comment, yeah.
Get it out the way.
And there's a motion to approve in a second. Discussion by commissioners.
Again.
Any discussion or questions by the public? Seeing none, Commissioner McLeod?
Did we have a public comment?
All right, yes. If you do, then we want to come up to the center mic, just state your name and address, please.
Hi, Matthew Coops, 5602 Lazy Creek Drive. I was here at the first meeting. And, um, just as an aside, just wanted to thank Chuck. We had a great, uh, meeting at my property the other day, talking about the vegetative buffer. I really look forward to working with the, uh, Forestar people moving forward on that. But anyways, um, more appropriate what we're talking about today, I think the spine road will help. Um, not sure how much the bus will help. Most of the people in the area, they want to get in their truck and go to Home Depot, that's east. They want to go down to get ice cream, whatever, like that. Um, if the commissioners could keep in mind that, you know, development's going to happen, um, and then the roads are going to improve. So you have all those people, then you're going to have construction. It's, it's just a mess. Um, but, uh, there again, I think the spine road's going to help. But, um, we still do have a lot of traffic heading east. So, um, hopefully Yule Road can be improved soon. And, uh, you know, with the added people moving in, uh, won't be too much more of a mess.
Thank you, sir.
But thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can you repeat, uh, repeat who moved and seconded on this one?
It was Commissioner Walker and Commissioner Music seconded.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't repeat it. I apologize. Any other discussion by the public? Seeing none, Commissioner McLeod?
Aye.
Yes?
Aye.
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 It's unanimous with one reluctance. It's all right. Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate the conversation. And I think that's very healthy conversation, by the way, for the public, as a matter of public record.
Yes, for all of these.
Um, then we have the, uh, item C2.
Yes, so item C2 is a, another required public hearing. Uh, we received notice from the Department of Justice that the city of Lakeland is eligible for a, uh, 2021 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance, Assistance Grant in the amount of $27,695. Uh, the Police Department proposes to use that grant money to partially fund a, uh, Public Information Officer for the Police Department, as well as, uh, some of the costs associated with their, the National Incident-Based Reporting System. Uh, they would expend, uh, these grant funds in the fiscal year of '22, in fiscal year of '22. One of the conditions of the grant is that the city commission hold a public hearing to allow public comment on the proposed use of those funds. So that's where we are today, just needing to hold a, a public hearing and ask for any public comment.
All right. Um, so is there a motion to approve this?
A moment.
Second.
In a second, all right. Uh, discussion by commissioners? Any discussion or question by the public? Seeing none, this is a voice vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Okay.
All the same, unanimously passed, as that brings us to the Community Redevelopment Agency, item 4A.
We have several items for this. Uh, Jared Simpson with the City Attorney's Office is going to introduce, uh, the, the first one.
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, this is a task authorization with GAI Consultants, Inc., for professional services associated with the Downtown West Master Plan. Uh, GAI Consultants is under continuing service contracts with, uh, the city for professional planning, design, and development services. Uh, this is a not-to-exceed project cost of $150,000, which will be funded in, through a variety of sources, including the Downtown CRA Trust Fund, the Midtown CRA Trust Fund, and the Community and Economic Development Department's Transportation and Planning Consultant Fund. Uh, they'll begin the work upon the notice of proceed, uh, notice to proceed, and will complete within a nine-month timeline. Uh, there were several questions that came up during the agenda study about, um, GAI and, um, other questions about how this is going to connect to some of the overall plans for the area. So, um, Alicia Drumgo with the CRA is going to, uh, present that to you.
All right, sir.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
Thank you. I just wanted to give you some brief background about the task authorization with GAI Consultants. Uh, this particular task authorization is rooted in the commission's request during strategic planning last year, uh, with funding being available, uh, this fiscal cycle for this project. Uh, the request was for us to master plan and provide renderings of the West Lake Wire, Lake Buella area, uh, to include what we consider Downtown West. So just kind of looking up at the map here, you see that we've got a green box around the target area that we're focusing on. And then, um, the majority of this area is within a redevelopment agency. The red area is, uh, the hatched areas are those that are outside of the CRA's boundaries. Uh, the way we've laid this out, uh, just looking at the various numbers, it's by sector, after some discussions with our, uh, economic development partners, uh, here locally. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, and a little bit about, uh, GAI. They're an Orlando-based firm. They provide engineering, planning, economic development, and design services. Uh, the firm actually ranked third amongst continuing contracts, uh, in total point ranking by the selection committee, which was held in October of last year. Uh, there were just nine points separating the top three, uh, firms during that ranking, out of about 10 or 11 firms. Um, two of the principal leaders within GAI's organization have worked within the redevelopment, uh, area before on several projects, to include the Downtown redevelopment plan, and then also some small area studies, uh, in the Midtown CRA area. Uh, the, the firm is actually working on, uh, Downtown Jacksonville CRA redevelopment plan, along with the Business Improvement District, uh, plan. And they're also working to wrap up the East Tampa CRA plan. Uh, there's a strategic action plan that is, uh, occurring right now in that area, that is the largest CRA by area within the state. Uh, within that particular project, they're looking at community-based, uh, strategic initiatives, and they're conducting a funding analysis and providing recommendations with a five-year time horizon for East Tampa. And they're also working with, uh, with that CRA on just developing a sense of place and some general recommendations on build scenarios for Hillsborough Avenue, as, uh, you kind of traverse into East Tampa. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, just another, uh, visual here of what, what they're doing here in Hillsborough, or Long Hillsborough Avenue. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, they're also working on the Orange Blossom Trail Next Plan, and, uh, GAI is helping them build a blueprint, which is meant to reposition and restore build a blueprint, which is meant to reposition and restore that corridor and make it economically vibrant and socially relevant. They're working to identify six distinct districts and hubs that can be branded and redevelop within that area, which is an eight-mile corridor. So, just looking at the plan implementation for that, next slide, please. That whole progress and tracking process is something that they've got metrics for as well, which is an example of what you see here, based on those distinct districts that GAI has helped establish for Orange Blossom Trail Next. And I know that some of the commissioners are aware of what was proposed, a catalyst plan, which is, was to be proposed by the EDC, and, you know, we really sat down and looked at how those two things could, like our current plan here, and how that catalyst plan could connect with it. If you take us to the next slide, please, Kevin. And just to give you the background here, you see the general overlay of the area on the left side of the screen, which has the various sectors, but then also, you can see the, at the bottom of the screen there, is an example of what the catalyst plan would provide. It's a site-specific development opportunities within a target area. And so, as we looked at this, you know, those would be 3D renderings, effectively building plans of a development site, and those options would have to be made available. Well, in thinking about what's necessary for us to execute with our west downtown plan, you know, we needed a grassroots planning effort, one, and there were some additional discussions about, you know, the impact of Bonnet Springs Park on the adjacent community around Lake Beulah, and then also North Lake Wire. And so, looking at the preservation of those communities, the economics, and then also looking at the potential infrastructure needs to facilitate development west of downtown, tried to look at what type of tool would be functional for us to have as a, as a sort of a window to look at those opportunities, but then also integrate some of the development opportunities. And we evaluated ArcGIS Urban, and it is very similar, but it is real-time, and if you look to the right of your screen, you'll see that there are some building bulks that have been laid out. And conceptually, this will be public-facing, so the public can utilize, could utilize the tool, staff can utilize the tool. We could sit with a developer and work through a project, tabletop it right there together, and integrate these features, and see how it connects with our plan, based on the land use types and the zoning as well. And so, ideally, in the discussions with the EDC, we understood that the challenge would be that the, that which you see on the left side of your screen would crash the system of what, based on the level of detail, what you see on the right side of the screen. And so, we agreed to build out the system in a way that, as the technologies evolve, that our ArcGIS Urban model would be able to integrate links to those site-specific development opportunities that the EDC would commission. And so, we feel comfortable in that, you know, we're ready to go forward as a commission requested with the study of the area. It's a not-to-exceed of $150,000 on the project, with three funding sources, as the Assistant City Attorney mentioned, and we'll continue to work together to build out the platform upfront with the EDC, to make sure that we can integrate these two together, so that they speak to one another going forward. Next slide, please. And I'll stand for any questions.
Are you the last presentation, by the way? Is this the last presentation on this?
On this item?
On this item?
Yes, sir, this is.
Okay, then, I'd like to stop for a motion, please, and then we'll do questions.
Motion to approve.
Motion?
Second.
In a second, okay. Commissioner Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've had, I guess, several conversations with Mr. Elise, of course, and I'm trying to think of the right title for you now, I'm sorry. I know you still have.
Assistant Director of Economic Development.
Excuse me?
Assistant Director of Economic Development, sir.
Thank you, the Assistant Director of Economic Development, okay. But, of course, having the CRA still on your belt. We've had these conversations, I know, because I've been approached by numerous residents, especially the North Lake Wire area, and the concerns they have, because, and I welcome, of course, because you and I had that conversation, I think it's needed that we have some kind of, a consultant to come about, to be able to talk us through, you know, what's next, because, you know, with the BSP, as we know, Bonnet Springs Park getting ready to open and having its first phase open up, and what it's gonna bring to our Lakeland community, you have this depressed area, right, you know, right across the street almost, you know, that's there. But you also have concerns, those homesteaders there, about possible gentrification, and not, you know, what our property's lying, what happens here, and the values of what may be going up, and what we can afford and not afford, and so I do welcome the conversation, but I think it's, it's gonna have to be done, make sure we have all those involved, you know, to have some share of conversation, to make what we think would be best for all these particularly numbered areas you got there, for our Downtown West movement. And I do have reservations, but I, as I shared with you, and I share with others, even with some of the developers who have asked me about, what do I think, and how do we move, and that's why I sent it your way, I sent it your way, because, you know, you're the one that's gotta deal with the situation for us, as a professional, where, and as a planner, in some respect as well. So, I say all that to say, I believe we should move forward, I want to move forward, I have, I'm positioning myself to say, yes, let's do what we need to be done, because I think overall, you're gonna have a depressed area that will come out looking good. Now, I say that, but I say it to make sure that we don't take advantage, still, of, as we have had that conversation, Mr. Elise, with homesteaders that have some reservations. So, I would say to you, I'm all for the consultant, the consultant coming forward, the dollars being spent to make it happen, but I think we should do it strategically, to make sure that all involved, you know, have a say in what may land and what may not land.
Commissioner Music?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's great. What I love, you know, as small business owners, we do this all the time, is we grab people that are outside and don't know our business, and we bring them in, and I love having an outside vision come and look at our city and say, you know, we get, we get kind of snowblind, we see this lot all the time, or this section, and don't necessarily see the vision for it, and the opportunities to present that to private investment, and things like that, so I'm pretty excited about it. I think it's a relatively quick timeline and low budget, so.
Commissioner McLeod?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Elise, for the work you've put into this. Can you talk a little bit about the final product that GAI will deliver, and then the Catalyst 2.0 Plan, and how we move those forward, in your mind, and our role in that?
Sure. Well, I think on the final products, you're looking at two different aspects of it. You're looking at the planning tool, which is the actual plan and the interaction with the community, to understand the needs, as Commissioner Walker has laid out so nicely, and understanding, too, the impacts of the development on those communities. And so, working with the economic development partners, I think we understand, we will gather an understanding of potential projects by some of its membership, but then also, what we need to do on the public side to help move those forward, while also, I would say, lessening the impact on some of the communities that are already there, and seeing what we can do to help control the speculation that may occur, you know, on the real estate around the project. So, looking at two different products, the first being that plan, the strategic action plan, and recommendations on what we can do, but then the second being the forward-facing tool, which is actually a custom-built website that allows us to track our progress for the development here. It's something that is also scalable, that you can, we could, if it's a success, if you like it, you could take it and grow it and spread it across the city, so it's not just specific to this target area. We build out the base for it, and then it grows from there. And so, I think that GAI has given us a foundation, a tool that we can use for development and planning throughout the city, and ideally, we can drop the items or the plans that we receive from, on the catalyst side, into this particular network, and then we'll have something that the public can view and track real-time, and be able to see development opportunities, what's happening, and developers can also see what the opportunities are in the city. So, ideally, we take this west downtown, and we run it east and north, and we have a great framework for how to plan our city.
Thank you.
Commissioner Madden?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you so much, Elise. So, just for my colleague, Commissioner Walker's, on Friday, I need to know how important this is to you, you know, to be able, you've been saying, we want to get this Downtown West incorporated in our greater master planning, and, you know, you weren't here, and so we were, you know, just hearing about GAI Consultants, so it's important to me to know how they were vetted, what projects they've done before, you know, did they address things like gentrification? I know one of the things that's powerful, and I, you know, am always talking about, is not just, you know, it's great that all of us, you know, in the room could be experts in whatever we do, but having someone who's been down the road before, you know, that is who you want to take you on the journey, because they know, they know how to navigate it, they know the pitfalls, and they've had success. So, I, you know, asked for more information on what the projects were, you know, that they have done in the past. So, number one, I mean, I think it's great that, you know, thank you for bringing some of these projects they're working on in Downtown Jacksonville and East Tampa and Orange Blossom. I would say that, you know, certainly, working on something currently is not the same as working on something 10 years ago, and being able to see all the wonderful things, you know, that transpired because of that, you know, planning. So, I don't know if you have additional, you know, resources to show us what they've done, and we actually can see, you know, the end result years later, because I think that it's impossible to really know about the effects of gentrification, the effects of affordable housing, you know, unless you have some time, you know, if you've done a project and you helped. I mean, to me, when I heard Chattanooga say, you know, in an article that I read, that one of their biggest regrets is that they left people behind, and that was 10 years ago, they should have thought more about affordable housing from the beginning, rather than at the end, after they were gentrified. Similarly, Greenville had the same remorse, and so that became a collective goal of ours, is to be for, to precede growth and to get advanced, let's make these really strong goals of getting affordable housing units at the beginning, and not look back and say, great, great for us that we're prettier and more attractive for newcomers, but the folks who lived here can't afford to live here any longer. So, I would like to see a little bit, you know, even more with the consultants, you know, with regard to what they did, and how that, the trajectory was in a positive direction because of their foresight and their planning. On the tool, it's a little bit unclear to me. So, in the amount that we're spending today for the GAI Consultants, and then also then adding this ArcGIS Urban tool, which I'm really excited about, it sounds a little bit kind of to me like Gritx, is it?
So, I am not the GIS expert. We had several technical experts in the room when we went through this process, and those were two, you know, two private consultants at the table, along with the city staff's GIS team, and so, you know, I'm sure there are other platforms, Commissioner, but I'm not, you know, I'm not familiar with.
Does this R team that will be building this out, or is this what GAI will be building out underneath this dollar amount?
They will build it out within this dollar amount, specific to this target area, and then we should be able to scale and add on to it from there. I will say that the R GIS Urban is a tool that's already, we already have licensing to some of the software, and it's just a matter of us building out bases of what we'd like to utilize, and with the various layers and the data that we already have available. So, I think that, you know, overall, the GAI team will come alongside our staff, because we do have limited capacity, time-wise, for our GIS team, and so, they'll come in and they'll get us off the ground and running, and then it'll be turned over to the city with respect to its security standards and things of that nature. So, it's really for us to expedite getting it off the ground, because it takes time to do the troubleshooting and things like that, and it will be a, you know, it'll be a freestanding system that, again, that'll be very forward-facing for people to go into and touch and visualize with as well.
Any other commissioner comments, questions?
Just want to piggyback on what Commissioner Madden mentioned, and I thank you for that, my dear sister. But I, as I heard and reviewed what was shared on Friday, I would too say again, I think that's where I think we need to make sure of, and I say that because I visited, going back some months ago, the area around, the Amway Arena, in Orlando, which was one of Palmo, they call the Palmo area of Orlando, was, you know, one of your lower socioeconomic areas of that city, and look what they did, you know, and now you got affordable housing there, I think, with a couple of sites there, and there were some retail shops there as well. And I thought, well, okay, well, as you and I have talked, and then when I heard the conversation on Friday, I said, well, this, this give me more, I guess, in my sense, want to say approve and move forward, and see what can come out of it, because it, I would think it could do anything but just help the situation, but we gotta just make sure we do it strategically.
Okay, any other comments by commissioners? Any by the public? Or questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Drumgo, appreciate that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, unanimously passes, that brings us to 4B.
Jared Simpson with the City Attorney's Office, again. This is another task authorization, this one with Straw and Trout Architects for Professional Services, associated with the East Main Street area Master Plan. The staff solicited a proposal with Straw and Trout, which is an approved firm under the city's continuing services contract for professional planning, design, and development services. To develop this plan.
Interrupt, I think we skipped over South Florida.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I skipped over what?
I was confused.
B.
Oh, yeah, B is what we're on, right.
This is a.
Yeah, you're on C, got it.
I got excited, I guess, about sidewalks, streetscapes. This is for the South Florida Avenue Plan, for the, what we're calling the Lane Reduction Study portion, between Arianna Street and Lime Street. It's a task authorization with Ayers Associates for Professional Services, associated with the South Florida Avenue Master Plan. And the project is currently in the test phase, which was extended at a commission workshop in August of last year, and the idea is to leverage the public investments and to inform the decisions regarding the future of the South Florida Avenue Corridor and Dixieland CRA. The CRA staff is proposing this strategic master plan to help provide a vision and roadmap for success along the corridor upon completion of the data collection period. The scope of services under this task authorization will include research and assessing the opportunities and challenges of the area, based on the data and field studies that Ayers Associates will conduct. They will also develop strategies regarding land use, development, use of parklets and open spaces, looking at the transportation and infrastructure, as well as housing and economic development in the surrounding area. They'll develop an implementation plan, including scenario planning and a consideration of available funding via grants and private sector partnerships, and then there will be a final presentation to the city commission with their findings. And the total project cost under this task authorization is not to exceed $57,700, and the project will be funded by Dixieland CRA Trust Fund and the Downtown CRA Trust Fund. Ayers will commence work upon the receipt of the notice to proceed, and there is a 14-week project timeline, and Assistant Director, Elise Drumgo, is here, if you have any specific questions.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All right, in discussion by Commissioner Madden.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I would love, again, I'm so glad that our Assistant Director is here. This is, you know, something I'm very excited about, I think you've heard me say it multiple times, like going through kitchen renovation without ever being able to pick it out, pick out the final design, or have any pictures, so all you do is know it's chaos and disruption and terrible, and that's what most people feel about the road diet. But I will note that I, you know, just even this weekend, seemed to see more baby carriages, walkers, you know, with born and bred opening at the front entrance now. You know, we had some early adopters who moved into that neighborhood, thinking, okay, they're gonna make this safer for us, let's invest, and, you know, rent space, but, you know, you still have no idea where to park to go to Kombucha, or, you know, when they might be open, and it's still difficult, you know, to navigate that area during the test. So, I'm hopeful, I said all that to say that I'm hopeful that this study is going to be helpful, you know, with regard to seeing what it could be, instead of just what it is, and what a nuisance, and how hard it is, you know, for folks to get out onto South Florida Avenue, and then specifically, just because I know we both.
And then specifically, just because I know, um, we both have seen the Edgewater Drive study, and, and I've looked through that, could you just give me a compare and contrast so I know how extensive this is compared to what we've both read?
Sure, so it, it is, Commissioner Lee Strumgo for the record, but it is, uh, very extensive, and it's similar. So, the scope that was provided or will be provided in the study is the exact same. Basically, took the Edgewater Plan and sat with the consultant and said, hey, you know, what level of work went into, uh, produce this plan? Um, now, a little, some differences between the two plans. The Edgewater Plan, uh, really was implemented, you know, they had a plan for that post-decision to implement their diet. And so, uh, with that, you know, we're providing the commission with these options ahead of your, uh, decision of what you'd like to do with the roadway because the, the realignment will have such an impact on the adjacent community and then also, understanding that even with a build, build or no build scenario, still need to be able to see what that might look like and be able to look at different cross-sections of the roadway and determine, um, collectively, you know, what you like to do in those specific areas. And so that we don't just treat the entire corridor the same, uh, on the back end of it. So, ideally, we give you some, some options to be able to look at and to inform your decision-making. And it's very, uh, it's intentional that we have a 14-week timeline because we know that the test has come into a close, and we want to be able to provide all the data to the consultant and then also, um, you know, work that into, uh, some of the recommendations.
Excellent, Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Commissioner Madden, for that. And I know that some of you have been involved in these discussions for a number of years now on this project. And, Elise, I appreciate you sharing that because I did ask you last week just to, uh, comment on that we're in a time of uncertainty with the road diet, what we're going to do with the final decision. And I wanted to make sure that this project was not a policy push toward a certain direction to try and sway, okay, this is where we think it could go because it, we don't know yet, and we're still in that test phase. And I think that's important that we recognize that, and the public understands that as well, that we're trying to get a sense of, well, what could it be at its full potential? It's not there yet, but also some options in this project for, well, what if we don't approve it and go in a different direction? And so I think that's important to, to mention.
That's correct, Commissioner.
And I think that's an excellent, um, delineator because you really have not made a decision. And this is, this is kind of like when you have your house plans for the remodeling come in and you go, oops, I don't want to do that. Or, we like that, and given that, it helps us move forward, so appreciate that very much. Commissioner Walker?
I was just going to say, I, I, I'm excited about what could come out of it because I've always envisioned and not to take anything away from what this may, uh, bring to our attention, um, at all. But, I, I always thought Dixieland was just such a special place. And, and, and just to see what has happened in some, um, developments come, come forth even with the road diet. Uh, and I know what may happen with that, as you just said, Commissioner McLeod, but, uh, just what can, what can land there, what could be, what, what it can become. I think about Hyde Park, you know, I think, oh, Dixieland, you know, I think, you know? Yes, my mindset, because I'm not a planner, but I just see the potential, you know, because it's something, such a unique, you know, section of our city that, uh, has brought about even some more urban feel and, uh, different kinds of opportunities. So, whether the diet goes one way or the other, I think it's still going to be a nice, uh, segue to see what can become in, in that area.
Commissioner Reed?
Thank you. Uh, it's going to be interesting. Uh, I, I've been opposed to the diet plan, I think, from day one. Uh, I thought DOT should have made the hard call, and we should have looked at New York and Missouri, uh, Florida Avenue North and Missouri and New York South. And, uh, I would set the Edgewood product, Edgewater Project, looked at it, and of course, that's totally unique from Florida Avenue, obviously.
Yes.
Uh, they had a extensive amount of vacant land, they could do some parking and, of course, I always thought if we opened up Missouri and New York, it would create a whole, if we're talking about economic impact, we could convert all those homes into small businesses. You would have maybe a Hyde Park, you'd maybe tear down a couple of buildings to have some adequate parking there. But I, I hope they will encompass some vision, maybe to the west a little bit and maybe to the north, to see how to incorporate those areas and maybe.
Sure.
Again, I'm not sure, I can't remember when we're going to vote on the diet. Uh, of course, ultimately, the decision is not ours. Uh, we can make a rec, we're going to make a recommendation, and then DOT has the final statement as to what's going to transpire in that neighborhood. Uh, but I would hope that, uh, you, if our study would go forward and move it, it would be that way.
Any other comments, Commissioner Madden?
I think that's a great point that you brought up, Commissioner Reed. I don't know, you know, I know we're collecting data just as if it, the road diet is how it is, but is this study, does it have the potential to show if a portion of it was a one-way, like he was describing at all? Just to showcase maybe how other places might do that?
So, there, there will be options. I don't have a, a preden- predetermined understanding of what those options will be of yet. I think when the, you know, when the, when the firm, when Ayers receives the data and then also looks at, uh, some of the previous work and community input that was sent forward, they'll be able to make some decisions on what, you know, design-wise, what they'd like to bring back and propose to you. But you'll have several options. And, um, I, I think it sounds like you're very interested in what a no-build scenario looks like and how that impacts the adjacent community. And, uh, we'll make sure that that is something that we push forward to make sure that we get an understanding of that as well. Um, and, and clearly, the impacts on those adjacent side streets and the community.
Okay.
Of course, the, the, unfortunately, the, the Edgewater area was, was blighted at the time. Of course, Dixieland is some of our most valuable real estate. And so, there's a big difference from when we, where they started and where we're going to start from, from our standpoint. Uh, so that was just one little, additional little point. But I hope they will expand their, uh, viewability per se and see if they can incorporate some of these areas. Because it's already, the area's already been impacted quite a bit. And we're getting, uh, a lot of, uh, people wanting their, uh, ru- roads, uh, barriers, slow down traffic, et cetera. And, uh, it's going to be interesting to see what they come up with. And I hope we can get a chance to digest that prior to our voting on the diet itself.
And this accelerates that whole effort.
And this is, that is the goal, Mayor, is for us to receive the rec, to receive the recommendations and for you all to see that, you know, those options ahead of the vote, uh, to inform, to be able to inform your decision.
Commissioner Madden?
Um, you can tell this is exciting, Elise, that we really, we really hope this is going to be a lot better than what we've been living through. Um, I'm already taking every road I can, every back road to avoid South Florida. Um, but it did make me think, you know, you know, in your mind, you're just thinking of that linear traverse on the actual, and then when you brought up the potential one-way and then the differences between Edgewater, it made me think of the CRA, um, tour to Delray Beach and the Pineapple District, and just what they did there. So, you don't, like, in my mind, we're just thinking about this one stretch of road on South Florida. But if you think about it, you know, as a grid and as a neighborhood overall, it would be interesting because in that Edgewater Drive, it shows where the predominant bulk of the commercial is and the residential is, and then how dense it could be in each area and where the natural parking should be. Um, so it'd be, and, you know, I'm hopeful that they are not just looking at the one road and just the ancillary, you know, things that, but the, the whole kind of grid of that area, maybe how it could be, uh, more kind of, if it's a district, like Dixieland District, more towards that Pineapple District and Delray Beach.
You're correct, Commissioner, we aren't just focusing solely on the corridor. I think that's been, you know, that's been something that is, we, we want to push it to understand the, the neighborhood impacts because part of the study for, for, uh, Edgewater as well is understanding the property values that are interior to the community surrounding, uh, the actual realignment that occurred there itself. And so, you know, we want to make sure that we're expanding outward as well and then incorporating some of the adjacent plans that, um, you know, some of the communities that have already updated their plans or provided, uh, feedback as well and, and really looking at the overall impacts.
Yeah, I'm thinking of 12 South in Nashville, too. It's kind of the same thing with the residential right there and the, um, yeah, how they had to figure out it's safe enough, you know, but still vibrant and walkable, and so, it's another...
Any other Commissioner comments? Any from the public? This is a voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, unanimously passes. Thank you for that, Mr. Drumgo. That brings us to the enthusiastic portion of Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
For a seat.
This is another task authorization with Strawn Trout as stated. It's for the East Main Street Area Master Plan. Um, this is essentially to develop a plan for a pedestrian gateway to Lake Mirror from Bartow Road. Um, it will, uh, Strawn Trout will be taking a look at all the parcels within the target area to develop this plan. They'll create a district design criteria, including the sidewalk material palette, as well as identifying appropriate locations for public art and streetscape improvements. And they will help to establish a brand identity for the area that can be used in the signage and the wayfinding design as well as social media and other city communication platforms. Uh, the total project costs under this task authorization will not exceed $74,900 and will be funded by the Midtown CRA Trust Fund with a, a line item allocated specifically for the East Main District. Strawn Trout will commence work upon the receipt of the notice to proceed, and there's a six-month project timeline for completion here.
All right, motion approved?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Commissioner, uh, Music, and seconded by Commissioner Madden. Discussion by commissioners.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Commissioner Walker?
Uh, as, as reviewing, unless I'm not looking at it correctly, um, Mr. Drumgo, Elise Drumgo, what, why would you, why do we not go past, um, east of Ingram? It's like we're stopping at the Ingram, Rose, you know, that. Why would, why wouldn't it go as far east, I would say, as Lake Parker?
Mm-hmm. So, in the task authorization and working with the, you know, we've got a project champion that we think may be willing to engage in some projects specifically in this area. Uh, the East Main District is larger than, uh, some of the proposed scope. And, and I'm going to massage that out to make sure that we expand out to include some of that other area. But the goal is to create a brand and identity package that automatically is, it's acceptable because this will all be considered the same sub-district. So, really, it's an evaluation of the entire area without taking it through, if that makes sense, and just defining it that way. Um, the focus is on the gateway because Rose Street and Main Streets, that's where the bulk of the traffic occurs that bring, that pulls people into downtown. And so, this area is really downtown adjacent, and we're trying to, um, we're trying to stimulate and sort of help identify it and brand it separately because, you know, our downtown, our downtown streetscape is, uh, is phenomenal, uh, it's, it's expensive, but everything can't be downtown. And we, we're starting to look at various ways that we pull together these sub-districts in that particular target area that is well-defined within the scope. Um, it, it will be applicable to the entire area.
So, I know when we, when we did the, what do you call it, the painting in, in the road, um...
The painting?
Yes.
The painting, yes.
The road barrel.
The road barrel, okay.
That's correct.
I, I thought at that time, going back 30, 40 years now, that was some of the work that was, uh, I guess, initiated to support, I guess, what we're moving with, even here, if I'm hearing correct. Am I saying that right?
Yes, sir, you're correct, and it was. We, you know, we did do, we did a, a design competition, and we came away with a color palette. Um, and unfortunately, it hasn't taken hold in a way that it would allow us to move forward in the area. And, um, now that we have, you know, we've got a significant renovation underway at the Sears Town, which is also in the East Main District. But then looking at, um, the potential for opportunities near the city's traffic operations center and right around the corner from the joinery, you know, we're, we're trying to emphasize the public investment that can take place in this area to stimulate the private dollars because, uh, that's how the rest of downtown, uh, took, took hold. It's the investment in the downtown streetscape that actually, uh, got people interested in, in the downtown. And so, we think that this, being downtown adjacent is a prime opportunity for us to do that, and we've got some interested parties, and we want to make sure that we're ready to go on the city side.
And, and by doing this, then you're, we're believing, and you're believing, and want us to believe that the east, east of this will help, this will help stimulate activity even more east?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions, uh, Commissioner Madden?
Yes, I'm kind of thinking about just, you know, how you can have RP Funding Center so close to downtown, but that streetscaping is wayfinding, you know? It shows people, this is where you walk to get, you know, somewhere. And so, you know, we don't really have that established to kind of connect, uh, even RP Funding to downtown necessarily, even though there's two bridges you could walk over from those hotels or from, you know, people typically get in the car and just drive those couple of blocks. Um, to me, it's similar, Commissioner Walker, to get people over to that east side. You start where you have your natural investment, which is the joinery and all that, starting to kind of go that direction. And in my opinion, it's like a huge impediment, and I hate to say it because I love our traffic ops, but when you see like barbed wire fencing, you know, you think, don't go any further, it's unsafe. You know, like right under the bridge, there's the parking, and it looks safe and nice. And then it's like, ugh, don't go, you know, you don't feel like you could go any farther and be safe. Like, I'm like, that, that's a bad area or something, I don't know. It's just visually not appealing when you see barbed wire on fencing. So, I'm hopeful, you know, that, 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 like, just to make that segue to the east area from the most natural connection, which is already being invested in, then it just will keep going, you know, to your point. But you could invest all the Sears Town renovation and all of the renovation over there on Rose Street and everything, but if you don't feel like you could even just go that one street to get there, you won't. You won't walk, you'll just get in your car and drive or not go there at all.
Right, and the, and those entry gates and those inviting features are subtle. And, um, we see them in other cities that we go to, you know, to kind, they help kind of define an area as they go along. And so, it'd be exciting to see what can come from this. Commissioner Reed?
How far does it go to the east, to Dade Lake or to, uh, to Ingram? How far?
So, the, the East Main District, which is actually a sub-area of Midtown, goes all the way out to Gary Road.
That's what I was thinking.
Goes all the way to Gary Road, and, uh, then this particular, uh, target area goes north to Memorial as well. So, we've got a, a huge area that, uh, you know, we can address. Um, and ideally, we get an understanding of that public infrastructure, those streetscape elements, and we design it and we put a value to it, and then we, we make our investment in a phased approach, and then we attract the, the private dollars.
Midtown was the largest CRA in the state, wasn't it?
Well, that's a...
As a, as a sub-district?
It's bigger than we got there?
I want, East Tampa is pretty big, I think that, but we are, it is 4,400 acres, Midtown is huge, so, that's it.
Other, um, questions from the commission? Any from the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, unanimously passes. Excellent.
Our last, uh, CRA item is a proposed tax increment financing agreement with 625 East Lime LLC relating to property at 611, 613, and 625 East Lime Street. That's at the southwest corner of the intersection of Indiana Avenue and Lime Street. It's a vacant, uh, .89 acres of land. Uh, the developer's proposing to construct a one-story, uh, building consisting of 48 apartment units and as well as associated onsite, uh, surface parking. Uh, proposed estimated, uh, total pro- development cost for the project, uh, are $9,980,839. Uh, this has already been before the, uh, Historic Preservation Board's Design Review Committee to, to analyze the architectural renderings for the property and receive their approval. The developer's asking for our standard CRA TIF agreement, which provides for, uh, reimbursement, uh, over a five-year period of 50% of the tax increment developed, uh, uh, created by the improvement to the property. Uh, so, the property would be appraised after the property completion and whatever the assessed value is the year after the property, the, the development is, is completed, uh, will generate additional revenue to the CRA. The developer will get 50% of that back over a period of five years. Uh, this, uh, agreement was considered by the CRA Advisory Board at its regular meeting in, in February of 2022, February 3rd of 2022. They received, uh, a unanimous recommendation of approval, that's recommended for your approval.
So, motion approved?
So moved.
Second?
So moved in a second on both ends. And the, uh, discussion on this project. Seeing none, any by the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimously approved. Right, that takes us to our city manager. You, uh, actually back to our city attorney because there aren't any city manager items, I apologize. And that brings us to, uh, 6B1.
6B1 is a proposed, uh, Resolution 22-007, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Looking Forward relating to Public Right-of-Way, adopting a fee schedule for sidewalk cafes and parklets, providing for the repeal of resolutions to the extent of any conflict herewith, providing for severability, providing an effective date. And I believe that, uh, the city manager, uh, and, and staff do have a presentation on this item for your consideration this morning.
All right.
Yes, um, Commissioners, related to, uh, this item, uh, Mr. Lazenby, I believe, is going to be the lead in a presentation. in a presentation that has been discussed with the Commission. There's going to be several things in this presentation that the Commission is going to be made aware of. One would be a general description regarding regulations in terms of safety and aesthetics that would apply to the parklet and the sidewalk cafe concepts. And then, related to the, the item on the agenda, a proposed fee resolution for the Commission to consider. And so I just want to kind of lead into that discussion and, and talk a little bit about, you know, what this proposed fee schedule contemplates and staff's responsibility to bring forward some rationale to that. And so in working through with the team that's been working on this, and that includes certainly Mr. Lazenby, our Mr. Frederick, Mr. James, Mr. Weatherford, a, a number of, of supporting staff is behind Mr. Lazenby in this presentation. But, you know, it, it, the fee proposal contemplates several things. One would be some of the staff costs associated with parklets and sidewalk cafes to process applications, review plans, inspect setups, and, and ultimately then ensure compliance with the regulations. There's also, as, as we've discussed in the past, some, some associated, I would think, I could say minimal lost revenue in terms of, of, of parking fees in the downtown area. And then, and then finally, and, and one that, you know, staff feels the responsibility to provide to the Commission would be the concept of, of if a return to the public for restaurants to have exclusive use of public parking spaces and sidewalks is, is reasonable, then how should we go about determining those fees? And so what you're going to see and hear is, is how staff then did what we often do and, and what the Commission at times asks staff to do is, is we go and benchmark. And so we've gone and looked at other cities who have formalized programs for, for parklets and sidewalk cafes, and, and we've benchmarked against, you know, what they're charging. And so what you will see is a proposed fee that is less than what we charge per square foot for leases of a parking space with the city of Lakeland. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Lazenby, and he can go into much greater detail regarding those regulations and, and the proposed fee resolution. And then, following staff's presentation, as I think the Commission is aware, Julie Townsend from the LDDA is here, and I've committed to Ms. Townsend that she will be a part of the presentation without any, any timeframe on the clock restrictions and so that she can bring forward information for the Commission to consider as well. Mr. Lazenby.
Well, good afternoon now. We're past the morning.
Good afternoon.
So I'm teaming up with Jeff Weatherford. Jeff Weatherford's your traffic engineer. He's going to be talking more about how we came up with our recommendation for fee-based. But during the last discussion on this, Commissioner Madden had indicated some interest in, okay, what is the permit process going to be that we're moving out of the Land Development Code? And what kind of requirements are going to be associated with that permit? So I'm going to kind of brush through those items. Next slide. So the first thing I want to talk about is the sidewalk cafe, and we're taking about ninety percent of the information that's in the Land Development Code. It's all on a page or two and just migrating it over to our right-of-way use permit applications. We are kind of tweaking some things to give a little bit more flexibility to our customers and to comply with existing state and like the Florida Green Book or accessibility guidelines. You'll hear me say PROACT. That's Public Rights Away Accessibility Guidelines. And our three main goals with our requirements are to maintain an unobstructed pedestrian pathway, to maintain normal roadway operations, and of course, to maintain accessibility. Next slide. So this is an excerpt straight from the Land Development Code, and I'll kind of walk through with you some of the requirements. They have a, to maintain a four-foot minimum pedestrian pathway currently is what's required in the cafe requirements in the Land Development Code. That actually is not consistent with the PROACT guidelines, and it's not consistent with recommendations in the Florida Green Book, which we're required to adhere to in the city of Lakeland. They recommend a minimum six-foot pedestrian pathways, and that's enough to get two-way traffic, which we think is very important. For instance, I drove downtown at nine o'clock on a Thursday. I call it a school night, and they were, it was still packed out there. I couldn't believe it. I lived here all my life, and I've never seen anything like that. So we're proposing a six-foot unobstructed pedestrian pathway, but we will consider a four-foot area next to a light pole or fire hydrant or a isolated obstruction such as a tree well. The Land Development Code requires that a cafe be offset a minimum of five feet from a parking lane when it's proposed adjacent to the parking lane, and seven feet from the road when it's just adjacent to, when you're proposing it adjacent to travel lane. One thing is, a lot of the cafes out there do not current comply with that. They're much closer than that. And what we did is we wanted to offer a little bit more flexibility. Traditionally, sidewalk cafes are separated by the roadway and are located up adjacent to the building. But as you can see out there in what we did with Main Street, we were able to almost double the width of the sidewalk cafes if we use that kind of some of that area a little bit closer to the roadway and maintain the pedestrian, unobstructed pedestrian pathway behind it. I think nineteen sixty-one has ten or eleven tables for four sitting out there in their, in their sidewalk cafe. Now, one thing that's important is the Florida Green Book has lateral clearance offsets from the roadway to maintain that normal roadway operation. And what it says is you can't, you shouldn't have any kind of above-ground fixed objects with any closer than four feet and in very rare constrained areas, one point five feet. So what we were proposing to do is when a customer elects to kind of have that expanded cafe experience similar to what's on Main Street, we would have a railing or other approved method, we might be able to consider planners or everything, to kind of buffer the diners from the roadway. And the purpose of that is not, the car hits that railing, it's not going to, those aren't crash, you know, it's not traffic railing. It will, the car will go through it, but it's to keep your child or somebody in a stroller from chasing their ball out of the street or the dog on the leash from going out in the street. And it helps to keep those, those sidewalk cafes from migrating further towards the street. For instance, that, those planners at nineteen sixty-one, since they've been implemented, have moved about a foot closer to the roadway, and now they don't comply with Florida Green Book standards.
Next slide, please.
Regarding parklets, we don't have anything from the Land Development Code. They're not mentioned in the Florida Green Book. They're not mentioned in DOT. These are relatively new things. They are covered in, in an urban street guide, urban design guidelines that are published by the National Association of City Transportation Officials or NACTO. And they're actually in a section called interim conditions. However, we did a lot of research in a lot of municipalities that either adopted a parklet program on an interim basis and are moving towards having a permanent parklet basis, or kind of relying on those NACTO guidelines and basing their guidelines on the NACTO strategies. And we're proposing to do the same. And our, our, our goals there are very similar, but not quite the same as for sidewalk cafes because we're actually putting diners directly in parking spaces, directly adjacent to motorized vehicles. So we want to minimize the potential for vehicle collisions within the parklet structure. We want to maintain, because now we're in the road and our drainage in these urban roadways is right along that curb line. We want to maintain the drainage pattern so we're not flooding out the road, and we want to maintain access to public utilities, manholes, ability to get to fire hydrants, ability to respond to emergencies. And of course, again, we want to maintain accessibility in public right-of-way. So there's a couple of key things that we propose, and it's very consistent with the NACTO guidelines, is parklets need to be buffered on each end so a car that's parking adjacent to them doesn't back up into the structure. So you can do that with a wheel stop. We're offering more flexibility where we say wheel stop or other approved methods. For instance, the parklets that we've allowed to be placed downtown have planters there that are a little bit more aesthetically pleasing, but accomplish the thing, thing. They were, they suggest putting a flexible reflective delineator post at each end just to give some visual, visual emphasis that, hey, there's, there's people out here eating food in the road. And we, we can, again, either go straight with that requirement, but our, the way we've worded the requirements is opt for some flexibility. For instance, they put some like reflective tape on the end of the planter there, and that'll suffice it. And we were requiring a barrier, a barrier around the ends of the structure where there could be cars backing into it and it directly adjacent to the motorized traffic. Again, that's not crash-worthy. That's, you know, if somebody hits it, it's not meant to stop the car. What it's meant to do is keep diners from getting out into the road. The other thing is we require a corner clearance. So we're recommending at least thirty-foot minimum offset from the intersecting travelway of an intersecting roadway. That's a little bit more flexible than what we find in the industry. They're actually buffering it by at least a parking space. So most municipalities are looking at thirty plus a parking space, you know, and then the parklet, which if we implement that, we would probably find that some of those businesses on the corner wouldn't have the ability to do the parklets. Next slide. So the permit procedures, we learned going through with Julie that, you know, when we deal with these permits, it's not going to be our normal customers. Our normal customers are utility agency owners, engineers, developers, that are really used to going through the permitting process. So when, when we were working with Julie, she was the unfortunate guinea pig, and there were some lessons learned there. We ended up going out there and meeting with her on a, Jeff and I on a couple of separate occasions to kind of go through what we, our concerns are and what the requirements was. And then later on, I sent my staff out there to kind of gather some information and supply it to her manufacturer that was working on the parklet structure. So what we want to do and are recommending to do is, one, we're going to use our right-of-way use permit because that's effectively what it is, is a use of the right-of-way. But we're going to, when somebody's interested in a parklet or cafe, we're going to have city staff go out there, meet with them, go over the requirements, and actually work with them and define the space that is available for either the cafe or the parklet. And then we're going to take some measurements, like where's the tree well? How wide's the sidewalk? You know, where are the light poles? And we're going to take that back to our office and generate an existing conditions site plan for them on gridded paper that's to scale and provide it to our customers and set, that has their boundary of where you can work, where you can place either the sidewalk cafe or barbway, parklet, and also has all the existing instructions and say, here, draw what you're proposing on that paper, attach your clip sheets of what kind of umbrellas, what kind of, what kind of different street furnishings you want, and send it back to us. And we'll just check it for compliance, have them fill out the right-of-way use permit, get the insurance requirements and whatnot, and we'll be down the road and approve it instead of going back and forth. Next slide, please. The last thing I wanted to talk about is conditions. And most of the permit conditions we, we took directly from what's already exists in the Land Development Code, like no variances to floor air, area ratio, no sale of alcoholic beverages unless the restaurant's already permitted to do so. But we're adding a couple there at the bottom. And one is, we're requiring the removal of the street furnishings if Public Works enacts Phase Three of its emergency operation plans, which simply means, uh-oh, the hurricane's coming. You know, it's on its way. So what we would do is give them forty-eight hour notices and say, hey, the tables and chairs need to be picked out of the roadway. And we're reserving the right to respond to emergency. Let's say, God forbid, a sinkhole opens up or a water main breaks under the parklet, that we can get in there and remove those items so we, and make the necessary repairs, and it would be up to the, the permittee to reestablish the parklet or sidewalk cafe. With that, are there any questions related to the procedures or recommendations for that?
No heating or cooking, just explain that.
Yeah, so, so that's straight from the Land Development Code, and the idea was not to have, you know, right, right when you're walking around, folks and stuff, not to have, where you can open flames and things like that out there in the, in the public right-of-way.
What about a pole for heating?
A heating pole, yeah.
Yeah. It, it, it says heating or cooking food, but I, we can change that and say space heaters are permitted. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Music.
So when you have the, the, the number one bullet point you have there is maintained design standards. So those design standards apply to chairs and umbrellas and things like that, or it's the structure itself?
So, so the design standards are basically what I went over there. But remember I mentioned PROACT? PROACT has some specific requirements for street furnishings. For instance, if you have an umbrella, if it's extending into the clear pedestrian pathway, it needs to be at least seven feet tall. That if you have a parklet-
Not color necessarily, more from a safety standpoint.
What we have, that's correct. Yeah. Now, what we do have, Commissioner Music, is we're basically proposing this to be limited to three reviewing parties. Public Works for reviewing of the design standards. There is some language in the Land Development Code now that talks speaks a little bit about the aesthetics of the parklet, and we were going to let community development have a look at it to say, okay, is there, are you guys comfortable with these aesthetic values? And then the last group would be risk, just to look at insurance requirements.
Any other, yes, Commissioner Walker.
Thank you, sir. And now that we're looking at adopting this kind of a schedule for sidewalk cafes, parklets, as would be, and, and everything is based on, I guess, on square footage in some sense. Use of how much you're using space outside of your particular restaurant or dining facility. My question is, do we have any overlap? Is, is there any room for overlap for, for how much, how many tables, chairs, whatever you, you put out there? Not park this now, just on the sidewalk. Because I've been to some places, some cities where it just seemed like I'm about to grab this person's table because it's so close. Or is it just the layout of what the actual restaurant or dining facility wants to have? You know, you hear what I'm saying? The closeness and-
Are, are you saying when we regulate how many tables they can, they can fit into that defined area?
Yes.
Well, that would be governed, again, by those PROACTs, PROACT, that it requires a certain amount of the tables to be accessible. It requires a wheelchair to be able to turn around in the parklet area and things like that. I'm not sure I answered your question properly.
That's, that was the spacing, more or less. Because I'm thinking, some places you go, can I even move about? You know, push your chair back or whatever. But is this having, would they have, would this have any bearing on that particular situation?
That, that, exactly. There would be, what we have in the requirements, it's a little bit more detailed than what I went over, but it requires, requires compliance with those PROACT or accessibility guidelines within the right-of-way. I'll say this, there's probably some cafes and things out there today that do not comply with those standards.
Right.
That's, that's, that's my question.
They don't.
They don't, yes. That's what I'm asking. Okay.
Other Commissioner questions?
I can turn it over to Mr. Weatherford, and he can talk about the recommendations for free, sir.
With us, sir.
Good afternoon. I'm Jeff Weatherford. I'm the manager of Traffic Operations and Parking Services, and I get the easy part. Next slide, please. Okay, what are others doing? The mayor talked about benchmarking against other cities. Sidewalk cafes, we went around, we tried to figure out what other cities in Florida were doing. Orlando, they've got a set fee based on either the number of tables or the minimums or the maximum square footage. So basically, if you've got one to five tables or less than twelve hundred square feet, they charge five hundred dollars a year. That if you get to that sixth table or exceed twelve hundred square feet, they suddenly jump up to, oh, there's a typo there. I see it's actually seven hundred and fifty dollars a year. In Miami, they charge a application fee of a hundred and seventy-five dollars and then eleven dollars and fifty cents per square foot. So basically, we kind of draw a line over, around the area of the cafe and then figure this, the area. That's how they figure it. Jacksonville, again, a flat two hundred and fifty dollars a year. Delray Beach, a hundred and fifty dollar application fee, four dollars and seventy-five cents a square foot. And then in Surfside, they charge an eighty-dollar application fee and fifteen dollars a square foot for sidewalk cafes. So.
Don't have very many, huh? Just kidding.
Parklets. First, most of the parklets that you're seeing out there nowadays are COVID mitigation. That they were put in when everybody's trying to provide social distancing, and, and as a result, most cities that are doing them are doing them on an interim basis at no cost. We've looked around and tried to find where people are doing some other things. Probably the closest thing to what we provide, what we're looking at is San Francisco's got an established program that actually predates COVID where they were charging two thousand dollars for the first parking space, which works out to be about twelve dollars and fifty cents a square foot, and a thousand dollars for each additional space that they would use. Fort Lauderdale has a newer program that's getting, just getting- Fort Lauderdale has a newer program that's getting, just getting underway and that they are charging six hundred and forty dollars for a parking space. That works out to be about four dollars and six cents a square foot. In Orlando, they've got a brand new program. They had the COVID program, but they've extended it and they're looking at how to make it permanent. And we've been trying to get some information on that, but about the only way I've been able to find out how to get costs would be if I actually went and applied for one and I wasn't quite ready to do that. Uh, next slide. So why should we group sidewalk cafes and parklets together? Well, realistically, they're both serving as an extension of a restaurant, that whether it's up against the building or whether it's on the sidewalk near the curb or whether it's in the parking space, it's restaurant space. The only real difference is where we're locating it. So why issue a permit? Well, what we'll be doing is we'll be issuing an exclusive use permit for that. When the original parklet concepts came up back in the early two thousands with NACTO, it was actually looking at inner-city areas where there weren't parks, they didn't have them on park across the street, for instance. But they were looking at how to reclaim some space and give people a spot to relax and they weren't associated with an individual business. What makes this difference is it will be associated with an individual business. Um, and that there is a loss to the public, that we talk about the, um, the six-foot accessibility on the sidewalks and such. Basically, right now, where we've got several sidewalks, sidewalk cafes, the two of, two people can't walk side by side, they're going to have to walk one in front of the other in order to get past those, particularly in the tighter spots, um, that we won't pick on anybody, y'all know where they're at. Um, that you look at the parking spaces, these are actually some of the prime parking spaces in downtown that we'll be giving up. And so there's a loss of use there as well. So that's why we think it's important to issue a permit. Next slide, please. Uh, that you notice some of the agencies are charging application fees. Well, they need to be based on, application fees need to be based on what the city is going to charge for that, um, what our, what our actual costs are for that. Um, that frankly, to be honest, we don't really know what it's going to cost us at this point. Uh, that we can make some guesses, but we don't know. So we can also consider them incidental to the annual cost since we're talking about, hey, there's an additional cost as well. We started looking, the, that started with the parking spaces is a good starting point. We know we're going to be giving up some parking spaces for this. Depending on where you're at in downtown, the city charges somewhere between thirty-five dollars and ninety dollars a month for a parking space. The thirty-five dollar spaces are the open parking lots usually down on the southern end, down like near Lake Morton, or up on the northern end of downtown. They're not right smack dab in the middle. Ninety dollars a month would be in some of the premier parking inside of Heritage Garage. So we kind of went back and forth. What I decided, just as a starting place, just take thirty-five and add it to ninety and divide by two, you get sixty-two fifty. Um, that, and that was kind of what I used for an average cost, uh, not true average, but kind of a median, call it a median in between the prices. The average parking space is twenty feet long by eight feet wide, it's about a hundred and sixty square feet. So if you take that sixty-two fifty times twelve months, you're seven fifty, divide that by the hundred and sixty square feet, you end up with four dollars and sixty-nine cents a square foot, just kind of a rough number. So that kind of takes us to our recommendation, which is on the next slide. We're not recommending we incorporate an, uh, application fee. We think we just need to make it incidental to it. I like round numbers personally, so instead of four dollars and sixty-nine cents, I went down to four fifty. And that's kind of where city staff sits with our recommendations. I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Commissioner Music.
So on the, um, if you can go back to the other slide where you kind of talk about the, you know, a parking spot is twenty feet by eight feet. When we look back at the design criteria of the parklet, we've got space for a buffer between the other cars where we were talking about delineators and stuff like that. So it seems that if we do that, they're paying for a space that they don't get to utilize all of it as well.
That's true. Basically, there's got to be that. I believe it was two feet, Ryan, so they can't be, it's four feet? No, okay. So there's an area within that space that they can't use. I think that they're actually a little bit further than that on the parking spaces, that they're actually at like six feet depth, that, that the ones that are out there today, they're, they're at six feet. So yes, there's, there's an area that they're not using, but it's also an area that's no longer usable by the city either.
Correct, yeah, we don't get to use the whole thing, but neither do they, so it is-
Right, we lose the parking space and that's how we calculated that.
Yes, go ahead, please, sir.
So when, when we're going back and we're looking at what, what was available information, which was Orlando, you know, seaside or lakeside, these other things, obviously, having eaten at some of those places, those restaurants are also more expensive and things of that nature, how are we balancing, you know, we aren't Orlando or Jacksonville or some of these, so where are we looking at that and saying, okay, we aren't Delray Beach or Surfside? And, and being able to look and say, we want to encourage these downtown restaurants to come down and we want to have that walkability feel, and then we're, we're hitting them with these?
And that this isn't a mandatory program for anyone, that if a business doesn't feel that this makes business sense to them, then they don't need to do it. But when we're talking about it, even when we talk about the larger sidewalk cafes and such, that I think I figured it out, um, you know, just kind of roughly doing Google map type square footage and not including any additional parklets that may come in. The largest one I think we had was going to run something like fifteen hundred dollars a year.
Other comments? Do you have one more?
One more. Um, so we're talking specifically, when we look at this, we're talking about restaurants.
Yes, sir.
But if we go down, uh, go downtown and we walk, we see many of the businesses have utilized some outside space for seating, for plants, for beautification, things like that. How are we balancing both of those? They're not generating revenue from that, but they are utilizing city space. And then we also have the requirements that Mr. Lazenby was talking about with the distance. How do we see that playing out?
That, you know, I don't know that we've really given deep consideration to that. I would say that a, you know, basically strain out into the public right-of-way is sort of like putting your patio furniture on your next door neighbor's property. If he gets, lets you get by with it, it's okay, but if he says, hey, you gotta move it. So we'll have to look more in-depth at that, but we've not looked at locations other than restaurants at this time.
Yeah, because I know that there are, there are a few, and you know, if I'm a restaurant owner right beside and I'm seeing, see people sit outside and, and, you know, have a drink or whatever, and I, I know that they're not paying, I think that could, could certainly cause some issue. I would, I would like to just kind of see any of the outdoor space from building to, to sidewalk, that's, that city's property, there should be a, you know, an application for that, so.
Uh, Commissioner Walker.
Picking back on, guess what my colleague said, it's now about the cities that we do, that we did, uh, uh, look into and researched. Any reason why you think cities maybe like outside or comfortable to outside or even next door to Tampa, or why, why they're not doing anything like this? I'm, I'm just asking. Why they're not having any particular program to set costs for use, because you, you find them in those cities?
I'd have to speculate. I would tell you, I'd tell you that I know that a lot of the cities don't want to give up the parking spaces for the parklets as far as sidewalk cafes, uh, that, I'll be honest, I tried to grab, you know, dozen or so different places within Florida. If I couldn't find it easily, I didn't call people up and pursue until I could find it. Tampa may have some standards for sidewalk cafes, I don't know. This wasn't intended to be comprehensive, just try and give us an idea of where people are at. That, like I said, that the biggest objection the cities have had to the parklets from my experience with NACTO, and I used to serve on the NACTO board in my previous life, um, that cities don't want to give up what they see as prime parking space.
I'd like to continue the presentations if we could.
Sure, that's where I was hoping to-
That's right. So thank you very much for yours, not to shortchange it, and Julie, if you could join us.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, while, while Ms. Townsend's coming up, you know, also to Commissioner Walker's question, in our research, you know, we're, we're actually seeing it kind of going different ways. I mean, so you heard the discussion about, you know, Orlando is now looking to do something to make theirs more permanent as well, but we've also seen communities like, I believe it was St. Pete, uh, who recently repealed, uh, their, their allowances for that outdoor type of seating. So I, it seems to be kind of very specific to the locations and, and whether they find value in it or, or not.
Sure.
Go ahead, ma'am, please.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
For the record, Julie Townsend with the Lakeland Downtown Development Authority. So, um, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, City Manager, for including LDDA in the opportunity to participate, participate in this discussion. I have great respect for, uh, my city colleagues who have done a lot of, uh, research on this subject. Uh, I totally support the guidelines and standards, of course, we certainly need those. The opposition that I bring forward to you today is on the fee structure. This is a qualitative, not a quantitative issue. We are not pricing out a widget. This is something that is for the public good, and you guys debate public good and costs of that and value to that, and you did many times today already. So here's the question I like to ask. I like to approach problems with a series of questions, because I feel like if you ask those high-level questions, then the answers become apparent, uh, as you go through and answer them. So, first question. At the highest level, why do we have sidewalk cafe uses in the first place? Well, we know that sidewalk cafes invigorate the pedestrian realm, you can flip to the next slide. They contribute to an active urban core. Uh, sidewalk cafes are not only contributing to that, but they are a fantastic public safety tool by acting as eyes on the street. You have public sitting down, watching what's going on, people watching. Sidewalk cafes add vitality to the street by encouraging walking and promoting local economic development. Downtowns are supposed to be pedestrian-centric places, and sidewalk cafes contribute significantly to the walkability of a district and the overall economy by providing active, activity and interest at the street level. We know that the implementation of sidewalk cafes should be encouraged by cities, and if we want, because we want those cities to thrive. So with that in mind, next slide. Do you want more sidewalk cafes or fewer? The obvious answer is more. But let's look at what we have on the ground in downtown today, and you saw the cities that your staff compared us to, and I'll have a comment about that in a moment. But today, in downtown Lakeland, in the core, I have it used, uh, west side of South Florida, we only have the possibility of sixteen sidewalk cafes, sixteen. Of the people who could possibly do it, which means using the right-of-way, not their own personal public, uh, private space, only thirteen are participating. Of those thirteen, only nine have both day and night activity, some are just lunchtime places. And of those nine, only four have permits, which means the other five, other, other nine actually are operating completely off the grid in terms of having the, the proper indemnification for the city and all of the standards that your, your staff just presented to you. So the next question should be, we want to put more sidewalk cafes in place, how do we accomplish that goal? We do that by supporting sidewalk cafes with incentives and not punitive fees. We want to pursue compliance. Let's get everybody who can have a sidewalk cafe compliant and having a sidewalk cafe, indemnifying the city, making sure they have all of the proper, uh, standards in place. So the big, big question is, what burden to the city do sidewalk cafes place that an increased fee structure is going to solve? The answer is none. The fees hurt businesses more than they help the city. We want the businesses who use the right-of-way to have city coverage, we want them to follow the standards. We want them to have beautiful tables and chairs and planters and lights, and we want it to be clean and safe and well-maintained. All of those burdens fall on the business, not the city. I know you've received some emails from some of our businesses going into great detail about the amount of money that they have spent to improve the right-of-way for their ability to have these sidewalk cafes. This is no small amount of money that we're talking about in terms of their investment. So that burden falls on them. The only burden that the city sees is the administrative side. I completely reject the loss of parking revenue as a burden to the city. We are supposed to be a people-centric city center, and we're worried about a car, one person, one use being able to park where we could seat twelve people for lunch? That's not, that's not people-centric, that's car-centric. And the example of a lost parking space is really it's addition by subtraction. The parking spaces lost by creating more places for pedestrians to gather and interact with the space, that doesn't mean we've lost parking, it means we've shifted parking. The parking spaces that we're asking you to give up are free for the first two hours, and we want that churn, so most likely they're generating little to no income at all. But now we've pushed those people, perhaps, who used to park in those locations into our paid parking spaces, the Munn Park parking lot, Heritage Plaza. I could argue parklets are making you more money, because now we're having more people pay for parking as soon as they park downtown. So I don't want to dismiss that the city, the city's right-of-way has value. You have every right and every, uh, obligation, of course, to understand the property value. And we have seen in every city, land is given away or practically given away in the name of public good. We have examples of that in downtown, and we ongoingly do. I would argue that much of the recent development coming to downtown is because of the public good created by these businesses. Summit Consulting is not coming downtown because downtown is a really cool office park. If you agree with my premise that sidewalk cafes are essentially for the walkability and vibrancy of a downtown, then it only logically follows that sidewalk, sidewalk cafes contribute to the public good, and the city should encourage them, not apply additional fees to deter them. Now to the cities we've compared. I did a lot of research myself, and per square foot is one way that cities, uh, charge for sidewalk cafes. Many of them have a per-table fee or a per-chair fee. Uh, there's the flat fee, as was discussed, there's the per-square-foot fee. There is no one way of doing it, and so to compare ourselves to others, particularly others who have cities with hundreds of sidewalk cafes, do you remember the number I told you how many we have? Far, far cry from hundreds. So assuming that everyone participates in our downtown, all sixteen, and we charge them this four dollars and fifty cents per square foot, that's maybe ten, fifteen thousand dollars. So I ask again, what burden to the city do the sidewalk cafes place that is insignificant amount of money, ten thousand dollars, is going to solve? And the answer is none. The fees hurt the businesses more than they help the city. So I have a series of final questions, and they fly onto the screen, Kevin, one at a time, so help me with this dramatic ending. Does it make sense to raise the fees on the businesses who are essential for creating the walkable, vibrant urban core that makes big capital, like Summit Consulting and Meriton want to invest? Does it make sense, on the heels of a pandemic, to increase fees on these small businesses upwards of a thousand percent to two thousand percent? Remember, they're paying, some of them nothing, a hundred dollars, and now all of a sudden, a thousand square feet is going to cost them four thousand dollars. So let me repeat, does it make sense, on the heels of the pandemic, to increase the fees of these small businesses upwards of- fees of these small businesses upwards of 1,000 to 2,000% when the collective revenue generated by these fees is an insignificant amount of money to the city, but completely significant to them? You guys talked about a lot of money today. None of it was $10,000 or $15,000. Commissioner Music spoke about the $150,000 we were going to spend on the consultant as a low-budget item. Why are we talking about this? And my final question, do you want to nickel-and-dine the small businesses when we know they help attract the big development projects to downtown? They are your bait. Make them partners instead. I've asked a lot of questions, and I just want to say one last thing. Put my last slide up? No, no, no. Oh, those were the answers. Yes, those were obvious, but yes, I forgot that I actually answered those questions for you. Next slide. So the Board of Directors, I hate not having control of my own clicker. The Board of Directors met on Thursday, and they unanimously agreed that they would like for you to keep the city permit at $100 and not add any additional fees to this process. We want to assist you with getting everyone into compliance. And we would like for you to work with us to increase the number of sidewalk cafés and enhance the aesthetics of the ones that we have. We've agreed to put some dollars towards that. We'd like to work with CRA to do that as well. I started this process several years ago with some of the staff that is no longer here. We talked about a pilot project. Now, I understand it's been years in the making, but we have finally, as of Sunday, gotten the last piece of the Harry's Parklet installed. They have not even finished decorating them yet. They haven't put on their lights. They haven't gotten their umbrellas. They haven't gotten their plants all finished yet. We haven't even begun the pilot project that we talked about doing. We just ask that you dismiss this insignificant amount of money that you're trying to extract from these businesses, at least go back to the $100 permit fee for all parklets and sidewalk cafés, all-encompassing. And if you want to revisit it at a later date, after you have some data from the businesses and some input from the community about how difficult it is not to park right in front of Harry's anymore, come on. I would appreciate that time, and I would appreciate for you to help me by answering the questions that I have posed in front of you. And I will answer any other questions you may have for me.
Question for Julie, Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Julie, for being here today. Thank you for your passion for downtown. And I know we all have that. The city staff bringing forward, it's a different proposal, and it's different from what you recommend, but everybody, I think, is working toward the same vision overall of downtown, of creating a vibrant space. I agree, we want to see more sidewalk cafés and parklets. You and I have talked many times. I've talked with City Manager. He's probably tired of hearing me talk about it. But I don't have a desire to charge a per-square-foot fee on these. I'm curious, though, are there other restaurants that you know of that are interested in doing parklets or kind of a wait-and-see approach that are watching to see, you know, how we approach this policy?
I think, I think I had a couple of comments from other businesses, like, how do I get one of those? They're not inexpensive structures, and this was part of a pilot project that the LDDA committed to do. It's a grant project. And as you know, grant funds are often limited, and there's criteria. Quite frankly, the businesses that got parklets were the only ones that qualified to get them under our criteria. And so we would not necessarily financially assist additional restaurants at this time in constructing parklets. That may change in the future, of course, and we would work with you guys to make sure that that was something that was important to you as well. But it's not going to be a free-for-all. It's going to be very calculated as we move forward. But the difference here is that you've now folded in sidewalk cafés with parklets and decided to charge a per-square-footage fee for businesses who have paid a flat fee for 20 or 30 years.
A differentiator, too, is that the parklets really can be temporary. And they were fully funded by LDDA through that grant program, and the city isn't funding it. Whereas if we did the café, we're obviously building that through our own people and costs to complete the sidewalk. And so that, it gives them flexibility to where they can be located.
And just to comment on that, I think we have an opportunity to continue the momentum that we've seen with the Main Street sidewalk expansion. I would love to see Phase Two of that in downtown and eventually a pedestrian corridors. Julie, I know you may not quite be on the same page yet, still working on that. But I think this is an opportunity, opportunity to incentivize the type of environment we want in downtown. As Julie said, we can revisit it later, but I would not support charging a per-square-foot fee. I appreciate the restaurants who have weighed in. I know over the weekend Jimmy John's, Frescos, and Black and Brew, I think, expressed the same. So thank you.
Commissioner Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Ms. Julie, you present a compelling argument. I will say that, but I think you also said, why are we discussing it? But I think it's important for us to discuss because, you know, we've been asked, you know, and as many, and I'm sure you know this, I'm talking to the choir. But, you know, when we get these kind of conversations that come about, you've got to talk about it. You've got to bring it before us and the other public, you know, that want to have their buy-in and say, yes, no, maybe so. And I think that's why it's important, you know? I've always lived in a premise, how can two walkers if they agree? We've got to make sure we have some agreement. And I do appreciate the compelling argument you presented. But I'm also tasked to say that, you know, I think where our downtown is growing, is the revitalization that happened many years back, I love it. You love the feel. You love what you see. And if we can help, you know, bring that even better, make it grow even better, I think it's important to do for our downtown. Hey, that's why I asked the question earlier, why we don't have any little cities, maybe that you can compare our size to, they're doing something that has been shared with us by staff. One city, I'm thinking about, I was in Fort Myers at a meeting, and the big, nice luminary hotel that's there, and they got sidewalk cafés all over the place. And I wondered, why didn't you find out what Fort Myers is doing? I mentioned it before. I thought I did. But maybe it's because, again, as Commissioner McLeod has said, there's a way they're trying to make sure they can do what needs to be done to have that vibrant downtown, have people coming together, have, you know, the activity that we want to see, and keep businesses, you know, vibrant, you know, as well, keep them going. So I say you did present a compelling argument for me to make sure I can make a decision at this point.
Well, and to that point, Commissioner, the research that I did on many, many cities and, you know, Tulsa, for example, has a $150 flat fee. They are about 450,000 people. You know, it's difficult to find that perfect apples-to-apples comparison. And I don't like when people try to compare downtown to other places because there's so many, there's so many factors. We're not the same. You have to take those pieces and say, well, how do they fit into us? But Winter Haven, for example, is about to expand Central Avenue, and they are not going to charge their businesses for the additional square footage. They're encouraging sidewalk cafés, and they are actually having a grant program to help them buy better furniture. So, you know, the closest city to us is giving it away. We, again, those other cities, and I was hard, hard-pressed to find a city our size. As I said, even you say a city with 75,000 people or 100,000 people, excuse me, like we are, the density of their people may be different. They may have much smaller square footage, footprint, acreage of their city than we do. So you have to look at density per square foot, square mile around downtown and in downtown. We only have 16 opportunities, and we don't even have those people participating. Why? Because street furniture is expensive, and you have to maintain it. You have to worry about someone stealing it. You have to hire staff to lock it up and unlock it and clean it. All of those things are an expense, and I think you can see the difference in some of the sidewalk cafés that we have out in downtown right now. Some of them not so pretty, and they don't get a lot of use. What if we helped? We all want those places to be dynamic and full of energy, and we can't do that by nickel-and-diming them on insignificant fees that really don't generate any, moving any needle for the city.
Commissioner Men.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Julie. You know, I'm so glad you had such a wonderful presentation because then I don't have to give such a long diatribe.
That was my goal.
So a big fat ditto to most of the things. And the answer is yes, we want more outside dining, not less. And I know for one, I'm in year five of asking for outdoor dining and lights downtown. And I think it's no accident that in the month of January, went to the TDC Tourism Development Council meeting last week, and out of all the adults coming into Polk County, 18 and older, the number-one attraction spot is downtown Lakeland in the month of January. And because it is vibrant and it's beautiful, and we have the lights, and we have the outdoor dining, and that's out of Polk County people, it's not even our own residents who are falling in love with the vibe that we have downtown. And so I'll put that in a contrast, like, do we, I'm the commissioner who, you know, wanted people to die because I was worried about our small businesses a little too early in the COVID mix. As a small business owner, one of my first questions is, oh, my gosh, are we going to wake up after this pandemic and there's no more Harry's, and there's no more Frescos, and there's no more Black and Brew, and all these folks are gone? What kind of community will we be if we don't support the very things that we love about our community? And they are the lifeblood and the heartbeat of our community downtown, those businesses. And they were hit hard, and they had to do remarkable things to be able to survive. And they did survive, and not only survived, they were able to thrive because the city worked in tandem. We let them have their ugly signs on cardboard if necessary. We let them have their dining outdoors. To our city's credit, we partnered with those small businesses. They're doing well, better than ever with outdoor dining. And to me, if we're going to, you know, subsidize RP funding up to $5 million a year, it didn't make the top 10 of where the visitors wanted to go in the month of January, but downtown Lakeland did. So I am not going to be in support of any additional fees or strains on these small business owners who are investing basically in third spaces, almost like parks, you know, in our downtown. While we're waiting to figure out what to do with Munn Park, they're kind of creating that aesthetics of the third spaces that is adding to all of our quality of life. So I would not be in favor of any, anything additional with regard to onerous regulation or fees at this point.
Commissioner Music.
Thank you, Julie. Appreciate that. And as the, as the commission representative on the LDDA, I got to have some good conversations with them. One of the things that, that we didn't talk about, though, that was interesting, as I heard Public Works and Mr. Lazenby speak about, is, is what is the cost that we're going to incur as a city by them reviewing these permits? Right? So we're going to have some office time, we're going to have people time, we're going to have that kind of time. Because, because what I'd like to do is, is kind of balance that with our $100 fee and what we're going to see there, just to try to get as close, because I'm with my, my other colleagues, I won't, I can't get behind this. But I also want to make sure that the $100 is something that we've, we as a commission, not you, I know you've spent the time, is where is, where has that fee come from mentally? Where did we pick 100 out of the air as opposed to, maybe it's closer to a 275. I'm just, could you help me with that?
Well, the 100's been in place for decades. Yeah, so, and, and I would argue that it was probably too much back in the day. I think it was just a nice round number that city, you know, chose a long time ago. And I think the DDA had a big part of implementing that part of, you know, just getting it into the Land Development Code back in the day. It was all part of the CRA, the LDDA, all of those things, making downtown more walkable and vibrant with the, the expansion of the sidewalks when, when we did the streetscaping. But I would, I think you heard staff say, they don't really know what those costs are going to be. And that's the whole entire reason for having the pilot project. Now you can just leave the fees as they are. And then when staff is presented with the review, and gosh darn it, you're going to have a whole bunch of new reviews coming right at you because most of the people don't have a sidewalk café permit, and they should. So you're going to be able to experience that firsthand. What does it actually cost in staff time to review the sidewalk café permit? And then in a year, you can say, you know, the $100 isn't enough, it really should be $250, or it really didn't take very much time at all, it should be $50. I don't know. But staff doesn't know either, so let's not just throw a number out there. We have a number on the books. Let's just stick with it and then use this time to gather the proper data.
Yeah, and I think that, if I could follow up, yeah, and I think that one, one thing that we talked about was the number of people that are not in compliance, that just getting everybody up on a, on a level playing field, reviewing it like Julie said, and then, then, you know, have this come back in front of us. But, you know, I think anybody that has gone out to any one of the cafés and, and sat and enjoyed it certainly thinks it's a, it's a plus and something we should continue.
Commissioner Reed.
I thought you were going to go.
I'm going to go last.
Oh, good.
Julie, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And maybe you can, for the general public, I know the difference, but can you distinguish between a sidewalk café and a parklet? And who would, and give me an example of two of each.
Well, I would say that Devicious has a sidewalk café. She has tables and chairs on the sidewalk. A parklet has, has other names. It's, you know, it's some, some places, they call them streeteries because you're eating in the street. As Jeff mentioned, parklets started out not necessarily as extensions of eating spaces for restaurants. They literally started off as parks in the street, in the parking spaces. You would see, you know, a park bench and a fake tree and fake grass, and it would actually be a mini pocket park that we took back from the use as parking and gave it back to the pedestrians. So we use the term parklet. I think we're way too hung up on trying to differentiate between what's a parklet and what's a sidewalk café. I think if, if a business is using any part of the right-of-way, then, then we need to implement those conditions and those, those standards. And they should pay that small fee to have the city review and make sure that they're following the standards. And that they should, excuse me, also have the proper insurance documentation to make sure that the city is held harmless if someone trips over their table or chair or their A-frame sign or their planter that's hanging out in the, in the sidewalk. But the, the way that we are, we are, the reason that we're reviewing this, I think in the first place, is because we didn't have anything pertaining to parklets in the Land Development Code. And so we had to address that as a city. Makes perfect sense to Commissioner Walker's point. This is why we're talking about it. Point taken. But the reality is, is that the use is the same. And as I said, I can argue, and I'll continue to, that the loss of a parking space is addition by subtraction if you're giving it back to the public in the use of seating or a parklet or a sidewalk café. I don't care what you call it.
Okay, thank you. There again, from my perspective, 1961 Frescos, Harry's, and Black and Brew have cafés.
Correct.
And Frescos and Harry's both have parklets.
Correct.
All right. That gives me the perspective. I was trying to get you to give that real quick, but. What about the retailer of a boutique, let's go out and put a little rack in front of their, their shop and it's a discount day?
That's an excellent point. Right now, they're, they wouldn't, they don't fall into a sidewalk café. They can use that space without any regulation or fee to the city as it stands right now. You may want to change that. As Commissioner Music pointed out, that, you know, you can trip over a planter or a rack of clothing just as easily as you could trip over the chair or a table in a parklet. There may be, you know, opportunity. But I would say for the most part, the other piece of this puzzle that's not really part of this discussion is we have a sidewalk sign ordinance as well. And that stays in the Land Development Code, as I was told by staff, because we regulate signs in the Land Development Code. Doesn't make sense to pull those out. But they also are supposed to have a permit, and they're supposed to indemnify the city. And I would argue to say, they're not doing it in Dixieland either, so no picking on my downtown merchants, but there's not, there's not necessarily enforcement of that. So I would say that those retailers So I would say that those retailers, they all have A-frames. You would just sort of fold that all in into that right of way use and maybe not even call it a cafe permit per se, just call it a right of way use for retail and restaurant use. Change the semantics a little bit.
They would pay the $100 fee also if they were to do retail?
If they have an A-frame sign in front of their business right now, they should already be paying that $100 a year permit for the A-frame sign. I would just fold that all in into one thing. But I would say that they're probably not paying for that A-frame. I will, guilty as charged. I got my permit the first year. I don't think I've ever paid to renew it.
Okay. Yes, sir.
[laughing].
And I think I mentioned you, Julie and I had a chance to meet, I don't know if you met with other people, but, but we went down on the first Friday and it was exceptionally busy. I saw some friends out and they're again trying to go through Frescos. I didn't know we were supposed to walk around it, but we were gonna walk through it, like Mr. Lazenby had speaking of, if you, what's the protocol? I didn't feel like I wanted to walk through the middle of people dining. But there again, everybody was in the street at that particular time. But on a normal Friday or Saturday night, would I walk into the curb or walk around the, in the street? Or would I go through the middle of the dining area?
You're, you're supposed to walk on the sidewalk. So, yeah, you'll see in many, 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 many cities where there is dining activity against the building and then also against the roadway and the pedestrian use is delineated. And you guys did it on Main Street, but for the, the extra dining because we didn't go quite that wide. But that's, that's just standard practice in, in much larger cities that have 20-foot sidewalks. We were lucky enough to get maybe a 16 footer on Main Street, but the 10-foot sidewalks don't allow for that. That's why the parklet kind of adds that extra space.
Thank, thank you for being here. And I'm gonna be real brief and come to the point. There again, I don't think certain parts of Lakeland are worth, one maybe worth more than $4.50 a square foot. So I'm not gonna get into that particular area, the marketing component. But I, I, like our Commissioner Plow and Madden, I think we need to get everybody within the permitting component, permit it. But at this point, I'm not in favor of raising fees till we can go through a little bit more of our due diligence and see how this goes. And, but I think it's important that we get these 16 or 13 people permitted to reduce liability to the city. And invariably, we will find out how they do. And then as we progress, if, if things, if they thrive, then we can get a little piece of the apple maybe.
Then we can stick it to them. That's, that's the spirit.
But I did see that you did have some proposals of tier one and tier two things, but at this juncture, I don't wish to pursue those.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments by commissioners?
I just have one more and that's to, to second what she was saying. I mean, if, if I go down and park, it's free for two hours. If you park behind me, it's free for your two hours and you go around. And so the loss of revenue is, is a difficult argument for me to get behind.
In fact, just the opposite could be true.
Correct. As, as clearly stated.
Well, I don't find this argument contentious and, and I think sometimes we're setting up our tone. We're all enthusiasts to this. And so if there's not anybody in the room that doesn't want to see us being, using our downtown, I think what you have done alongside City Manager Strauss in terms of making that the enhancement that it became in January is indicative of that. And that's because downtown is our living room, all of our living room. You know, it's an extension of our own personal home space. It's our place that we go down to play. And therefore, what we're really trying to do is set up an orderliness with respect to what do we do that represents enough fee structure to cover the investment we're gonna maybe have with our people? That's a responsibility we have on a fiduciary basis to our taxpayers, while recognizing what we really want to do is have the restaurants be able to make more money, be in a place where they, we can enjoy the Florida sun, have some conformity with umbrella colors and those kinds of things that are, that is reviewable and controllable, that gives them the ability to have exclusive use of that space because they paid a fee, gives them the insurance coverage for being in that fee and gives us some designing criteria in terms of how to protect those areas. And so I don't, I would also not be an advocate of a, a per square footage space. I think we should have a flat fee charge, but I think the $100 is too low and probably that number ought to be $500. And I'm gonna suggest that we think about it at a $500 level for this reason. We know we're going to involve staff. We know we're going to give some opportunity to have some input that's gonna require us to do research, and we're talking about it one time a year. While we expand that space for profit-making for those vendors, which we want them to do and to be more successful at the same time, and then not mess with this on an adjusted every year basis, just keep it a flat, with the exception of people that don't either have a cafe or a parklet and would be those people that might put out something in front or maybe being the $100 fee.
Retailers.
So that we have on a retail basis, a $100 fee that gives them the ability to do that guiltlessly and put the A-frame out, if we can figure out how to make everybody happy with all of that. And, but on the other hand, with respect to the ability to do the cafes and parklets, we have one flat fee. We can talk about how much that fee should be. We're not trying to make it onerous, but I think we ought to make it representative of some level of covering what some costs would be, and that's all we would be doing in the process. So to me, it is a wonderful opportunity for us to continue to accelerate the use and expansion of downtown, the enthusiasm that we see, the vibrancy that comes from it as we go forward. And I would be, and, and I don't want to forget the fact that we've already asked them to increase their costs on liability insurance coverage by moving from $1 million to $2 million. And that costs money as well. And that's being held, correct? I mean, that's, that's our, our policy.
Right.
So, and we aren't, we didn't do any comparison with other cities in that. We're relying on our risk management team to tell us that that's what it should be. And we moved that from the $3 million original request as part of the consideration. But that's a cost too, to these restaurants and businesses that's in, that we have upped in the process of that. So I am completely for doing this and really encourage us to think about it as something that is beneficial for all parties because we're not contentious. We're trying to find middle ground and so that would be my recommendation.
And just point of clarification, are you recommending that you do that at a later time? Are you gonna have that conversation now?
I would have that conversation now. What?
Well, then I would argue that you don't know what the fees are, you don't know what the staff time commitment is.
Correct.
And just coming up with a $500 out of, out of the air is, is, is inappropriate at this moment because you don't know, a sidewalk cafe permit for Taco Bus, for example, it's just three small tables in front of his 20-foot storefront, is going to be different than a Harry's or a Fresco's or a 1961. And you've got a Devicious who doesn't even open for dinner, doesn't open on, you know, on Sundays. So there are a lot of factors to consider in terms of that fee. And I would think that $500 would still be a deterrent for the smaller cafes. The larger cafes, I don't think that's really that big of a problem, but the large, the smaller cafes and the folks that are not seeing the long waits at their restaurants. And again, a lot of this, and I put this in the notes that I had sent to you earlier, it's not about necessarily the additional revenue because some, oftentimes people prefer to sit outside. So the outside is full and we want it to be full. You want it to be full. You want people on the sidewalks, creating that vibrancy. But the inside is half empty or two-thirds empty. So it's not really generating more income, it's just switch from inside to out. So there are a lot of things to consider. And I think because we already have a permit in place, which is $100, we talked about this being a pilot project, and you often, that's when we learn and we gather data, that I would respectfully request that you just keep it at $100 and then study this as time goes on.
And I, I respect that and think you've done a great job representing your constituency in that request.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I may, we certainly did not intend to yield the entirety of the presentation to Ms. Townsend, but instead to have her partner with us in, in the presentation. And so there's a couple of things I'd like to comment on. And, and Mr. Mayor, you, you touched on it already. There is no, we're not in an adversarial position here. And you've heard Ms. Townsend, you know, talk about her arguments against what staff has brought forward. And, and there simply are no, no arguments. We believe that the commission expects staff to bring forward some recommendation specifically as it relates to the exclusive use for profitability in a public space and public right of way. And so that's all that staff intended to do, was bring forward that rationale, and, and that's what we've done. It's difficult for staff to hear comments like, "The proposal is punitive," that staff sees the cafes as a burden, that we are hurting small business by nickel and diming small business. That's never been the intent. Staff has rolled up their sleeves and stood alongside the LDDA and, and every request that Ms. Townsend has brought to me since I've been the city manager and even before. It was staff that came to the commission and asked for support and expending funds in order to create the expanded sidewalk. It's staff who has allowed and continued to see the use by the businesses of the spaces before we've even had a chance to bring a program forward. But where we think we are today is that we talk about a pilot program, but when we talked about the pilot program four years ago, we had no takers. We met with businesses to try to implement a pilot program and, and they simply at the time weren't interested. We think the, the dynamics of COVID have changed that. And so what we're intending to do is to create a program that is predictable, that is permanent, so that these businesses and the, and the commission and the community can know exactly what's gonna become of the parklets and the sidewalk cafes. I think from a staff perspective, we don't want to see us do like St. Petersburg has done and roll it all back. We're just trying to simply make it a permanent program and that's behind what staff has brought forward for your consideration. Everything we've done, whether it be the Main Street extension, whether it be the concerts in the park and an expanded program that's going to be happening very soon, whether it be partnering with the LDDA to provide the Buena Night Markets, whether it be working with the LDDA to make sure that we continue to have the extended footprint, extended footprint of, of the farmer's market, it has all been efforts to continue to revitalize and enhance the downtown. And there are certainly more plans coming to do just that. So it's never been an effort to be argumentative, it's never been to be punitive at all. Staff has brought forward, I think, a reasonable rationale for the commission to consider based on assigning that exclusive right for profitability in the public space. And if the commission chooses to go a different direction and to go toward a program more as Ms. Townsend has laid out, staff will certainly take that, that direction. As we talked about with, with staff time, going through the idea of, of a square foot rate, that could certainly be, certainly be absorbed within that. Because we're in a little bit of a test period, we know what we've experienced to point to, to date with, with the sidewalk cafes and, and the parklets, and it's been very time-consuming. But hopefully, again, as we put forward a formal program, it won't be as much.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And while I appreciate, you know, the discussion, that's why I made my comments I did earlier, it's what, that's what we do. We bring, we bring this stuff up, we share, we come to a hopeful reasonable decision that we all have a right to vote our way. So I appreciate the comments, Mr. City Manager, but if I could make a motion this time, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, please do.
I motion that the resolution for 20207, well, I motion not to be approved, but I also would say that we look at a flat rate. There would be sometime very near future for us to look at, as you even suggested, Mr. Mayor, for a different amount other than $100 fee, flat fee. And that, that's gonna take some discussion, some time to do, I know. Staff, we didn't have to go back and do it again. I understand that. But that's what we, that's what we do. That's my motion.
Is there a second to that?
Three second. I think one of the difficulties with that, however, is that the current fee for sidewalk cafes is contained in the land development code section that was repealed earlier in this meeting. So.
We may not have a.
So what legal way do we go about this then?
We just don't approve that?
We just don't approve this?
Don't approve this item?
Yes.
Well, I, there is another, another option is, option for us is to select a dollar number.
If we choose, we're gonna go with a dollar number.
And, and put it into this and approve it.
You can always amend later as, as the.
And amend this.
Could amend it later.
Yeah.
I, well, first of all, is there a second to your motion? Is your motion to table effectively?
Can you restate the motion?
The motion is to not, well, again, to have this motion not be approved, or have this resolution not to be approved as stated, as presented.
Is there a second to that motion? Okay. And discussion on that motion?
Point of clarification, if I may, do we even have to vote on it? Just let it die?
Well, we could, yes.
Do we have to make a? I mean, there's no, do we have to pass a motion denying the?
We have to establish a fee. So we need to establish a fee because we just ruled it out so that there's something to go forward on now. Okay, so.
So we can't table it?
It shouldn't be tabled because it's not defined at this point. Commissioner Men.
Thank you. I did have a question with regard to if we kept a flat fee like it was in the development code and we, we've worked first on compliance. So does that mean like now Devicious, who's paying nothing, would have to pay whatever the flat fee is plus the indemnification? And is that the same for everyone? Like they all have to get the $2 million? So, I mean, like even people who are like, wait, like all I do is put my little sign up once in a while and now I have to have $2 million coverage? That to me is a little bit gray too on how, what, how that, if we start to do enforcement at large, what does that mean for all these people who are the, the ones who are not really operating but kind of operating, who are, if we started to say, okay, you have to get a permit and it's this much flat fee plus you have to get this, all of them get $2 million of the building insurance?
Jared Simpson with the city attorney's office, the, because the land, we repealed this morning, the regulations for sidewalk cafes out of the land development code.
Right.
But the code, the city code under 90-1, it still generally prohibits the placement of objects in the right of way without a permit from the public works department. So there was some conversation about putting clothing racks or things like that, planters out on the sidewalk. All that stuff is generally prohibited under the code. What you were heard today, the, the policy that the public works department is putting forward is to create a, a permit program that would allow sidewalk cafes and, and parklets through that, that chapter 90-1 authority. So they would have to, to allow retail or other types of objects that aren't associated with a restaurant use, they would have to expand that policy because there's currently not a, a permit program for those things. As to your question about enforcement, really that's a, that's a discretionary decision. We had some of those conversations with staff. You know, it, it is generally prohibited to place objects in the right of way, but staff maintains the discretion of deciding what cases they're gonna pursue to, to take to code enforcement board and which ones that they aren't. And they've historically had a light-handed approach downtown. And the idea was, once this program was adopted, that, that everybody could be put on notice that we do have a, a permanent program in place and then the enforcement would begin after that so that nobody was caught by surprise, that they've had that out there for a long time. It's been in violation, but the city hasn't done anything about it. So this would be a good way to initiate that. And then the last is, as Palmer pointed out, the, the fee for the sidewalk cafe was in the land development code, it was $100 per year. And the resolution that you have in front of you today, it adopts a, a fee structure through the exhibit. And I'm happy to amend that exhibit and, and whatever way the, whatever the pleasure of the commission is to, to allow this to move forward today or, or whatever the pleasure is to the commission.
Which seems to me to be very prudent for us to consider doing.
Yes.
And amend it to our mountain. And, and then allows us to really talk about that $100 or whatever the retailer is issue at a later date.
Right.
This gives us cafes and parklets today. Commissioner Music.
Yeah, my only question would be, or a statement off of Commissioner Madden, is if, 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 when it goes to a indemnification, whether I trip over a, a seat in front of a business or it's a restaurant, I mean, the city, I mean, that's why I think it's important that the liability limits are as they are, especially with legislation that we see potentially coming down with those increased. we see potentially coming down with those increased dollar amounts in Tallahassee. So that would be, that would be the one thing that, that we just talked about a lot, is let's get everybody covered, right? I mean, we can't deny that if somebody's putting a sign or a rack or eating outside, it's because there is a benefit to them, right? Whether it's, it's, whether it's just the, the enjoyment of the weather or whether there's an actual financial thing to it. So I think that there, there does need to be a fee, but I would probably disagree, Mr. Mayor, that I'd like to see a certain time period that we could go through, see how long, or what, what is it taking, and then come back because there's no reason that we can't approach this in another three or four months and say, here's reasonably what, what the traffic department has said that it's going to cost us to do this, and, and then take a fee and, and make it reasonable.
Commissioner Walker.
I, I believe it, we do have a motion on the floor?
No. They never seconded.
Oh, no, one second. Okay, good. Now I go another way then.
Right.
I, I think it's imperative that we do set maybe a timeframe to make sure we get everybody in compliance. You know, if we could do it that way, to make sure they all do comply with whatever the fee is, whether we stay at 100 or if we increase it. I, I think it's important, so we make sure we get the time period allowed for those who are not players to make sure they get on board right, become players. I think it's going to be important in whatever we do.
If it helps, just to clarify the issue, what we've done today between this item and the, and the previous ordinance repealing the cafe regulations out of Land Development Code is move the regulation to the Public Works Department, and what this resolution is only addressing is the fee. If there's a desire to keep the fee at the status quo, then that fee should be $100 per year. That, that's what was taken out of the Land Development Code when we repealed that.
Commissioner McClellan.
Thank you, Mayor. And that's my desire. I, I don't want to increase the fee right now at all. I don't want to go to 500. I, I like the LDDA board proposal. I understand the rationale behind staff's proposal and, and where they're coming from, but I really see this, I, I don't want to start adding fees, talk about the insurance requirements, and for, for some, that, that is a, a burden. And so I, I would propose we, we keep it at the $100 right now.
Commissioner Mann.
So I move to accept the resolution with the modification of section two saying, with the fee of $100, deleting schedule attached in Exhibit A.
Is there a second?
Could you restate the motion?
So instead of it being the fee, references you in section two to Exhibit A, which is this per square foot?
Mm-hmm.
You would remove Exhibit A, and you would put in there a flat fee of $100.
So it's $100 per year for a sidewalk cafe or a parklet.
Correct.
And then you may or may not want to revisit that.
I can second that.
If there's a second, and there's a second. Discussion by commissioners.
I do.
Commissioner Reed.
I, I was going to question, the application fee, is that every year or is that one time?
We don't have.
We don't have.
We're zero.
So we have a permit fee?
Yes.
Okay, so that's once a year, that's every year?
Every year.
And so at that point, staff will come and review and make sure they're in compliance. If they want to expand it or something, they'll tell them how many chairs, how, give them all the parameters that we looked at up here.
And it gives them the benefit for exclusive use of their space.
Right. And there again, my, I was going to make a suggestion, there again, this app, this $100 fee, should we move forward with a different fee, this might be, come out of it, the first fee, I guess you'd say, is, if it were, if you have an application fee, I, I wouldn't call it an application fee, but invariably, first fee would be kind of taken out of the $500 fee, if, I guess you don't want to pay both.
I, I can go to $100.
And I don't know if it's retroactive, if we're going to prorate by the year, are we going to do these things on an annual basis? So if you, if I'm going to have a fee, it's going to start January 1st, I come and decide I don't want to have mine in December, do I pay $500? And then all of a sudden, I pay $500 the next month for the next year?
It's the date of the application.
So the, the, the application dates would vary by that.
It could be different for different businesses.
So it's going to be annual.
Okay.
Annual basis.
From when they make, from when they're starting, okay.
Any other questions or comments by commissioners?
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm sorry, just, I just want, I, I need clarification for staff. So under, under the idea of a flat fee for sidewalk cafes or parklets, that's irrespective of size, is that correct? I mean, if they have a large one, as large as Fresco's versus something as small as Davicious, it's going to be the same fee?
That's correct, correct, as this motion stands.
Well, in my opinion, especially at the formation, and it could be two years from now, we said this is out of control, they're, they're costing us more than we thought. But right now, they're paying all of the costs, you know, they, thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars to get this beautiful amenity for our city, the cost is on there, the onus is on them right now. And with those umbrellas and all that, I mean, think about your own yard furniture, it doesn't last that long. So I know it, I, I know you feel like it's expanding the restaurant, and it should be like a per square footage, but, you know, we have waited a really long time. I mean, I've waited, you know, four and a half years to see this happen. So I'd rather just get it started, let them make these investments, and then if we have to come back to it later, you know, you know, then we will. But I don't want to have any kind of impediment to lose the momentum that we have.
Can, can we let it sunset in a year or two years, something like that?
Well, I don't know that we, we could always change it, and that's how you could sunset it if you wanted to. You know, we can change the fee. But let's vote for one first.
Before you do that, I'm going to hate to complicate it anymore, but I think there are a couple of businesses that already have a sidewalk cafe that are adding a parklet. So is it $100 for a cafe, and if you also have a parklet, you're going to pay a total of $200, or is it just $100 for, for both?
It would be in front of the business. This would be per applicant.
So I think, for example, Harry's already has a sidewalk cafe, and they've added a parklet, so do they pay $100 for each or $100 total?
They'd be paying $100 in this motion.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking for, what the intention of the motion was.
If, if I could restate it, because I was anticipating being the scrivener of this, and my understanding of the motion is to strike through section two from after shall be, strike through from as all the way to the end, so that the, the section two, and then deleting the exhibit, and section two would then say, "The operators of sidewalk cafes and park," or, excuse me, I'll back up. The fees for permits issued for the use of public right of way within the city by the operators of sidewalk cafes and parklets shall be $100 per year. That was my understanding of the.
Correct. And that uses the, the conjunction and cafes and parklets.
So if you have both, you still only pay $100.
You pay $100. So what we're doing is approving what gets done in front of their space.
Right.
And so the argument would be that we can do that very efficiently.
All I want is just clarity, that's, so we all are on the same page.
Right. So that's, yes, you were, you're interpreting it correctly, that's the motion. Any other discussion by commissioners? Any by the audience? Please come forward, sir, and state your name.
My name is Doug Law. I'm the owner of Jimmy John's here in Lakeland. I just want to go over this real quick. I'm going to kind of head around the room. As far as proceeding for you, Commissioner Walker, that's actually falls under a fire department thing, because if it is enclosed, you're only allowed to number certain of tables and chairs because of fire code. Let's see here, Philadelphia has a flat fee of $186, Tampa, I'm sorry, Orlando does $500 from one to five tables. But as you guys know where Jimmy John's is, and with the map that this gentleman put up, forgot your name, I'm sorry, I'm on a corner. So I'm excluded from having that corner. I have a handicap spot in front of my business. I'm excluded from having a parklet because I'm not going to mess with the ADA. I'm not going to do that. So as you all know, I had three or four tables out at one time, and I've sent you all a letter yesterday. Thanks for your reply, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, I didn't have a fence around it, I have to lock it up, I had chains around it, and I'd come in in the mornings, 5:30 in the morning, and I have homeless sleeping in it, which caused the folks in the lofts to complain about it. So it falls into, if I put a fence around it, then I have, do I have that right to say, obviously, I know I have the right to not trespass people through the city, but with that gate around it, I feel like you could charge me more, but at the same time, I don't want you to. But going back to this gentleman's point, and Julie might slap me or kick me here, I agree that Fresco's and Harry's should have to pay you more, because when you have a shop like mine, I have counter service, you walk in, you order your food, if you want to sit in the hot Florida sun, or depending, you know, the, when Mother Nature was drunk last week with cold weather, you can sit outside. But when you have table service, they're charging a lot more, they're making a lot more, not to mention their servers are making a lot more tips. So you have to consider that. I would, I would respectfully request that, keep it at $100 right now with your motion, and re-review this in a year after you've seen if more people jump onto the parklet program and all that. As far as the $500, my space is 20 by 6 is what I can use without, without interfering with the ADA and the other thing that they were talking about. That would cost me $450 a year. So in that term, 500 would be cheaper, as far as the city staff having to do their work and all that. Do, sort of like Mr. Reed said, do an initial application fee, because yes, they're going to have to come out and do an inspection, they're going to have to do the legwork and all that, and then just do an annual fee of 100, 150, whatever you guys choose, and keep it like that. But I just don't see it going up to $500, when, when someone like me, I don't have the choice to say, okay, hey, send one of my people out to serve you. And same with, I think, Crispr's. But at the same time, I do believe we should implement a fee on retailers that have, you know, like Top Buttons, that has three and four and five racks out in front, because they have a little bit of a longer storefront. Now they're drawing in business, but yet I have to pay an extra fee to draw in business by appealing to my curb, so. Other than that, you guys are doing an awesome job. I love you all. Have a great day.
As you do as well, sir. Thank you very much for your comments. Any other comments from the public? This is a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same?
It's actually a roll call vote.
It's a, it was a voice vote for just a second. Now we're going to move right to roll call. Commissioner Walker.
Aye.
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 Unanimously passes. Thank you.
All right, the next resolution is proposed resolution number 22-08, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Lakeland, Florida, relating to the employees' pension and retirement system, approving an actuarial report adopted by the Pension Board, establishing new contribution rates, making findings, provided for severability, providing an effective date.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion approved in a second. Discussion. Any discussion by the audience? Seeing none, that is also a roll call. So Commissioner McClellan?
Aye.
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 Unanimously passes. That brings us to C2.
C2 is a proposed task authorization with Hazen Sawyer for their engineering services to help the Water Utilities Department with compliance with the EPA's revised lead copper rule. The EPA revised this rule in 2021, requirements is required by October 16th of 2024. Hazen Sawyer will make recommendations on any remediation or chemistry changes needed to bring the city into compliance with the revised rule. They will also generate a lead service line replacement plan for the Water Utilities Department, and will increase, assist with the program to increase sampling for lead and copper at schools and childcare facilities. The total not-to-seed cost for their services under this task authorization is $287,095. It's in Water Utilities 2022 budget, and this will take approximately 18 months for Hazen Sawyer to complete. It's recommended for your approval.
Move up in a second.
Motion approved in a second by Commissioner Madden. Discussion. Any discussion by any members of the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Unanimously passes. That brings us to utility, C3.
C3 is a proposed agreement with Service Electric Company of Delaware for their assistance in removing approximately 50, 69 KV transmission poles along West Pipkin Road, as well as installing the foundations in the bottom section of two very large self-supporting steel poles. This is in conjunction with County's West Pipkin Road widening project. The City's purchasing, purchasing department issued an invitation to bid for this work, received four, four responses. Service Electric Company out of Leesburg was the low responsive, responsible bidder at $394,970.56. That is budgeted in LE's 2022 budget, and that is recommended for your approval.
Move up in a second.
Okay, there's a motion to approve in a second, any discussion by commissioners? Commissioner Reed.
How can they afford to do this on a $200,000 keeper spinning that gun?
They get to keep the poles.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the, the question.
They're, they're doing the job from with $200,000 keeper than the, the next three bidders. I just wondered, did we miss something, or who's, who did our bid review for the power company?
We do have LE's staff, I'm not sure if they're still in the room or not, if I could answer that question. Did we assess the difference between the, the low bidder and the second lowest bidder to make sure that the low bidder fully understood the bid and the scope of work?
I guess we believe so. The, the bid prices that we receive is all over the place. There are companies, a lot of times, they just submit just to stay on our radar. As you've seen, there's one that submitted with close to $1 million for this project. The, the highest bidder was close to $1 million for this project.
They must have a couple of folders laying around in them. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Any by the audience whatsoever? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Thank you very much. All right, let's bring us to the final item, four.
Final item is a precedent agreement with Ford Gas Transmission Company for them to take over the city's natural gas pipeline, as well as construction extensions to, to that line. As you know, the Ford Department of Transportation is planning to widen State Route 33. Lakeland Electric currently has a natural gas pipeline within the right of way of, of State Route 33 that's going to have to be relocated. LE was originally looking at doing the relocation itself, and, and after exploring the different options, decided to enter into discussions with Ford Gas Transmission to convey its, for Lakeland Electric to convey its natural gas pipeline to FGT. FGT has a, a large 22-inch gas pipeline that comes in from the west on I-4, and what would happen is that FGT would then extend a, would, would construct an extension of their line directly south to Lakeland Electric's gas pipeline at, at State Route 33, and then LE would, would donate its pipeline from that location all the way down to its Larson's, Larson plant. And by doing that, Lakeland Electric would absolve itself of any future responsibilities for operation or maintenance, or compliance with all the federal regulations that go along with being a, a, a gas pipeline trans, transmission company. The second component of this, in addition to the, the turnover of our pipeline, are two transportation service agreements to provide the, the capacity that Lakeland Electric needs going forward. The first transmission, Transportation Service Agreement would be for a period of 20 years with three, four-year renewal options, and this will cover the costs of FGT constructing the new portions of the gas pipeline, taking over and, and improving the city's pipeline. They would install meters at the, at the Macintosh and Larson plants to, to account for the, the flows going to those two plants. The cost of that original, that, that first transportation service agreement, including the renewal options, is $28,835,172. The second transportation service agreement that is contemplated by this agreement would be to purchase additional capacity for Lakeland Electric because of the, the additional capacity that will be needed for the six new reciprocating internal combustion engines, the rice engines at Macintosh Plant. So this also contemplates a, a second agreement for a period of 10 years with two additional five-year renewal options. The cost of that one would be for period, for a total cost of $26,462,500. All that would be, have to be budgeted going forward in Lakeland Electric's budget as, as, as the terms of these contracts occur. That is recommended for your approval. We have people in the audience from Lakeland Electric that can answer any of your technical questions.
Is there a motion for approval?
Motion approved.
Motion approved in a second. And a second by Commissioner Walker. Okay, discussion by commissioners? Any other questions? Commissioner Walker?
Yes, I want to make sure, Mr. Palmer-Davis, you mentioned 20 years for the first, first Transportation Service Agreement, I thought it was 15.
The first transportation agreement would be for a period of 20 years with three, four year renewal options. four-year renewal options. The second one is for a period of 10 years with two five-year renewal options.
Okay, so maybe I'm not reading it right because I see what's mentioned in the associated clause for the first five years. Oh, okay, I see. Okay, I see the difference now. All right, I was reading it wrong, okay?
First five years will be what it will take.
Right, and then the 15 years up there. Yeah, I got it, okay.
Commissioner McClow?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Tori, for coming on up. I was just going to ask if we were briefed on this at the Utility Committee meeting last, is there anything that changed? I know that there were still some kind of putting the final touches on the negotiation, the contract. Anything materially that changed at the end or that we should be aware of?
No, I mean, the, the contract, we pretty well had most of it ironed out. We were just going over some of the financial things, like the credit app, things like that.
They, there was the window though that was a little open that there might be.
We were told you were coming back with a final agreement. I'm just curious, did anything change in that, in those final discussions?
Monetized.
Yeah.
No.
It didn't seem like it, just giving you the opportunity, if there's anything you wanted to draw out that it has changed or. There's a lot going on in this and.
Tori, when she made her presentation, it kind of estimated what she thought the price would be and that's what it ended up being.
Yes, it came out exactly what I thought.
Just like it always does, except when you estimate.
Verbally, we had discussed it. We just hadn't put it in ink.
Yeah, right, right, great. No, you do fabulous job, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Any by the audience at all? Okay, this is a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, unanimously passes. Thank you very much and thank you for your preparation and thank you for your patience and staying in the meeting for the full duration. All right, that brings us to the audience portion of the meeting. Are there any members of the audience that would like to share something? And if so, just come forward. All right, seeing none, we will move to our mayor and members of the city commission in terms of anything they would like to share. Yes.
I'll go very quickly because I know where no one has had lunch, but we had a good meeting of the Mayor Hispanic Advisory Council last week. I'm excited to help chair that. The, the council started under Mayor Wiggs and over the past few years with COVID and everything, it's kind of been dormant. So we're in the process of restarting that and getting new members to that council. I think with the new census data that Polk County, the Hispanic population in Polk County is one of the fastest growing in the state of Florida, and so there are opportunities through that council to connect with our growing and strong Hispanic community here in Lakeland. So I'm excited, there was a lot of excitement in that room and we'll be bringing more items that we talk about, bringing them back to the commission.
And just the fact that you, you speak the language helps a lot that you also are very.
Yeah, so and as I, I think many of you know, but I told that group, so I lived in Venezuela when I was in college and Spanish was my minor. And so I, even though I'm not Hispanic by birth, sometimes I feel an honorary part of that community. And so there's that connection and look forward to keeping that group engaged and growing, you know, in the, in the future.
Good.
So thank you for letting me be part of that.
Oh, I love that you, that you are. You'll bring a dynamic. Commissioner Madden?
Well, I mean, you know, these are just some things I hear from people that I, you know, it, it's not necessarily Stephanie Madden, but you know, when you hear about it, I have had some residents call me again about speeds on Harden. Racing and speeds and, you know, there was another accident, I guess, recently on Harden Boulevard that I don't know about, but these are Grasslands residents and it was at a function and several of them were all, you know, coming up to, to, to let me know that that was still a problem. So I said, well, you know, I'll just let everybody know again that that, you know, I don't know if the police chief has seen an uptick in speeding or accidents on Harden, you know, in the Grasslands, but I just thought I would, you know, bring it up and maybe we could check into that. And then of course, you know, the other one is I have, you know, another few people talk about the motorcycle noise and the cars without the mufflers. And I tried to say it's a little problematic to try to give a ticket, you know, or to say, you know, when it happens or how to, and they, they wanted to let me know that motorcycle officers with, you know, a dom, whatever, the, some kind of meter that can hear things in other cities has been done to be able to give tickets. And so I don't know if that's anything, you know, we want to talk about further, if we've heard any other complaints, you know, I know how it is, sometimes it's just one, you know, one person thinks.
I think that's actually going to come up at strategic planning.
Okay, so that is just something I've heard. And then I did want to just follow up, I'm super excited about strategic planning this week, it'll be so fun. And I also get to go to DC for APPA and advocate on behalf of Public Power, so that'll be great, first time since COVID. And then also wanted to see if there was any update on the ante file, the petition at the library, did we?
We're going to have to study that more.
Okay, all right, so I'll just tell you, you're looking into how close it can be in proximity to the door and, and just some options. And then I did have somebody recently say that they were going to build a tiny home and they couldn't build it. And I said, well, I know we've done work on, you know, getting tiny homes written into our development code and they said, well, maybe it was because ours is 450 square feet and maybe that's just under. So I didn't know, okay, so is it, what, is it 500?
I think it's six, isn't it?
We're all looking back. So anyway, I can maybe reach out to Teresa or Brian.
Yes, we, we would just need the details of the location and we can get whatever pertinent information.
Okay, okay. That's it.
Commissioner Reed.
I, I thought Stacey would bring it up, I'm, I'm sorry she didn't.
What did I forget?
Don't forget we have Tiger BBQ on Tuesday night. And I saw Tony came in and we have the statewide national basketball state championship starting Wednesday. So if you want some good entertainment, there's going to be some great female basketball going on at Civic Center Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. And.
Good coach. Commissioner Music?
Yes, I, and, and I'm looking forward to that tomorrow. I just, you know, and as, as funny, Commissioner Madden and I had, had talked about this right before and it's interesting in our very own, and you guys don't get to see him, but you get to see his, his product and that's Andrew Gash in the back. And go on to our agenda website and there's a little snippet where he, he kind of does a video of the minutes. And I love that because not everybody has the time to sit here for all these hours, but for him to take and disseminate that with the team, I just appreciate that because we're constantly saying that the information is out there, but sometimes it does take a little bit to get to. So I don't know how long you guys have done that. Happens today. Well, that's excellent and, and, and you've got a lovely face there looking back at us. So I just appreciate that because it is, anytime we can take what we're doing and break it apart and give them a little bit and then they can get more information when they need, because I have always felt that the city has done such a great job of having everything out there. There is no cloak and dagger, there is no behind the curtain. So those things just excite me and it, and it's simple, but I just appreciate that and I was glad that you saw it as well.
Best ever.
Yeah, excellent.
Couple of things, Mr. Mayor, I just want to just thank, of course, all those city employees and different city departments to help make a success with Black History Month Festival this past Saturday.